... the order of the for November. Please rise and join Mr. Guston in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. A3 is roll call.
Hashev, Guston, Zadra, Sfaraza, Dorch, Ayazi, Kishel, Absen.
I will say that the mayor is doing fine. We all spoke to him a little earlier today and he is going to be joining us on the phone later on for some of the agenda items that we have, but he's doing very well. A4 is public comment. Adam Khan, followed by Sam Dene.
Hello, my name is Autumn Khan. I'm a student at the University of Nevada. I'm here to express my concern with the National Defense Authorization Act of 2012. And I'd like a few people to know, if they don't know, it was signed in by President Obama this year, this past year, and it takes away our Sixth Amendment rights to a fair trial by jury and suspends our right of having a lawyer present for and being presented with our crimes. I hope that this is as concerning to everyone on the board as it is to me, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, the encyclopedia of Reno government, and kudos to Mr. Hashev. I hope I never meet him again professionally. He's just becoming a, he's going to become a judge shortly. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate, spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the borders and outside of the borders. And Sam, with his savoir faire, sophistication class, spunk gumption and moxie and natural charisma and humbleness, is by far the most qualified person to be sitting on that dais up there. But thanks to the vote riggers who once again were in action yesterday, Sam will not be elect, was not elected to one of those positions. Sam was a pilot for Panameric, Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate if I didn't say that, but Sam was also an airline pilot for Pan American World Airways for many years until his airline was blown out of business in 1991 by the terrorists. Ever since then, Sam has been dedicating his life to protecting the citizens from the most corrupt, mendacious, perverted, deceptive, rotten, evil, wicked, and stupid media in all of America. That's the Reno media, and I'm talking about the newspaper, the television, the radio, and especially those, those talk show pundits who read their teleprompters and don't know honesty from a hill of beans. If they were not so deathly afraid of Sam, Reno would not be in the terrible situation that it is in. For the last 10 years, Reno has had a dysfunctional, a dysfunctional media overseeing a dysfunctional government. And Sam has warned and advised, year after year, Sam has attended 98.2 percent of all of the Reno meetings since last, since 1994. Sam is once again extreme, and if I sound perturbed, I am, justifiably. Sam seems to be the only one in the community that recognizes that vote rigging is taking place throughout Nevada and maybe even throughout America. I won't speak for America. I know about Nevada. I've seen it close and personal. Next week, we're going to start a new regime, a new regime of supposedly elected officials sitting at that dais. Three of them will remain. And by the way, I'm glad that the good Lord listened to and obeyed Sam's prayers and healed our beloved mayor. Anyway, back to the story, we have a new regime coming in next, next week. And Sam has, has had more ideas in any particular month than all of these people added together, but the media is afraid and jealous of Sam Dene and refuses to report his truth. Maybe with the new regime, the media and the poobas and potentates who sign their checks, pull their strings, snatch the bodies and steal the votes will tell the media to start reporting Sam's truth.
Oh, sorry, Sam, did you say something? Amanda Scott, followed by Mark Markell.
Hi, my name's Amanda Scott. I'm a student here. I just wanted to read a letter that I made about the NDAA. I'm writing today to ask city council to research and take the steps necessary to nullify Sections 1021 and 1022 of the National Defense Authorization Act, the NDAA. Other liberty, other liberty-loving states, counties, and municipalities have been already taken, have already taken these steps and can provide the basic framework for us to do the same here in Reno. The NDAA was signed by President Obama on December 31st, 2011, despite quote, "having serious reservations with certain provisions," end quote, of the document. Obama's concern were the provisions in Section 1021 and 1022 of the NDAA, which would allow future presidents to indefinitely detain American citizens without charge or trial in the course of fighting the war on terror. This consolidation of power violates our Fifth Amendment right to due process and the Pa Se Comitatus Act of 1878, sorry, which is intended, which is intended to protect U.S. citizens from their military force. Recent judicial proceedings revealed that the executive branch of the federal government is very interested in ensuring the survival of these provisions. When a New York judge placed an injunction on indefinite detention, she informed government lawyers that if they were currently holding anyone under these provisions, they would be in contempt of court. Within 24 hours, federal attorneys had filed an appeal and the injunction was temporarily lifted. If President Obama had quote, "serious reservations," end quote, why did his administration appeal the court's decision? Many journalists have speculated that their rapid response may indicate that the U.S. government has or is detaining American citizens under this authoritarian law. If the federal government is no longer willing to uphold the Constitution, the burden falls on the people to defend their rights. Please follow the lead of other forward-thinking cities by taking these steps necessary to nullify Sections 1021 and 1022 of the National Defense Authorization Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Markell, followed by Christopher Corbett.
Can you hear me now? Huh?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You're awake. I want to thank all the council members for their service, all of them that are leaving and all that are staying. I want to thank both. Oh, by the way, my name is Mark Markell, a concerned Reno resident, and I'm here today to warn you about drunk driving and getting a car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer from a traumatic brain injury and I get off track and curse sometimes involuntarily. When I was a young adult, I had a drunk drive and rest, 23 reckless drive and rest, and 32 drawn on suspended license citations. In 89, we drank four gallons of wine and were on our way to get more when we had a car crash and the police report said we were doing over 100 miles an hour. When we came to a bridge over a freeway, there was a car exiting. We swore to miss it. We thought we would hit it, but we were drunk and we hit the curb and rolled 150 feet. And I was nowhere near seatbelt, was ejected. It wasn't managed toward back then. And the car landed on my head. I was dead at the scene, but when I got to the hospital, the doctor brought me back to life. I was in a coma for a month, in the hospital five months, five and a half months, I don't know, six months. Anyways, when, when I was at least from the hospital, I was wheelchair bound and the Holy Spirit helped and I used a walker. God willed me alive to show what would happen, what could happen if you get in a car with a drunk driver. I can't walk now. I have to use a walker or a legged wheelchair. I ride the bus now. I can't drive. I can't clean my apartment. I can't find employment. I can't have a relationship. I can't, I have trouble thinking and speaking. I've lost my wife and my family. I wear dentures now because, oh, because I did drugs when I was young. It was, oh, fuck. I wear dentures and, and, uh, thank you, people.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you for always coming and reminding us.
Yes, this is a necessity of mine.
Christopher Corbett, followed by Nettie Oliverio.
Honorable Reno City Council, my name is Christopher Corbett, Reno Chapter, excuse me, Reno Chapter Chair of Panda, People Against the National Defense Authorization Act, the NDAA. I'd like to thank Ben Castro, Arthur Geez, and everyone who collected signatures and took the time to be here this afternoon in support of freedom. Thank you. With all due respect, I can't help but point out our hypocrisy in the last line of the Pledge of Allegiance we all just took, with liberty and justice for all. Do we really mean that? The NDAA authorizes the indefinite military detention and assassination of U.S. citizens without charge, trial, or access to legal counsel. This is an egregious violation of our constitutionally protected right to due process. Our military are the people who would be ordered to implement the NDAA to detain citizens of Reno and possibly even execute American citizens as happened to Anwar Alalaki and his 16-year-old son last year. State and local government have the authority to nullify the NDAA's unconstitutional authorizations. Thomas Jefferson wrote, and I quote, "That whensoever the general government assumes undelegated powers, its acts are unauthoritative, void, and of no force. Where powers are assumed which have not been delegated, a nullification of the act is the rightful remedy," end quote. Nullification is not unprecedented. Fifteen states and 32 local governments have introduced nullification legislation with six states and 16 local jurisdictions, including Berkeley, Santa Cruz, and Fairfax, California, passing resolutions nullifying the NDAA. I strongly urge this council to restore due process and join the growing coalition of states and local governments which have passed resolution and nullify the unconstitutional authorizations under the NDAA. This is in the best interest of the community, this council, our families, our friends, and neighbors, with liberty and justice for all. Benjamin Franklin said, and I quote, "They who can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety," end quote. It is the council's duty and oath to nullify unconstitutional laws. Today, I'm delivering 491 signatures in support of nullification. Please nullify the NDAA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Did you turn those, oh, you have, we have the signatures? Thank you very much. Ms. Oliverio.
Nettie Oliverio, Reno Arts and Culture Commission. We have with us today some members of our arts industry for the city of Reno. I'd like to ask them to stand now, please. The mark of a civilization on the move forward is its investment in the arts, and you have to look no further than to the Renaissance coming after the dark, dark Middle Ages. The national organization, Americans for the Arts, provides us with some data indicating that for every dollar of public investment into the arts, $7 comes back into the resulting community. Seven to one ROI, pretty good investment ratio, I would say. On behalf of all of these folks who are assembled here and those who could not come because they're otherwise involved in creating arts, I would like to thank our city council, especially our council liaison, Councilman Ayazi, our mayor, and our city manager for the tremendous vision that you have showed over the years in declaring arts and culture a priority several years running for our community, for your active, active promotion of the arts daily, and for putting your money where your mouth is and providing some sustaining funding for our arts organization, organizations for strengthening and building them, which of course, as we know, strengthens and builds our economy. I would also like to thank our staff at McKinley, our Parks, Recreation, and Community Services staff that wears a lot of hats and also supports arts and culture. We could not do what we do without them. We could not do what we do without you. Thank you so much for your dedication, from all of us to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nene. Thank all of you guys for making this a great place to live. We just sort of helped provide the opportunity, but you guys take that opportunity and take Reno to tremendous places, and we all enjoy it. Thank you. That's all the public comment cards I have. Oh. You want to speak on a public comment? Okay.
I'm the District Health Officer for Washoe County, Reno and Sparks, and I decided to come up in public comment since I'm not sure I'll speak to you later, but I wanted to thank you all for appointing Councilman Dan Guston to the board and the work that he has done. As you may know, I've only been here a year and a half, and I probably wouldn't have made it without him. As you consider who to reappoint next, if you could find someone exactly like him, I would appreciate it. He's been helpful. He's nudged me in the side when he's needed to, to get me to speak up, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your thoughtfulness in sending someone to us who has been as helpful as he has been. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan, do you want to talk about, we're still, I think we're going to try to get to your agenda item around 12:30, Doctor? As soon as we're, we're going to be right next agenda item, we'll tell you when that's going to be. Next is the approval of the agenda. What I have in front of me is we've got our public hearings, F1. Pulled items are J5 and J6. J4, L5, and L6 will be heard right after consent agenda. We'll have a time certain of 1 o'clock for the waste management, 2 o'clock for a redevelopment agency and baseball, and 3 o'clock for curb systems. So if you're here for those, we might hear them after that time, but we won't hear them before that time. So if you're here for parking, you can leave and come back at 3:00. So that's the way that time certain works. It doesn't mean you get there at the time, but not before then. Those are all the things that I had written down.
Do you think we need them that late?
That's what I was, I think that's what we're telling you, by an hour in between them.
You think it's going to take us three hours, though?
J4 is going to be done right after, we're going to do consent, L5, L6, then J4. Any other changes?
Second.
Motion is second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item B, cash dispersance.
No declarations for me.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item C1, proclamation declaring November 2012 as pancreatic cancer awareness month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, wow, loud. This is one that we all really need to listen to because it's the one that kills so many and has very little notice to it. Whereas in 2012, an estimated 43,920 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 37,390 will die from the disease, with approximately 340 of those deaths being here in Nevada. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis, and 74% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas all of the racial, ethnic groups in the United States, African-Americans have the highest incident rate of pancreatic cancer, between 34 and 70% higher than any other group. And there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years. And whereas the federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in, in any of the other leading cancer killers, and pancreatic cancer research constitutes only approximately 2% of the National Cancer Institute's federal research funding, a figure far too low given the severity of the disease, its morality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community in Reno and nationwide by focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Reno support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Reno are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into the detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, we, along with our mayor, Robert A. Kishel, of the city of Reno, do hereby proclaim November 2012 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And again, we have with us Ginny, who we've had before. Thank you so much. Do speak. Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Virginia Jed. I'm the community representative for Northern Nevada Lake Tahoe region of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, and with all my heart, I thank you so much for shining the spotlight on this miserable disease. I want to also thank the number of people in the audience who are supporters as well of Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and the research and the support they give to pancreatic cancer patients. I just heard something that was very disturbing in the lobby. I heard that one of your sworn officers here in Reno has been diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and it sounded like it was a very serious case. So it's hitting close to home here in Reno for sure. I also want to introduce my husband, who unlike the statistics of 74% of those diagnosed with stage four pancreatic cancer dying within the first year, he's approaching his fourth year of survival.
My name is Stu Jed, and I am a pancreatic cancer survivor. I want to thank you for your resolution and the proclamation. This is our third year coming, and if I can divert for a second, I was diagnosed in December of '08, and for me, who was in healthcare my whole life, this was a change. I mean, we looked at lung cancer, breast cancer, prostate cancer, colon cancer, whoever thought about pancreatic cancer, that wasn't on our agenda. But I was diagnosed in '08, December of '08. I went in for surgery in January of '09, and they opened me and closed me because it had spread to my liver. It was stage four. I went through six months of chemotherapy every day, and I was one of the few lucky ones that was allowed to go in for second surgery. There's 1% of us. And when I get back to the chemotherapy, I was in a clinical trial. There were 48 of us in the clinical trial, and today, there's one of us standing. So I feel that I'm here speaking for all of those that didn't make it, the Michael Landons, the Gene Upshores, the Steve Jobs, the Praviatis, Sally Ride. I can go on. This disease does not know economics, Republican, Democrat, independent, social. This disease just attacks. And something will be done about it, but what we got to do right now is we as individuals, you as city council, your staff, the people in the audience, you have to become proactive in your own healthcare. You can't look to anybody else. If you have an undiagnosed stomach ailment, if you were like me, pumping antacids all the time because of stress, and I too was a manager and I know about pumping antacids, please go to your physician, go to your healthcare provider. If we can save one or two people, your family, your friends, getting the message out, you must take your own proactive. You must be responsible for your own healthcare. Ask the questions, because without asking the questions, this disease can hit and hit real fast. So my message as a survivor is you don't need to go through what I went through. It's not fun. This is not like going to a baseball game. This is not like going to a dance. Six months of chemotherapy, four weeks in a hospital, five days in intensive care, doesn't cut it. You can be proactive yourself, look after yourselves, but if something is going on, go to your physician and ask. That is my prayer to you. That is my hope. Thank you for your proclamation.
Thank you very much. Next item is proclamation declaring November 7th as Ronald James Day. Mr. Guston.
As usual, Ron is in, I believe, Washington DC, working for the state of Nevada, but there is somebody coming forward to accept this for him. I just have a couple of comments, having known Ron for probably about 10 years. You know, he believes in preservation matters, and that was a message we had a few years ago and brought it to the council and brought it to Northern Nevada, and it does, it matters. And he has been a champion for historic resources throughout the state of Nevada. So I have this proclamation. It was interesting when he knew he was going to get it, he said, you know what, I, I don't need that. I, I'm embarrassed by it, and as it turned out, he's not here today, so he's not really embarrassed, but we are, we are pleased to present it to him through his staff. So let me read the proclamation. Ron James has administered the state historic preservation office for over 29 years. And whereas Ron has written 10 books that deal with statewide topics, including coverage of Reno history, its buildings, and whereas Ron established the commission for cultural affairs, which has saved over 100 buildings statewide with funding since 1993, including the McKinley Park School, the Lake Mansion, and Southside School. All three properties are very instrumental in, in the city of Reno, obviously. And whereas Ron established Nevada's certified local government, a vehicle to draw federal funds into local programs, resulting in several hundreds of thousands of dollars supporting various Reno projects over the past 25 years. And whereas Ron also created the nation's only online, fully searchable database for federal census records that allow people to research where people were living and informing architectural and archaeological survey work. And whereas Ron was appointed in 2004 to the National Historic Landmark Committee for the National Park Service system, and in 2009 was appointed to the advisory board of the National Park Service during which the National Park Service, during which his goal has been to increase the number of national landmarks in the Intermountain West. And whereas Ron has successfully encouraged the growth and promoted the increase of Nevada National Landmark Designated Sites by 60% during his tenure in the SHPO office. And whereas the City of Reno acknowledges and appreciates Ron James' faithful and enthusiastic service to the City of Reno and the state of Nevada, therefore, now, on behalf of Robert A. Kachel, Sr., Mayor of the City of Reno, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 7th, as Ron James Day, in and for the City of Reno, Nevada, and encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate Ron James for his dedication and service to our community.
My name is Sarah Fogaquist, and I'm pleased to receive this on behalf of Ron James, who is not able to be here today because he's at the National Historic Landmark Committee in Washington DC. But when I spoke to Ron yesterday, he expressed his gratitude for this honor and how impressed he is with the efforts of the City of Reno of late, and by extension, his appreciation for Dan Guston. So I pass those comments along to you, and I will gladly pass this along to Ron. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Thank you. There are no presentations. Item E is the Consent Agenda. Anyone wish to take something off the Consent Agenda item? This man?
E7, please.
E7, okay. Any others? Have a motion? No, I haven't seen any public comment. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item E7.
Yeah, just a few questions for staff on this. And I understand the building was foreclosed, and then it looks like the foundation bought it, and now they want to charge us a lease rent payment to use the facility. And this was a big issue during our budgets, as you recall, to make sure those services at the Sabine Youth Center stayed intact for the youth over in that area. And I see in the staff report that your staff is recommending that we use the Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center. Julie, how is that going to work?
Yes, for the record, Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Department Director. And what we're asking today for city council is to terminate this agreement. In the interim, we want to provide the programs over at Evelyn Mount, and we have vans where we can take the kids there to that location. And then what we're planning on doing is to, as we have done in other schools, is to develop, look to develop a relationship with the schools in the area, namely Vaughn Middle School, which is right across the street, next, close to the Sabine, and look at reinstating programs similar to what we had at that location, while still trying to provide services in the interim. We don't want to stop providing services, however, we want to see where else we might be able to provide services with the schools, like we have in other sites. If there's, and I can, Darryl Feimster is here, and I can provide, he can provide some additional information about the timing of that, but that's our interim plan, because we don't want to cease services. And we have the budget to continue through this fiscal year to provide those services.
Julie, and I mean, can we extend this portion of the lease, what the city's paying right now, which is the dollar a year, until we find a location over in that area?
The amount of the lease payment that they're asking for is close to at least $10,000 a month.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
And that, the recommendation that was given to the city manager and to you as city council is that that is not financially feasible, and we think we can provide the service at another location and then look to another site in the area to help that, to help that population of youth. That, the termination of the lease, we feel at this point, is the best for all parties concerned, and I've had several conversations with both the executive director, as well as the owner of the building, and we all feel that this is an amicable way to part, to finish the lease agreement at this time. So all parties are in agreement to do this, and the owner of the building is willing to pay for the month of that termination, that interim period, until the city can move. So even he has assisted in that effort.
And did legal look at this? Because the original agreement, when council gave the money for Project Solution, it was over $200,000 in exchange that we would be able to have a youth center over there for that community at a dollar a year. So I understand it went through foreclosure, and you've got someone else in there now, but do we have any recourse on that, Tracy?
Craig Skov, Deputy City Attorney. The recourse we would have would be our rights under the lease, and we could indeed sue Project Solutions for our damages.
But they don't have anything.
They don't have anything. So really, there is no practical recourse.
Doesn't the lease have to follow through? Even if it's foreclosed on? Don't the new owners have to agree to the terms, take on the terms of the lease?
No, it was not subject to that lease, so they wiped out the lease with that foreclosure. When they re-leased it, the new owner re-leased it to Project Solutions until May. That had an effect of reinstating the lease, but only to the extent of Project Solutions' rights in the property. And if that goes out, terminates May 1st, we could theoretically stay there till May 1st and enforce our rights that way, but beyond that, we don't have any ability to go forward.
Julie, how many youth are we serving there now?
It's Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director. It's a 25-year lease. We've been there 12 years.
No, how many youth are?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
How many youth are we?
Oh, how many youth? I will defer to Darryl Feimster, Youth and Senior Services Manager, to give you an exact number. It is a good number, and that's why we want to continue services in, to those youth.
Darryl Feimster, Youth and Senior Services Manager for the City of Reno Parks and Recreation. We currently serve between 25 and 35 youth, Monday through Thursday, and then Fridays, the crowd is slightly larger, maybe 60 to 100, depending upon the Friday. Those youth that we serve on the Friday, when the crowds are the biggest, would actually be able to move with us, because the majority of those youth come with a group called Pathfinders, who's a group that goes with their own vans and picks these young people up from different homeless shelters and facilities and bring them to the facility. So where we do the program would have zero impact on them being able to participate.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this and just go through with what staff's recommending, that we find some other location in that area. So, but I think this is a good temporary solution.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item L5. Update regarding Summit Sierra. Mr. Frankovich.
Thank you, Mr. Iasi. Members of the council, my name is John Frankovich. I represent Bayer Properties. Going to miss you guys going forward. Principal of Bayer Properties, who are the owner and developer of the Summit Sierra Shopping Center, is with me today, David Silverstein. I've met him before. Our purpose in appearing today is to request that we get an amendment to the existing public improvement reimbursement agreement entered into between Bayer Properties and the city in 2004, to allow Bayer Properties to receive some reimbursement for the public infrastructure that they've constructed, consistent with the original intent of the agreement. A little background, and I'll try to be quick, because I know you're familiar with it, but Bayer actually came to the city about 10 years ago, and they wanted to enter into a partnership with the city, the purpose of which was to capture sales tax revenues that were going outside the region. And the way they proposed to do that is to build a shopping facility to bring in new retailers that were not currently in anywhere in this region. They also had to construct, as part of that, and not only a major facility, but an entire infrastructure for this project and for other related city development. The city said, okay, it sounds good. Didn't know who Bayer Properties was, wanted to make sure that Bayer performed. As a result, in 2004, we entered into a long, complicated, and stringent agreement. And what that agreement provided, basically, is that there be no upfront capital costs or money expended by the city for anything. The developer was going to pay for everything upfront. Developer has done that. The developer was required to invest at least $80 million in the project. So far, they've invested well, in excess of $100 million. They had to build 500,000 square feet of retail space, have approximately 600,000. They exceeded that. 300,000 square feet a minimum had to be new retail outlets not currently in the community, including a major department store and at least 15 other stores that were not currently located in the community. Again, they delivered on all of that. They had to construct at least $10 million worth of public infrastructure, which was approved by the city, and it's important what that infrastructure was for, was intended, and this is a quote right out of the agreement, "intended to benefit not only the project, but also benefit the surrounding area and future development within the city." They not only spent the $10 million, they spent $13 million on the public infrastructure. In exchange for this, the city said, we will share sales tax revenue generated by this project on a 50/50 basis. And this was largely sales tax revenues that would not be available in the city otherwise without this project, because they brought in all of these new facilities. Summit has fully performed. They now have an operating facility that meets all the conditions with approximately 1,500 employees, but the deal has not worked out as anticipated. The agreement did have a provision there for a base year requirement. It says the city's overall revenues had to exceed or increase over the base year by at least 2% every year. At the time that that was set forth, Bayer was in a position where they would have preferred to have any reimbursement based on their own performance, but they were willing to go along with that at the time. Historically, at that time, the city was incurring 6% or more increase in tax revenue, so nobody thought it would be an issue. Well, it became an issue. We all know what happened. The city has dealt with that problem over the last several years, this unexpected and dramatic recession that we've had. And I know that the city has struggled with some of their agreements to try to stay afloat during this period of time.
Mr. Frankovich?
Yes?
Can I ask you, your time's up, but let me ask Councilman Zadra if you'd like to ask a question?
Thank you.
Yes.
John, could you give us a little more information?
Thank you. I will. Last several years, at the project, Bayer has been generating about $900,000 in sales tax. 100% of that has gone to the city, and zero has gone to Bayer. I don't think anybody expected that result. We've discussed an amendment for some period of time. We understood that the city was struggling financially, and the existing tax revenues from the summit were helping to keep the city afloat, but we thought now is the time, since the city's, for two reasons. The city's financial condition has stabilized in the last few years. I'm not saying it's great, but at least it's stabilized, one. And we wanted to bring back this to this council, because this was the council that started the process some eight or nine years ago. We submitted a proposal to staff, which is in front of you today, back in September, and it was based on staff's recommendation that we address this. We had many alternatives on how to address this issue, but the staff had ultimately recommended, let's reset the base and go from there. So the amendment that is before you, and I appreciate you can't take action on it, but it really simplifies the current agreement and recognizes that Bayer has performed in accordance with the agreement. And it resets the base year as the fiscal year 2011, does not require the 2% annual increase that dug a hole so deep we could never get out of, and basically provides that if the city exceeds that base going forward with their tax revenues, then we will share on a 50/50 basis. It does provide that the agreement before you, that Bayer would get the first $300,000 of any increase. That is in recognition that they had received zero over the past six or seven years. And I think that money has helped the city weather the storm during that period of time. In order to maintain that revenue flow, Bayer has had to invest additional money in the property, make concessions to the tenants to keep this going. The tax, the agreement also provides that the tax revenues from the project would include in the expansion of the project. That was a provision that was already in the agreement. It also extends the agreement to 25 years, so that there's a reasonable opportunity to collect this, and as the city's tax revenues increase, Bayer, we think, should get some reimbursement, recognizing the intent of the agreement from its beginning. So we said, we had hoped you could take action on this agreement today. It's my understanding you cannot. What we would request is that you take, give some specific direction, very specific direction to staff, so maybe we can finalize agreement to get it back in front of you for your next and final meeting and not pass it on to the next council. That would conclude my presentation. Mr. Silverstein would like to say a few words, and then we'd be happy to entertain any questions. But thank you for your consideration.
David? Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be before you again. To Dave, and Jessica, and Dan, and Pierre, it's, I know your time is rolling off the council. Best of luck. Many thanks for your service to the city, and certainly during these last few years, when you've had to make some trying decisions. I stand before you today as really a partner of the city, because when I first came here 10 years ago, we worked closely with your city manager, I'm sorry, Mayor Kachel's not here, but with the council, and coming up with a true partnership in how we could develop the summit, put in the public infrastructure, recruit the new retailers to the city, and we did that. Never did we ever dream, in our wildest imagination, that the formula that's in the current agreement would preclude us having really any chance whatsoever to recoup the dollars that were allocated for the public infrastructure. Recognizing when we put that agreement in place, that I was not asking the city to really spend the first dime on the project. We would build it, we would finance it, we'd bring the retail, and we'd build the public infrastructure. And the thought was, if we did that, and a lot of people said, who's this guy from Birmingham, Alabama, coming to Reno? Are they really going to do what they say they're going to do? If we did what we said we were going to do, and we brought that type of project to your city, out of the revenue stream that we created, we'd have the ability, over time, to recoup the public infrastructure dollars, which not only inure to the benefit of our project, but if you go out there, you'll see it inures to the benefit of the community. You know, now that that highway's open, the intersections are improved, new sanitary sewer water, et cetera. So I stand before you with the request that, as our partner, please help adjust the agreement, because I don't think the intent ever was that we would never recoup any amount of the public infrastructure dollars that we spent. And I would say this to you, and I know my time's probably ticking away. A lot of agreements throughout the country had to be renegotiated as part of the economic downturn that we, as a country, have experienced. And this is what partners do. They recognize that adjustments need to be made to account for the change in circumstances. Our financing was contingent on some level of recruitment of this infrastructure, so I'm still under, you know, that situation with our current lender. And I'd just say to you, I think it is appropriate that now that we have provided, as John said, close to $800,000 to $900,000 a year for the past three to four years, which is, I hoped, helped the city deal with the financial crisis, we have not recouped any of that money whatsoever. That now would be an appropriate time to adjust the agreement so that we could hopefully recoup the dollars that was the intent of the agreement when we entered into it some six, seven, eight years ago. I thank you for allowing me to come before you. It's always a pleasure to come to Reno. It's a beautiful city, and our goal and objective is to continue to invest in our project. This is a serious impediment, though, to us being able to continue to invest appropriately. We have more retail we want to bring in, but we do need to figure out a way that we can address this issue. Thank you.
Can I ask you one question? You quoted the $800,000 to $900,000. Is that the sales tax figure that you're talking about?
That is the city's share.
The city's share of sales tax?
Over the last several years, notwithstanding the downturn in the economy here, Summit Sierra has performed pretty well.
Is that, that's $800,000 per year?
That's correct.
That generates just to the city?
That's correct.
Not in total sales taxes?
No, just, that's the city's share coming out of the project.
Okay.
That you...
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, for the last three or four years, although the economy was terrible.
So you've been paying it?
I think we helped contribute to the city's coffers.
So your store's been putting in about 2.5 to 3 million a year in sales taxes? Because our share of sales tax is about 30%, isn't it?
Right. I just know that the amount of dollars that have been coming to the city through sales tax, the city's share out of the summit on an annual basis is between 800 and 900,000.
Okay. Okay. Sharon?
Thank you. David, thank you for coming to have this discussion today. Council, you've heard me make reference to Summit Sierra as an example when we've been having the discussion about some of our other agreements that we've been looking to reestablish or modify. And I didn't know that, at the time I made that as an example, that you had actually had some prior discussion with Robert. So I am asking the council, and Robert, if you could kind of pipe in and share with us your understanding and thoughts on how this potentially could be reconsidered. I think that we, as Mr. Silverstein noted, need to play a strong partnership role if there's an opportunity for us to make adjustments.
Good afternoon. Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. What you just heard was, you know, a pretty good synopsis of where we have been and where we, where we are. A lot of it had to do with the cap that the sales tax, the first waterfall, the first trigger, had to be a 2% increase each year in the sales tax countywide before they would get any reimbursement or any payment under this agreement. And as you all know, sales tax have declined dramatically in the last several years. Therefore, you know, it's not looking like at any time soon we will ever meet that cap of the 2% growth. So currently, we have, we are not paying them any money on this agreement. The last time we made any payments was back in 2008 for 2007, which was 359,000. A year before, we paid them 73,000, so they have been paid $432,000 to date on the $10 million agreement. And if we reset the base, I would bring up that anything we pay them is going to be less than we will get in the general fund. It will be a direct hit to the general fund, so. And it would be about 400 to 450,000 a year, based on current revenues.
Four to 450 on the current revenues. And what are projections looking like?
You know, that's hard to say. I mean, so far, sales taxes have been doing very well, very well, as, you know, 2% to 3% increase year to year. August was an exceptional month. This year was 7% over last year. However, last year was a bad month for sales tax, so if you look at averaging it out, we're going up about 3%, right now, 3% to 4% year over, over last year.
And the 800 to 900,000 that they've been paying, is that, you concur that that is the city's portion?
Department of Taxation has trouble identifying each individual brick and mortar store, so as part of this, as we go forward, we would have to have them provide that information again. Because we haven't been at the trigger, these are estimates, but I believe those are pretty close estimates, is about $900,000 a year in sales tax to the city.
So they've generated to the city about $900,000 a year?
Correct.
Incremental income revenue for the city?
In sales tax.
Correct. And the 4 to 450 would come out of that incremental 8 to 900 that they've been generating every year?
Out of the, well, according, if we did the agreement the way they are discussing to restate the agreement, they would get the first 300,000 and would share in it, it would be, you know, about $450,000 a year that would be coming from the general fund.
Thank you. So how, what would we need, what kind of direction would you need, Mr. Manager, to hear from staff today to pursue, work through this recommendation, the reimbursement agreement, to bring something to the council for consideration? What would you need?
I guess what we would need is, as staff, is just direction from council if you wanted us to go back and look at resetting the base and bringing a new agreement back to the council next week. And if there's, I don't know if council has, you know, specific parameters that they want to look at on that, if it's just a matter of resetting the base. I know the 2% piece is an issue. I don't know if, you know, that piece needs to be looked at as well moving forward. Because when the agreement was originally put in place, you had this 2% requirement. I don't know that that, we want that to continue in order to make these payments. So I think we just need some, some direction from council on what you want us to bring back, if it is resetting the base and looking at those other issues.
Have you considered what other issues might be? I mean, one that comes to mind for me is, is it appropriate that it's total citywide? Is there a way to carve specific to?
Robert Chisel again. You know, the agreement can be stipulated a lot of different ways. One of the reasons that 2% cap, I believe, was put in there, you know, was before my time, but talking to staff that was around, was the intent was that if we had an economic downturn like we had, we wouldn't be out that money. It would, you know, we wouldn't have to pay out any money in addition to the economic downturn. So that's why that cap was put in. You know, that is council's choice.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might add to it, I think as staff, what we would be looking for is, moving forward on this, we would want to take this out of growth. As Mr. Chisel said, I mean, whatever we pay out of there is potentially revenue that would have came to the city. So I guess as staff, what I'd like to see is that we don't take it out of our current base, that it be sort of the incremental growth moving forward. Now, how you structure that, whether you're looking at countywide sales taxes and if we have growth in countywide, and then we share the piece that the Summit Sierra is generating. You know, if you just looked at the incremental growth at what Summit Sierra is generating, I don't know that it's enough to get you to where they need to be.
Mr. Ashef?
Yeah, just maybe for John and also for staff, the, if I remember, the 2% was in there because we just assumed that there was a 2% growth in the sales tax, so we didn't want to give you credit for that. Is that how you remember it?
Not quite. First off, the base was not based only on sales tax, it was based on sales tax and property tax as your total tax within the community. Both of which have gone down precipitously. The 2% was a safety net for the city in case something happened, but it was a situation where nobody, I mean, at that point in time, the city's sales tax revenues were going, had consistently been going up at 6%. So it's not anybody that thought we would have a long-term aberration. If we had a one-year glitch, that's something. But now that we've had six or seven years in a row with the 2%, it's just, we're never going to get back to where the existing agreement says, so. That's, that's my recollection of, and that was-
And then how much of the $10 million has been paid back?
Well, I think Mr. Chisel's number was correct, about 425,000. The first year was a partial year, like three months, and we got a small payment. And then the first full year was like 350,000. When you add them together, it's about 425,000, 430,000. And there hasn't been anything since that. I think that was '07 fiscal year, '06, '07, and there hasn't been anything since that time.
So is the intent, because you're asking for an extension of the agreement to 2037, so that's another 25 years?
That's correct.
So you're looking at splitting the 950-50? And then that would reimburse you approximately, I mean, if you get 400 of the 900 or 450 of the 900, is your intent that you would be fully reimbursed within that 25-year period?
Well, there's two purposes. First off, we don't necessarily get to know 900 unless your base has increased, your tax revenues have increased by at least $900,000 from the base year. If that case, if that were the case, then we would split it at 450. The reason we put in the 25 years, because we wanted, we're entitled to receive a total of 10 million, that's the max, no matter when it comes.
Right.
And so when we talked to your bond counsel, I asked him, how long can we make this? Because this is really a bond. He said 25 years was the maximum time. So that's why we put the 25 years in. I don't know how the math's going to work. I would expect that over 25-year period, the taxes generated from the site would increase just by inflations, but we never carried it out that far. The 25 years was because that's the maximum length of a bond by the city.
And then my last question is, what's the 300, the 300,000 guarantee now that you're proposing?
Well, it's not a guarantee, but to the extent, let's suppose, and I'm just going to make up numbers, that your tax base was $30 million, and that's the base. And the next year, you brought in 30 million, 300,000, we would get that first 300. If you brought in 30 million, 600,000, then we'd both get 50-50. That's what we had proposed in this agreement, that we'd get the first piece of that.
Wasn't the original agreement site-specific, though? I mean, you would generate, whatever reimbursement you would receive would be based on the sales tax that's generated from that site?
Well, it still would have to be generated from that site. If we didn't generate 600,000 or 300,000, we wouldn't get more than half. You know, we don't get it unless we generate it from the site. That's correct.
Right.
And that didn't change.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Sharon, did you have a question? Ms. Frazza?
I mean, for staff, it, I mean, at what point, I mean, we're going to have, I mean, this council, the next council, everyone's going to come up to this council and say, you know what, the financial projections weren't projected to be what we anticipated, and we want you to bail us out. I mean, we have other agreements. Is Cabela's next? Are they going to come forward? I mean, at one point, that's the whole purpose. When we entered into this agreement, it was based on, there were things in there, especially on the retail redistribution, because there was going to be a hit. You have some of the same stores out there that are in Meadowwood, that are in Legends. And I don't know if staff's done that analysis, but that would be interesting to see because I thought that that 2% was in there because we wanted to actually see if there was a growth, that you weren't just getting people who were shopping at Meadowwood who are now shopping at Summit Sierra, for example. So I thought, Robert, that that 2% trigger was in there for that particular reason, that you had to have an overall growth in, in sales tax to make that happen, and maybe that's not happening.
Robert Chisel again. You know, again, I wasn't here when this agreement was originally negotiated. It may have been other reasons that 2% cap was in there. Our understanding was, it was intended to, you know, hold us harmless if there was an economic downturn. There is in the agreement that there was supposed to be a specific mix, a new retail brought in, and most, all those items have been met by the project. But it, the dollar amount is the one trigger that has not been met, the 2% growth in sales tax, C-tax countywide.
Could I respond?
Yeah.
I think what Robert said is basically accurate. The basis for which we didn't want to make sure that we weren't just taking tax revenues from another source was this retail mix requirement that required us to bring in 300,000 square feet of new businesses to the area that have never been here to stop people from going to Roseville and Sacramento and San Francisco to go to Williams-Sonoma. And that's why they, and stores like that, that's why there was a specific requirement. That was, that was the safeguard, if you will, that you weren't just taking from Peter to pay Paul. The 2%, in my opinion, was exactly what it said, was a safeguard. It was an arbitrary number. Andy Green came up with it one day. We said, where'd that come from? He said, well, we're getting 6% and probably never be in effect, and that's where that came from. It was to really protect the city.
But it was also to protect the city, John. I mean, our economic issues, I don't know, Mr. Manager, where we're going to get all this pot of money coming from the general fund to help out these projects.
That's not before us today.
But, but we're being asked to, to make that motion to move forward with restructuring a deal by next week, I believe, is what you're asking.
That is what we're asking.
Yes.
If that's feasible, anyway.
This is Councilman Zadra's agenda item, and I think it's just authorizing staff more than two hours to work on something, which we've always done.
That's what we're doing.
We've never ever turned down a councilperson's request for staff time to work on a project.
So that they have the time to be able to evaluate if there are options, and then those options would need to come to this council for us to consider if it's something that we could do. We're not authorizing that expenditure or that modification today. But we need to either allow staff to, to consider the options or not. And I think that we need to at least allow staff to consider the options and bring them back to us for consideration.
Mr. Torch?
Yeah, I mean, if that's the direction we're going, I do think we all should provide a little input to staff on what we think about this. And, and, I mean, I agree with Jessica on a lot of the issues, and I've got some concerns with the agreement as it's written, beyond the fact that, I don't know where the money's coming from. I just, I don't know where we're going to get the money to do this. But if we are moving forward, some of the concerns are, there's, there's no requirement in the agreement, the way I see it, that puts any performance on Summit other than the fact that they only get half of, half of the sales tax revenue. So if the entire city's sales tax revenue goes up, and let's say, let's say Summit loses a major tenant and their sales tax revenues go down, they still get, they still get 50% of what they generate. Even though, even though theirs isn't providing the increase throughout the city, they're actually decreasing, they could still receive 50% of what they're generating. So I've got, I've got that concern. And, and again, you know, when we, when we originally did this, and I, I don't remember exactly how I got to the 2%, other than I remember having a conversation with Andy of, of how do we protect the city in the event that they're, what Jessica was saying, in the event that they are just taking other business from within the city to Summit. And I think everyone felt that what they were providing was a great product, and we bought into the fact that this was going to stop people from going over the hill, it was going to provide additional sales tax revenue to the city, and that's why we were agreeing to split it with them. But, you know, in the new agreement, there are no protections in this for the city at all, the way it's written. So some of my concerns.
May I, may I respond to two things, please? First to Jessica, we have met every condition that was required in the agreement relative to investing $80 million, bringing a certain amount of new retail to the community because recognizing we just didn't want to transfer sales from one shopping venue to another shopping venue. Every condition, every, every condition preceded, that is, everything we had to do to qualify, we have done and have continued to do. So that was a question you had, had we met the criteria? We may have a couple retailers from Meadowwood in the center, but Williams-Sonoma's not, Pottery Barn's not, Dillards is not. We have met every criteria that was in the agreement. I tried to propose a very simple solution to this about a year ago that would, I think, go towards answering your concern about protection. I think we've made it awfully, awfully complicated. And that is that, look at what, with the state's help, we can track every dollar, every dollar that comes out of the Summit Sierra in sales tax revenue. Fair enough? I think that's probably true. We can track it. We can know exactly what dollars are being spent or are generated out of sales tax revenue. I proposed a year ago, in an effort to give the city the protection you're talking about, and give us an opportunity to recoup some dollars, sales tax revenue, the following. Look solely at the sales tax revenue that comes out of the Summit Sierra. Look at that pot of money. The city would be entitled to the first $400,000 before we got the first dime. Then we would get the next 300,000 that came out of the, out of the Summit Sierra. That incentivizes me to continue to invest because if I don't continue to invest in the project and recruit retailers and keep it afloat, I have zero chance, zero chance of recouping any sales tax revenue whatsoever. And I propose that as a very simple solution. It doesn't come out of any other pot except the Summit pot.
I'm not sure that's so simple because I don't know about the state law about, I think the individual owner of the store has to agree to give his sales tax, don't, because it's proprietary information, so I don't know how much Dillards is making?
No, we-
So every person would have to agree, I believe, wouldn't they?
No, that's not true because that's how the other agreement was working anyway. There was a, there was an analysis done about how much sales tax revenue. It's not that we have to know the proprietary information, but you can determine, and you-
Well, I'm just saying we ought to look at the state law and see if we can do that.
Sure, fair enough. By no means suggesting violating state law, but we've looked at this issue previously that there's a way to track and determine that- the actual amount of sales tax revenue coming out of the project. And I said before the city, a proposal that says, look, take the first 400,000.
Okay, we understand that.
Yeah. And then go from there. So that is also a way that I think you can get the protection, that we're incentivized to keep this thing moving in the right direction. Recruit, continue to recruit.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want for the council to understand, we did discuss that, and staff's concern at the time with that proposal, is that would have cut into the base of sales tax that we were looking at, and not been just the incremental growth. So that was really staff's concern with that proposal.
Mr. Guston, you still have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's really cogent points brought up by council. I would offer that, in trying to discern where dollars, retail dollars went from one shopping center to another, would be very difficult, if not impossible, to do. But I'll break you the example of restaurants opening next to one another. And the premise, you want to open restaurants in downtown, and you want to revitalize downtown, the more synergy you have, the more people you have that come and shop. And I think that same axiom may well work to retail shopping center, because what they have been able to do is, the Summit Sierra, as compared to Meadowwood, in my simple mind, in my observation, it's two different shopping choices. There are some, there are fine men's stores, there's a Macy's, and there's a Patrick James, if you qualify those, or Joseph Banks, whatever. But I think trying to decide the dollars in their center, was it actually pilfered, if you will, from some things else, I don't think you'd ever come to that conclusion. But I know that when you operate businesses that are like in downtown, as I mentioned, it tends to create synergy and create more spending. So I would say that. The other thing about incentivize, I agree that there should, in looking at developing this, because I'm gonna back the motion from Councilwoman Zadra, that we move forward and give her the time to do this, incentivize certainly could be one of them. Then the other thing I would suggest also, is we look at some other things we have talked about in similar circumstances, maybe backloading it. Maybe the 450,000 is a little bit rigid upfront, the 300,000 is a little rigid, but you're talking over 25 years. There may be a five-year plan and a 10-year plan, and looking at making those dollars work, because eventually, as Robert Chisel said, we're currently at about a 3% growth. We hope that that is sustained. So maybe it doesn't all come out, and it's equal over the 25 years, but we backload it in, it's, I don't know, throwing out numbers, it's 200,000 in the first year, 150,000, and in year 20, it's instead of 450,000, it's 550,000. But I think those options should be on the table.
Yeah, and my comments are, people have a right to come and ask us for things. So yes, there might be 100 people coming and asking us. That's why we have public meetings, and that's why it's a public process, and people can ask us, and it's our job to look into that ask, not just turn it down on the blush. So looking into it further, right now, we're not considering it, we're considering whether we should consider it. That's all that's in front of us right now. And if it comes back to us, if the motion passes, I'd like to see, again, a reiteration of what were the public improvements? And after this 10-years timeframe, have they really, are they, were they really public improvements, to make sure that the public benefited? And see that those kind of things also, if we want to open the contract, we should look at all parts of it? Was it really for the public good to do some of these sewer and water things to do? So, but I'm supportive of having staff look at it. And if you look on our consent agenda, we just approved cutting someone $20,000 deal on a big shopping center in the Northwest, because of the conditions of $20,000 a year. So we do make deals with people all the time. It's not as big as this one, but we consider them.
And I think it's important, in the spirit and our commitment to transparency, that we bring this forward in this fashion, to give you direction, to give us the opportunity to be able to evaluate it. Unless it comes to us with all the options identified, we're not fulfilling our commitment to transparency. And that's what I'm trying to do here.
We have the mayors on the line, just to let everyone know. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
How are you? Good to see you all.
Very good, thanks. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we have staff meet with the Summit Sierra applicant and representatives, and identify options for us to consider at our next meeting.
I second.
And that would include looking at sharing ratios?
Correct.
The base, potentially adjustment of the base. Okay? Yeah?
Motion is second. Further discussion?
Do staff need any more? We talked about incentivize, we talked about backloading, we talked about a lot of things to make the numbers.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries unanimously. Did you vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Next item, which I was told would take two minutes, would be L-6, Resolution Transferring Real Property to Nevada Humane Society.
Tracy Chase Reno, City Attorney's Office. L-61 is the staff report. That would be an acceptance, and then I could read the resolution. Just so you know, as part of the staff report, you are also approving the form of the deed, which broadens the restriction. Previous, the prior deed had it only, could be utilized for certain purposes, and this is more general for animal services, consistent with the mission of the Nevada Humane Society.
Thank you, Tracy.
Move to accept staff report.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. L-62.
Resolution Number 7782, amending Resolution Number 6791, and approving a quitclaim deed pursuant to NRS 268.055, which transfers the city of Reno's interest in certain real property located on Longley Lane, Reno, Nevada, to the Nevada Humane Society, in accordance with an amended agreement approved contemporaneously herewith, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to approve.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item J4. Update discussion on the Tri-Day Emergency Medical. Dan, did you want to handle this one, or Mr., Dr. Iser?
Yeah, because, Dr. Iser, you're gonna recap our discussion at the board, the District Board of Health meeting last week?
Yes, sir, and if I could even go back a week before that. At the special meeting that we held in the BCC chambers, I believe it was two weeks ago, most of you were there, so you had a quorum. And Councilwoman Ms. Frazza, you made the motion to go forward, and I do have what I think are the words that we got, if I may read those. To place on the city's agenda discussion and possible direction to, one, fix dispatch, two, open up the REMZA franchise agreement, and three, grant authority for the health board to oversee the EMS system in the region. That was seconded, and the motion was passed. Then, something that happened very quickly after that, is that Commissioner Jung made the same motion for Washoe County, and that was also seconded and passed. Then at the meeting that we held two weeks ago with the District Board of Health, Councilwoman Ratty moved, seconded by Commissioner Jung, to direct the health district staff to begin work on taking the lead on reviewing and implementing the appropriate recommendations from the recent Stakeholder Task Force, and working with our partners at the cities and county, to bring forth recommendations back to the District Board of Health, and the motion carried. Subsequent to that, and actually before that, between the special meeting and our board meeting, I did have a discussion with Chairman Barnard, who is the chairman of REMZA, and Patrick Smith. Chairman Matt Smith, who is my board chairman, was involved in that one, and in a subsequent face-to-face meeting as well. We've had several conversations. Mr. Barnard came up at our board meeting and said that REMZA was willing to discuss reopening the franchise and going forward with negotiations. I also sent an invitation to Mr. Klinger, Mr. Carey, and Ms. Simon, to invite them to a meeting. Ms. Simon thought it best to wait until after next week's BCC meeting. Before meeting, she felt that she didn't have appropriate direction from the BCC to go forward. So we do have a tentative meeting set up, and I believe that's in two weeks. I think it's the Monday of Thanksgiving week, that we would meet and start talking about the items in Dr. Cohen's report, and how we could go forward from there. I'll take that information that my board already doesn't know back to our board meeting, which is next week. And any information that you all provide to me today, the Board of County Commissioners is meeting next Tuesday, the Spark City Council is meeting next Tuesday. The same wording that we passed, I did give to Mr. Klinger, Mr. Carey, and Ms. Simon as well, in case you all decided that was what you would like to do. So I'm here to take your direction, working with your staff and my staff, to go forward on any and all of these proposals. And I think, again, focusing in on, Councilwoman Ms. Frazza, your motion, and I believe, Mr. Vice Chair, you seconded it, and going forward with that, with those three items in mind.
Yeah, and I just wanted to reiterate that, we talk about EMS, REMZA, and what was the third item? I've forgotten what that was, but that was the direction from the Tri-Day report we had. So it was, the request of the joint meeting was followed through at the district board meeting, and we're on track for that.
Yes, sir. So the three items would be, and this is broadly stated, fix dispatch, there are lots of pieces in the recommendations, and of course, ideas that my board would have, Mr. Chairman, my chairman has, and I have, that would help to do that. To renegotiate the franchise agreement, and that's where I would want, with your permission, to have Mr. Klinger involved, Mr. Carey on behalf of Spark City Council, and Ms. Simon, to discuss what of those things specifically within Dr. Cohen's report, and what other kinds of issues would we need to discuss. And then the third item is to look at what it would take, and how much it would cost, and a timeline for implementation for an EMS agency. And if all three of you ask that the District Board of Health be where that is located, the District Board of Health did agree that they felt they should do that on your behalf, all of your behaves, and we'd be happy to go forward.
And you might remember from the meeting, the estimated total for EMS was somewhere between 450,000 and 750,000. So that, obviously, it needs to be studied, but we have a sense of what the cost will be.
Yes, sir. I might add to that, that what Dr. Cohen didn't add into that is the county's cost allocation, which they're now charging us 30% on all of our dollars. So you'd have to, at the very least, charge, add 30% on that to cover the county's overhead for what they say they spend on our behalf.
I'm sure they'll be willing to pay it. That's okay.
One more question, Dr. Iser, is REMZA's willingness to come to the table is predicated on the fact that we also said that we might terminate the agreement. And I think that we have a time limit of December 15th to send that letter. So unless we get something formative from REMZA, saying that they're willing to move ahead, and everybody wants to postpone this, I see this as a potential delaying tactic, so you miss another year. So I would, personally, I'd like to see something from REMZA, stay in writing, that they're willing to open up the thing, and negotiations are started, some trigger in there, because it wouldn't hurt us to send the notice, anyway, and work on those things in the middle. But they've done this before.
Dave, I'm sure that you might be right about the specificity of it. I took, when Dick Barnard came, I thought that's pretty much what he said, but if you need it in writing, I would be surprised they wouldn't give it.
I don't have those in my minutes, but he did say that in public forum, and it will be on the minutes that they'll approve next week. And I'd be happy.
Well, that's what I'd like, I'd like our attorney to sort of look at what kind of wording would be there, to give us teeth, so that we can still make sure that REMZA comes to the table to actually do the negotiating.
Right. If I may add, sir, and we can ask your attorney to give an opinion on this, but honestly, if you wanted to take REMZA away from the District Board of Health, and the Washoe County Health District, you don't have to terminate the agreement to do that. And the second thing that I think a previous Reno attorney has said is that the franchise agreement outlives the district, much as you were asking the question about a lease outliving the current owner. But that would be something that I would suggest you ask your attorney to give you an opinion on.
Okay. Mr. Guston, what would you like to do?
Well, I would move to accept the staff recommendations and the explanation, Dr. Iser, that the District Board of Health is moving forward on this.
I would second that, and in one response to Dave's question about termination, you could at least get a stipulation from them. If December 15th is the last day to terminate the agreement, at least get a stipulation to say they'll extend the date, so to at least give you the opportunity to complete your negotiations.
What Mr. Iasi is talking about, though, has nothing to do with the franchise. It has something to do with the inter-local agreement that the three of you.
We might need a stipulation from Sparks and Washoe County on that, that we could make that modification.
And for what it's worth, we counted back 15 days from the end of the year, so you have an additional day, the 16th.
I don't, I only have six more days.
And indeed, any one of the three of you can withdraw, and that terminates the agreement. So it doesn't take all three of you. And again, your city attorney can read the franchise, the inter-local agreement, but that's certainly how I interpret it.
Did you, I just wanted to clarify one thing, because at the last meeting, I believe you said part of the motion was...
Could you speak up just a little bit? I'm sorry.
You said part of the motion was for the health board to be the oversight committee for EMS. I believe we left it that open. I want to make sure that's still open, either the health board or another agency. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? Yeah.
That's not what our minutes say, but that, we might have misheard.
That was my intention, and I think that's what the council's intention was, too. So I want to make sure.
And we certainly would support whatever you wanted to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item G8, Waste Management. What do you want to do? Is that gonna take, is that gonna be quick? How many people here for Wells Avenue?
Four people.
They all want to speak? Well, that's more than five minutes. It's like a half an hour's worth of stuff. Okay, F-21, you want to accept the staff recommendation?
Go ahead and accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F-22, Public Comment, Dagny Stapleton, followed by Barry Schuster.
Hi, good afternoon, thanks. Dagny Stapleton, one of founding members of the Wester Wells Neighborhood Group, and a property owner at 327 Wheeler Avenue. And I know what you guys just voted on was quick, but it was the approval for the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Conservation District, and...
Actually, the next motion is for to accept it, so.
Oh, okay, well.
They chose the staff.
Okay. Well, I want to speak in support of the next agenda item, and in hopes that you guys will approve that. It's really important for our neighborhood. It's a recognition of the historic value of our neighborhood, and includes the catalog of the historic homes and buildings in the neighborhood. So speak in support, I wanted to speak in support, but I also just wanted to take this opportunity in consideration of the changes on the council, to thank the existing council for all of their help and support over the years of the Wells Avenue Neighborhood. We've accomplished a whole lot, from working on the neighborhood plan, to the infrastructure changes in the neighborhood, sidewalks, new streets, streetlights, a significant improvement or reduction in crime over the years, as well as the streetscape on Wells Avenue, street trees. And I think, at this point, considering all these changes, we really have to pat ourselves on the back, and we're really seeing some successes with the opening of the Deluxe Laundry last week, an adaptive use infill project that preserved a historic building, as well as all the energy that's going into the Midtown District adjacent to our neighborhood. I just think it's been a huge success for all of us, and for you guys, and every step of the way, city staff was supportive, you guys were supportive, especially Councilwoman Ralston. And you guys supported us with code enforcement, with RPD, the Historic Resources folks have been great. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank this council and recognize all the work that's been done for our neighborhood over the years, and to thank you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dagny. Barry Schuster, followed by Mark Taxer.
Hello, Barry Schuster, for the record. I just, I kind of want to echo a lot of what Dagny said, and just have one final opportunity to thank this council for the support that you've given the Wells Avenue Neighborhood over the years. I've lived in that neighborhood for eight and a half years, and I've just watched it improve. And this Conservation District is a very important element of the continued success of the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Mark Taxer. Mark leave. Okay. Ordnance? Resolution?
Resolution, Resolution Number 7783. Resolution to amend Resolution Number 5673 by adopting a change to the historic plan of the Reno Master Plan as approved in Case Number LDC 13-00014.
Move to refer, or, I'm sorry, adopt.
Motion is second to adopt. And I want to thank the neighborhood for getting together and working together on all this stuff over the years, and also, since she's in the audience today, I've told this to her privately, but publicly also. Candace Pierce Beelzer had a lot to do with this on Wells Avenue. Thank you for, I think, starting a lot of that.
She did. Used to be in Ward 2.
Mr. Guston.
If I may comment, we have a previous Conservation District, which was in the notes. The pounding, Claudia, do you know, the pounding was the 17th in the country. Just try how exclusive this is and how special it is. Do we have a count on what the wells would be when it's approved?
Claudia Hansen, Plating Engineering Manager, on the Conservation Districts?
Yes.
This is just our second one.
What I mean is, it's the second one in the city, but nationally, pounding was 17. Anyway, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm sure there aren't too many of them, but it takes, first of all, a lot of work and people identifying all the properties and going through the mapping, and it's just a tremendous amount of work. And so, congratulations to Jessica and Ward 3, and the Historic Resources Commission, the people who have done the work on this, because a Conservation District is really a big deal. So, I'm pleased that we're moving forward on this, and the second one in the city, I think that's, that's great. It's enormous.
I just want to echo the same comments, Dave. Since the last opportunity, Dagny and Barry and everybody, the Durham's are here, just, I mean, you talk about a neighborhood watch, and that term is used a lot, but they really have the most active neighborhood watch in the whole entire community. And it, talk about grassroots neighborhoods, putting it all together, the tree planting over the years, the hunter trees, Barry mapping out all the historical areas, just tremendous job by the neighborhood over there. So, thank you.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item G8. We've got a lot on G8, G8-1 through G8-8. The first one is a staff report. Can we just sort of hear all these together as one?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. You can hear the staff report and information on them all as one, but they would require separate motions.
Right. Separate motions, but we could talk about them all at once together?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
But, you know, like, the ordinance adoptions will require readings, too.
Okay. So, here's how we'll do this, is we'll have the staff report, then we'll ask questions of council to staff, then I'll open up the public comment period, and then we'll bring it back to council for further questions and comments, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council, Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator. With your permission, what I'd like to do is give you a brief overview of how we arrived to today, and then, we have a policy flow chart similar to what we had two weeks ago, where you've already made several decisions, and we have a few more key decisions to make, and I'd just like to walk us through that process. As all of you are well aware, this has been an issue that we've been dealing with for over five years. And it started back in 2007 with concerns from the citizens and concerns from a commercial operators group that wanted enhanced recycling in our community. One, we had low recycling rates. Two, we had a lot of issues with the two bin system that we have, as far as what can go in the bins, what can't go in the bins. A lot of litter with wind-blown, on windy days, when the recyclables blow around. We had illegal dumping. We had an antiquated recycling facility. And we also had issues that were coming to you through the years on franchise erosion. And the council made the decision, most recently, in '92, to franchise the commercial market. So, we moved forward in negotiating with Waste Management on how to come forward with a new franchise agreement on the residential and commercial side, to bring to you that would address concerns. We brought this to the council back in 2008, after we finished a pilot study. But, along with that, we've had several meetings. We've had three green summits, where this was a topic of discussion at the Green Summit, on particular outcomes. We had it as a regular standing agenda item of our commercial recycling group. We had the pilot study, as I mentioned, the University of Nevada Reno MRF study, the Regional Working Group, which was comprised of Wash County, City of Sparks, and Waste Management, that met very frequently. We took it to all the neighborhood advisory boards for input on a couple of occasions. And you, as a council, this is the 10th time you're hearing it as a proposal and presentation. What you have before you are the changes to the ordinance, which you saw at first reading two weeks ago. And with that, you have four agreements that go alongside it. And part of this is, we are trying to take the full franchise out of the ordinance, to put the primary responsibilities in the ordinance, and then to have these four working agreements that will serve as we go through and do the five-year reviews, and we look at the program, and we work with the franchise haulers on making changes, that we can bring these agreements back to you on a more flexible basis. Within there, we have addressed a lot of issues over the years in both the residential and commercial recycling program. What this new proposed program does is it increases the volume of recycling, increases diversion away from the landfill, expands the type of materials, expands service choices for Reno residents with the Pay As You Throw program. And it's important to note in that table on the staff report, we are moving people from a standard 96-gallon cart to what is the new base level of a 64-gallon garbage cart and a 96-gallon recycling cart. We have senior rate options, senior and disabled service options, transfer station access, flexibility to adapt to future needs, the five-year review process, as we talked about, more green facilities. It addresses the erosion problem that we've been dealing with. It stops a lot of the legal issues that are out there. It provides stable, reliable growth for rates for the residents. It keeps the residential rates at or near their current levels. I have included rate charts in your handouts there, that were in the first memo to council of the residential rates in the West, as well as the commercial rates that I was able to acquire. It does create a closed bin system for the recycling, so we get rid of the wind-blown recyclables. It can also address the issue of people picking into the recycling bins. We have a bins, tags, leaf service issue that we can talk, we'll talk about more in the decision points. We have the four free trips to the transfer station for all citizens in good standing. We have a new drop-off center and education center that will take e-waste, household hazardous waste, and medical waste. And through the years, we've had the support of Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful, the Illegal Dumping Task Force, the Sierra Club, the Regional Green Team, strong citizen support on getting a new program and bringing it forward. We, one of the things we did direct Waste Management and Castaway Trash Hauling to do was to go work it out, as they both kept coming to council with issues that they wanted council to resolve. And these agreements reflect that they've come to a resolution on their issues, and those are addressed in here. And then, what you have in your staff report behind the ordinances are four agreements. There's the residential franchise agreement, there's two commercial franchise agreements, and then a disposal agreement that deals with the transfer stations. In the two commercial agreements, you basically have a split up of the market, where Reno Disposal gets 80.5% of the market, Castaway Trash Hauling gets 19.5% of the market. And other than that, we strive to mirror the terms so that they're identical. Levels of service, bonding capacity, customer review and complaint resolution, terms of service, the five-year review and what we'd be going through in the reviews, auditing of their books, rate setting, and term of the agreements. Two minor changes that I need to mention to you while up here in the agreements, just oversight and drafting. I apologize again for getting you all these huge documents late, but we were continually drafting and trying to appease all of the concerns that had been raised at council, and had been raised in all the groups that we had meetings with. One of them is in the Castaway Trash Hauling Commercial Agreement, Section 3.7, on page 19. I'd left the rate in there as the equivalent to the Waste Management Not To Exceed Rate or Reno Disposal. It actually should be 19.5%. So, it's actually 210,950 would be there, not to exceed amount, and we'll make that change. And then, one of the issues that the small haulers wanted to address in both of the commercial agreements is Section 3.2D4, that allows them to transfer those exempted hauler accounts amongst themselves, to sell or move them, as well as to bring in financial partners. So, those are two minor agreements that we'll make in the final drafting of that. And with that, I would like to go through the policy flow chart that you have before you, and is on the overhead, possibly. The first six items, you all discussed and resolved at your meeting on the 24th, and have been incorporated and reflected in these agreements. The first is that you said yes proceed, or that you wanted to proceed on with the commercial franchise and expand in that direction. The second was the hauler exemption. We provided two options for the hauler exemptions. The one recommended by the small haulers, what was a dropbox exemption. And this means that those, thank you, Jonathan, that the dropboxes 10 yards and above for the temporary services, or the permanent services in the excluded categories, are completely out of the franchise, and they can continue to do business in that category. Third was the processing facility exemption, where you approved the Nevada Recycling and Salvage to be exempt in the disposal agreement, and also in the commercial agreement, as far as that goes, with a volume cap of franchise materials at 125,000 cubic yards, increasing with GDP. There are still some NRS, Nevada Recycling and Salvage issues that you'll hear about, and I will touch on one of them here. You wanted to maintain the commercial market subsidizing the residential rates. You wanted to keep the commercial franchise fee at 8%. And you had approved exempting the current customers from those small haulers who had existing permanent accounts that would otherwise fall under the franchise. And that has been addressed in there. And just to pause there, a lot of the issues that you've been hearing, you know, we've dealt with a lot of the residential concerns, a lot of the commercial concerns, and a lot of the issues you've been hearing lately are those people who could have their businesses impacted by this change. We believe that the exempted dropbox exemption, exempted dropboxes, as well as the excluded haulers for the permanent accounts, addresses those concerns. I'm still going through all of their records and establishing a list of their permanent accounts, but that exclusion that's in there keeps them whole. And then, the exempted dropbox category, as well as all the other excluded materials, give them all an opportunity to expand their businesses going forward. Item seven, you said you wanted to proceed forward with the 8% rate level on the residential rates. So, that is what's in the table, but you said you had the option to come back today and change that if you wanted. Item eight was the rate adjustment methodology. You wanted the other CPI or limitation. We put in a modified agreement to what you have in there, where the existing caps apply, although there is a minimum of an increase of 1% a year, or CPI, whichever is less. And that would start in the fourth year after the new agreement is in place. The item number nine is landscaping and home remodels. In exempting out the dropbox categories, this allows any of the companies, if they're going to go do a home CND remodel, if they're going to do a home cleanout, or if they're servicing a landscaping company, they can go drop that box and pick it up, and that's out of the categories. The other part in the exclusion for landscaping is that if there is a landscaping box at a commercial landscaping firm, if they've got a box set aside for Company X, and all of their landscapers go out and they go around the city, and they collect all that waste in their trucks, and they come back and they put in that landscaping box, that's excluded in that category, and they can continue to do that. The only place it bumps up on the franchise is if they start mixing the waste at their site with their garbage, their lunch waste, or other materials, and start eroding the existing business that they have. So, that's how we've addressed all the issues that had come before you. The three issues that are still, I believe, pending and require direction here today are the sticker service options that Councilwoman Zadra brought forward, and in the Schedule C of the residential agreement, I also gave you a handout today on Schedule C. You'll see three option levels there. And what we asked them to do was to take that 8% residential rate that you had selected and price out going to, from the 20 stickers that are included, going to 30 stickers and 40 stickers. And then, another option that is priced out there with leaves and fall cleanup being the primary concern, is if we just had them continue the seven-bag service from mid-October to the end of November. So, for that six-week period, everybody could put out those seven bags every week, like they currently do, to handle the leaf issues, if that would do it. And if you look in your chart, you will see that the pricing based on, sorry, wrong tab. This folder's gotten very large over the last month. And the top of Exhibit C, the residential franchise agreement, what you'll see there for the standard services is a column that shows what the rates are under the 8% option you directed at the last meeting. You will see a, the yard waste category. The yard waste category is the second one over there. I can't reach. That's in yellow, and that category is for the six-week service. So, it would add 91 cents to every service level per month, per customer, to provide that six weeks or 42 extra bags. For the additional 10 stickers to go to 30, it would be $1.37 per household per month. And to go to 40, it would be $2.74 per household per month.
But, Jason, if I may, just at that point.
Yes.
That's not for the person only getting the stickers, that's for every household.
That's the price per household.
It'd be the rate increase for every household.
Correct. So, every household in the standard rate would get 20 stickers and four free trips to the dump. And then, those other three options would be to increase it to that six-week service, or to add an additional 10 or 20 stickers. The next decision point relates to Nevada Recycling and Salvage, where they're, they have a memo that I also handed out to you, addressing their ability, under their exemption, to consent to any change that may impact their facility, and I believe they'll come speak to that point. And then, item 12, the last one there, is looking at the dropbox service competitive pricing. And one of the issues that popped up in there is the franchise rate for dropbox services is lower than the commercial market rate for dropbox services at this point in time. That's an issue that's been in the rates, and it's been in there for quite a long time. If you make no decision today, that will still exist. If you adopt a new agreement, it will exist, and there's a 5% increase in there. So, that lack of competition there on those pricing exists today, it will exist tomorrow. But, that is an issue you may hear about. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions at this time? Okay. We'll go to public comment. First item, Levon Brooks, followed by George Hutchinson.
Thanks, Councilwoman Iasi, for calling me first. I really appreciate that. Not. It's good to see you. Congratulations. And I feel like I'm losing some old friends from the council, but it's been, it's been fun. I appreciate, first of all, I'm late to the party on this issue. It's been discussed for quite a long time, and I only recently was involved, although we've certainly been a customer of Waste Management for quite some time. You know that we have retail thrift operations, so we're certainly creating a lot of trash for Waste Management, and we also have three commercial buildings. In understanding this, which is very complicated, my only concern, and/or something I would ask council to think about, are really two things. One is, what's the process? In effect, we have a public utility, because it is, it creates an exclusive agreement for a particular provider of service. If I look at other models of that, like NV Energy, or the Atama, or other kinds of, those kinds of resources, there are provisions for, for holding them accountable relative to either complaints or, and/or, in this case, we certainly have a very strong recycling effort. But, if my water goes awry, I got a phone call, it literally happened to me, got a phone call from the water organization that says, "Something's wrong, because your bill is crazy." And I'm not sure that we have that kind of provision in this particular case, where if a commercial entity such- if a commercial entity such, happened with us at one point, we were, our trash was being hauled at a much higher rate than was necessary, but we only discovered that later. But there wasn't a process by which that was partnered with me in that scenario. So that's one consideration, especially in this scenario. And last is as a large employer and a large contributor, it's kind of the old adage, to whom much is given, much is expected. I would like to see waste management's contribution back to our community by way of charitable donations and other kinds of things. I know that they really partnered well with Art Town as an example, but were also paid on the other side to haul the trash from the Art Town parks and so on where Art Town frequents. So it's a great example of a win-win scenario and I'd certainly like to understand more about their charitable contributions to our community over time and see those things be published. Thank you.
Thank you. George Hutchinson, followed by Gary Duhon.
Hi, I'm George Hutchinson, associated with Trash Go, one of the smaller trash hauler companies. I want to address just one issue on this chart today and it's the last item, item 12 on your competitive pricing. Others will address a couple of other issues, I believe. The rate schedule that was presented at the last workshop indicated that the Dropbox, and Dropbox being defined as 10 yards or larger rates, would be at a cost that is below, equal to or below cost of castaways and I didn't hear Waste Management say it, but there, there, there is no profit in that rate. When asked why they would have these rates so low, the answer was that because of the front load, the smaller boxes that they can pick up, that people are going to be required to take, the profit in those smaller boxes, the front loaders we'll call them, were so great that they could compensate for the lower prices on the Dropbox, on the 10, 10, 10-yard and above. So those, those front loader boxes are absorbing and subsidizing the larger boxes. The problem there is that those rates are so low that any of the small haulers cannot, cannot compete at all. And so the, all, everything that we've tried to work out would really go out the window from the standpoint of the small haulers because they could not compete. And so it doesn't matter whether they can haul excluded or exempt materials, it, their costs would be, they are not going to be able to get the work based on rates alone. I think a recommendation would be to eliminate the drop boxes from the commercial franchise, 10 yards and above. Adjust the rates on the front loaded, the front loaders for the smaller boxes to a reasonable profit, if I understand, and I don't know how it was made up, but the prices were arrived at, but the front loaders, as I understand, are very, very profitable under the franchise, proposed franchise rates. And Jason had, Mr. Geddes had mentioned that we have to have Dropbox rates in the franchise agreement for special activities for the city events and people that are, businesses that are providing those events. So that I think that could be resolved by coming up with a rate for those special events so that they would be not on a competitive bid. I think that's all I have on that issue. I think again, probably the best option is Option 1, which is to eliminate the commercial, competitive, commercial hauling in Reno because it just, it does restrict trade and it restricts competition. And that's not good for the people.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you.
Gary Duhon, followed by Candace Pierce Beelser.
Good afternoon, Gary Duhon for Waste Management Refuse, Inc. and Reno Disposal Company. Mr. Geddes did such a comprehensive and excellent job on the summary and the presentation. I really don't have anything else to add. I think he correctly stated that we've addressed all the issues. One of the great concerns here was that the haulers and the other, and the facility, Mr. Beelser's facility be protected, that their current business be protected and preserved and provide an opportunity for growth. I think we've done that completely. One of the big concerns was landscaping. We've done that in absolutely clear and uncertain terms and I think we've addressed all the other issues. We have some options for, to address the yard waste and I think we've got a good resolution on the 8% cap issue that we've proposed. Other than that, I'll just sit down and we're available for questions. And we would very much like to participate in further discussions about this, provide input, answer questions, because there are a lot of issues here and although I think we've answered every single question, we want to make sure they're clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace, followed by David Williams.
Well, this is Candace Pierce Beelser. This is the third time I've been before you. I wish I could say that we've come a long way. At our meeting two weeks ago, we didn't speak because we felt we'd come to a good resolution. I think probably most of you up there felt that. That changed on Friday because every time you get a final thing from Waste Management, it changes the focus of what they want. The reality is, the haulers and we have talked about all different kinds of things, but they've all been just where they wanted the focus. The reality is, we should have started where we are today, which is where you're talking about the finances. You're talking about what it's going to cost for home delivery, you're talking about what it's going to do to the haulers and to us. The reality is, the way Waste Management controls getting what they want is through money. And what they want today is for you to vote on this a second time. And I truly believe in my heart as a taxpayer that Dan Guston was right. You should get it right, not get it fast. And I don't believe you have the financials today to make this decision. Basically, they're threatening everybody. I mean, they want to take, do, I mean, the haulers will be up here to tell you, but they want to lower their rates so much that the haulers can't survive. I mean, they're talking about lowering rates so that basically, there is a question if we'll even have customers to worry about. They're using the money, which is where we should have started, but none of us have ever done a franchise before, so we didn't really know that. They do this as a business. Their business is making a profit. I respect that. I think they've done a great job at what they're doing. I just hope that in your zest, which I understand with, you know, a couple of you leaving and wanting to tie this up in a package so that it's over before you leave, I sort of hope you don't make any decisions today that are going to last for 17 years that are going to have an impact. Because once we're all gone, there's, there's going to be no competition. So when they start raising rates, every citizen in this community is going to pay for it, not just residential, not just commercial. And I know your concern is not us. I think you've really gone out of your way to protect the small businesses. I think you've done everything you could. I'm very impressed with the council. I am impressed with Ms. Ray Assi. But truly, what's happening is, they're going to get what they want because they've had us all focused on the wrong thing. And the last thing I would say is, if you want to do this, take the time, some of you are still going to be here, take the time and get an outside audit and find out if any of their facts are true about finances. We honestly don't know. We're taking their word for what they say they need, what they make, how it's going to impact residential. None of us know that. I really think in most cities, you have an outside third party, look at the finances before you start doing franchise things. And I would hope you would consider that. My last thing I would say is, thank you.
David Williams, followed by Dan Reeser.
Councilmembers, thank you for letting me speak. Just a couple of housekeeping matters. I'm an attorney. I represent High Desert Recycling, Nevada Corporation. That is a state-of-the-art business in terms of taking what used to be businesses' discards and wastes and recycling them or turning them into byproducts that can be sold to, be used as raw equipment, raw materials for new items and whatnot. I submitted some public comments in writing, which I hope you all have, as well as a Public Records Act request. And then finally, just a housekeeping matter, that High Desert Recycling, if you do adopt the proposal today, High Desert Recycling would like to just put on the record that it also joins all of the objections and issues and comments that have been made by any of the other parties that are not in the letter. Turning to the substance of what I'd like to cover, and very briefly, it's essentially a legal point. An exclusive franchise is a restraint of trade. It's allowing a monopoly usually for a large business to exclude operations of smaller businesses. It's legal only if, and as such, it's generally disfavored, often illegal, to restrain trade. And it's only allowed as a franchise agreement if the agreement is enacted or is authorized by an enabling statute at the state level. In this case, the enabling statute at the state level is Nevada Revised Statute 268081, which says that it's allowed for a city to create a franchise and the language is for the collection and disposal, the collection and disposal of garbage and other waste. And the critical question with regard to what the city is proposing or what's being proposed for the city to do here is what is the limit of the term garbage and waste? That question has not been faced by a Nevada court that I'm aware of, but that question was faced in 1994 by the California Supreme Court that came out and drew a very bright line, said, "The distinction is, if you sell it, it's not waste. If you sell it, it's your private property. If it's your private property, it's not subject to franchisability by a city." In that case, which was Waste Management of the Desert versus Palm Springs Recycling Center, Waste Management argued that the recycling of material should be included within the city franchise. Recycling Center objected, said that outside of what can be authorized by a franchise agreement, California Supreme Court agreed and said, "If you are selling it, then you cannot be restricted as to who you sell it to." As I understand it, the city attorney has taken the position that Nevada is not likely to follow California on this. I've been practicing in this area since 1995. I've never seen a court not follow the California Supreme Court case. So I think that the city's position from the attorney, if that's truly the position, is a very minority position to take. If you turn to the language of the franchise, it's clear that the franchise agreement and the franchise ordinance does include franchise materials that could be sold by a source. Anyway.
Can you give us, give me a couple of examples of what could be sold that's not in there? What are the exemptions?
Sure. So for example, High Desert Recycling is, is working on some patented, some patented machinery that allows, for example, removing dirt or food waste like ketchup from a ketchup bottle. And then cleaning the plastic, shredding the plastic, making the plastic so that it is sellable as plastic. And the ketchup, sellable to like a biodigester. It's sophisticated equipment, it's expensive equipment. To say, the source of the plastic bottles, say a grocery store, has got to source separate, what does that mean? Does that mean separate the ketchup from the plastic? It's this expensive machinery that High Desert has been spending millions of dollars developing that allow that kind of treatment of this material. But because High Desert can do that, it's willing to go to the grocery store and say, "Don't throw it away, we'll buy it."
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Dan Reeser.
Good afternoon, Council Dan Reeser with Lionel Sawyer and Collins on behalf of Castaway Trash Hauling, Inc. Today, the council is going to be called upon to make some tough decisions about Reno's solid waste management program. You have and you will undoubtedly hear additional arguments that you need to delay for more study, more review, and more negotiation. You'll also hear, as you already have, that people just absolutely disagree with the decision to move forward with franchising the commercial market in whole. The decision is not going to be easier with more study or more negotiation. The issue is the one I told you in the very first hearing. You have to decide, are you going to franchise the commercial market in whole? And I believe you've made that decision at the first reading. You made that decision at the first reading because it is the only path forward for three big goals that you have paid great attention to in private and in public. First, expanding residential and commercial recycling. Two, creating a business environment that will generate over $25 million in new green industry investment. And three, providing a stable commercial subsidy of over 19% from the commercial market to support and prevent future dramatic increases in residential rates. So unless you're going to backtrack on those decisions, there's really only three issues for you to decide today. First, does the ordinance and the franchise agreements contain a balanced approach to protect the existing business, not some future or planned business of Castaway and the other independent haulers? In response to questions, I will happily take you through why Castaway believes that the balance has been struck here. But I want to get all of my main topics in. So if you have questions on why I believe that balance has been struck here, I will be happy to answer those questions. Second, is the proposal before you a proper balancing of NRS's interests to continue in its business model as a disposal site? It is our view that it is being granted valuable grandfather rights here and it is being protected. As with the haulers, their existing business, as Mr. Geddes pointed out, Mr. Duhon pointed out, and will be happy to answer in vivid detail, have been addressed. And third, are the franchise agreements and the disposal agreements before you fair to both parties? And we believe they are a quantum leap forward. I would also invite you, if you are interested, to ask me later, my views on Mr. Hutchinson's comments on competitive pricing, California's counsel for High Desert's comments on the application of Nevada law, not California law, and third, Ms. Beelser's comments on rate-making. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions and we look forward to continued discussions this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Brett Scolari.
Thank you, council, to you four who were last meeting. Thank you for your service. Your leadership is going to be missed. I stand before you today, we have spent a lot of time on this exemption and appreciate all the time and effort that's been put into it. And we are close on the agreement. There are a couple sticking points that Mr. Shipman and I are working on that I'm happy to discuss. You do have a memo on one of those issues and it's the consent issue. We believe that those rights are going to be effective in any way because we are giving up rights to join in this endeavor that we're all going on in this pseudo-competitive environment. We should be allowed to consent if those rights are going to be adversely affected and I gave you some reasons for that. But what I wanted to focus on was this rate issue, which has caused me great pause to wake up today and tell my client, "Business will be as usual for you as promised tomorrow." Because I can't tell them that. And one of the reasons is, is the first big reason is the haulers. Are they really going to be able to compete with those rates? There might be evidence today to say they will. Great, that won't be a big problem for us. But if the evidence today says they won't be able to compete, that's a huge problem for us. They're a big chunk of our business, 25% to 35% of our business. The other issue is, is the rates that are going to be set by you in the disposal agreement. And I have a overhead here. And I have a overhead here. So today, if a truck, front loader truck pulls up to NRS, let's take Castaway, front loader pulls up, it's $9.45. If they pull up to the gate at the transfer station of waste management, it's $23.66 a yard. Now, the $9.45 is reduced to $9 because NRS does give a 5% timely payment discount to Castaway. So post-franchise, that rate is proposed to be $11.41. Now, I will concede, it's, it still is above our rate, and we can probably compete with that. But it does two things in my mind. One, it caps our rate. It doesn't give us any flexibility to move up because we're essentially capped now on our rates. And number two, and number two, what it does, it provides some uncertainty that I've had, and I've said this many, many times. Is that rate now low enough for Castaway to make the decision to not haul those materials to our facility? And that's a question I can't answer. I wish I could. I hope the answer is no. I'm expecting the answer to be no, but that's an answer that I just haven't been able to get. So with that, I also echo the comments that Ms. Beesler made. There might be another solution out there that we aren't seeing. There could be a rate study that could help shed some light on all these issues. I don't believe everything's been addressed, but if you are set to move forward today, I will work on those couple of issues with Mr. Shipman. And for the good of the city, we will abide by the agreement that's put in place. Appreciate, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scolari. That's the last public comment card I have. Anyone else wishing to make a statement regarding this agenda item at this time? Yes, sir. Come on up, and then fill out a card when you're done, please.
I did.
Oh, you did? Is that it up there?
It was for item G8.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sorry. My name is Corey Cormier. I represent Trashco Dumpster Service. Six weeks ago, well, first of all, let me thank you, city council, city staff, Waste Management and Castaway for taking us, the small haulers and transfer station into consideration. And with only 53 days ago or so, believing that we should be part of this process. And we want to thank everybody for at least listening to us. We keep talking about the rates, the drop box rates and the current franchise agreement in place. And one thing that has to be pointed out is that the current rates in the current franchise agreement apply to garbage. They don't apply to the commercial market, which is open. So the question keeps being asked, "Well, how do you compete now?" Well, the answer is, we don't because we don't haul garbage. The health department will not allow us to. Garbage is franchised, therefore, we do not have to compete with those rates. The new rates proposed are putting the box service below costs according to Schedule D and the drop, I'm sorry, the dump fees that you were just presented with by Mr. Scolari at the post-franchise rates. So if the drop boxes are being operated at below cost or at cost, why are they necessary part of the franchise agreement? We ask that you keep those out of the agreement. If they are at a negative, it's pretty apparent that it's not a necessary part for the franchise agreement to go forth, and we urge you to keep that open. Also, the last thing is the landscaping issue. We've all been hearing for the last few weeks landscaping is a big issue. Well, it is, and it's still not resolved. What I mean is temporary landscaping, new construction landscaping, temporary service, self-hauling landscaping, those issues have been addressed and resolved, and those are exempt. As of this morning, no, as of yesterday, one conversation with Jason Geddes was that the landscaping customers of one of the haulers were not on their permanent customer list. The reason that those customers were not on the permanent customer list was because it was our understanding, all up until this morning, that landscaping was exempt. And so the response to Jason was, "Well, why do you need check stubs from those customers or contracts when those are exempt and it's an exempted material?" And Jason's response was, "Oh, yes, we don't need those, they are exempt." So there still seems to be some very confusing information out there. Is it exempt or is it not? Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for the last several weeks on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to, this isn't a public hearing, but bring it back to the table. Any questions? Ms. Frazza.
We get, I guess, Jason, where, can you explain the rates issue to me?
Yes. Basically, what we have is rate schedules in our current franchise. We have to provide the roll-off drop box service in the franchise for those people who have garbage service, such as special events and those industrial properties that have it. So the decision a long time ago was to have those in the franchise. And if we're going to provide that roll-off service, the 30-yard dumpster to a neighborhood cleanup, or the 30-yard dumpster to a special event where garbage is going to be going in it, we have to have a franchise rate in there. So we do have these franchise rates in here. On the schedule that you see, or saw briefly, what we have is two things. If someone calls up for a franchise garbage service for a special event, or they say they need a 30-yard box for a franchise service, these are the current rates that they're paying right now, the 133, the 185, and 278. So if, if you do nothing today, and somebody called up and said, "I want a dumpster, and I want a dumpster for garbage service or franchise service," this is the rate that they have to charge. If you approve the Schedule D and the commercial agreements tomorrow, or today, and post-implementation date, if someone called up and said, "I need a drop box for franchise service," this is what they would have to charge. The difference is, for those materials that aren't under the franchise, non-garbage, the trash hauling, if anybody called up, any of the companies, the Waste Management's Commercial Division, Castway's Commercial Division, any of the haulers here today, and they called up and said, "What is your rate?", there is no franchise controls of that, as long as they're not hauling garbage, our franchise materials, they can charge whatever they want. In the rate structure that we have before you, these are the rates. So in the decision chart that you see, one of the things we discussed is, through the years, similar to the commercial subsidy to the residential side, we have all of the different commercial accounts blended into these rates. So what we're, what we had thrown out as an option to look at is, we know, once we adopt this program, we're going to see how many people migrate to the new service, at what level of service they move into, how many people are taking advantage of the program, and we're going to have to revise these rates. And what we can do is go in and look at how each one of these individual services, how their actual rate structure is built, so that we don't have cross-subsidy of commercial rates, and then look at resetting those rates on the franchise materials as we go forward. And we can bring that back to you, to the next council at a later date, and look at those things. And in that meantime, what we have is, in the agreement, you don't lose a permanent customer if, until you've not serviced them for a year, unless they actually choose to go to somebody else. So we have a year to really get through.
Jason, can I try to answer the question and tell me if I'm wrong?
Yes, sir.
The Schedule D rates apply to garbage. Doesn't apply to what the haulers haul now. Is that right or wrong?
It, it gets into that landscaping materials. If they're hauling garbage, then that rate would impact them. If they're not hauling garbage, no.
If they're not hauling garbage, so what the haulers haul now, because that's, that rate schedules in our current agreement with Waste Management right now.
Correct.
Correct? So that's not a modification to that? So the haulers, they don't have to abide by that rate, and neither does Waste Management when they go to haul commercial stuff. They charge what they want because it's out of the franchise. Am I wrong?
Correct. The small haulers, Waste Management, Castaway, outside of the franchise materials, they can all charge whatever they want.
So that rate in Schedule D doesn't really apply to the haulers, in your opinion?
It, it wouldn't unless, unless you got into, I don't think it does because we exclude their permanent accounts.
Right.
And we exclude the drop box. So it shouldn't apply to that.
I guess I'm just trying to understand the objection then, for maybe small haulers can explain.
Well, I think I can explain the objection is, right now, if they have a 30-yard box, and they go out and they go to Waste Management, and they say, "I need a 30-yard box for commercial waste," and it's not garbage, they could say 450, and they can go to Castaway and say, "I need a commercial box, 425." And they can say, "Well, I can do it for 400." The fear going forward would be that Waste Management or Castaway could say, "We'll just put it in the franchise, and now we can charge you 292." And then it would be below what they could compete with. That is the, that's the objection, and I think they would all agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But come on, come on up here, Mr. Hutchinson, please.
While those rates are very muddy, how the, to us, how the rates were arrived at, it's my understanding, and you can talk with Mr., the Castaway people and Waste Management people, it's my understanding, the front loader rates that are now incorporated into this commercial agreement are going to give them sufficient profits, we'll call it, I'm going to call it the golden goose, that they don't have to be competitive with the drop box. So, so, but they're, they're going to make money, they, their customer calls up for a 30-yarder, they say, "We'll give it to you for 292." Small haulers can't.
The way I understood this, how the numbers got in there is, they just took what's in the current agreement and upped it by 5%.
Right.
And that's how.
And that's for garbage.
Right. And that's all that this applies to.
It's not to you guys.
This only, this only applies to garbage.
No, this, well, no, but the customers, the customers now are forced to use, you know, commercial customers are now going to be forced to use, do their small boxes. When they need a big box, they're going to call Waste Management and get a quote. Presumably, Waste Management will quote 292.
Only if they're saying, "We need a, a thing for garbage."
Well, then they, no, no, well, they throw a piece of garbage in there and.
This only applies to, but that, isn't that what happens now? I mean, this, these rates only apply to garbage rates?
No, well, the difference is, the difference is, excuse me, I'm getting excited here.
Oh, please.
The difference is that Waste Management would lose money at those rates now under, they couldn't do it, and they don't do it. They, they charge 500 and something for a 30-yarder. But with the additional revenues that are going to be coming from the front loader, and you can dispute me if you want, from the, from the small boxes, they've got sufficient revenues where they don't have to be, they don't have to make their money off of those 30-yards.
And couldn't they do that right now?
Well, they could, but they don't, they don't have the, they don't have that golden goose from the, from the front loaders, from the, from the small.
Okay. Dwight, you want to follow up on this?
Yeah, just, Jason, just to follow up on that. If someone calls Waste Management today and has, needs a 30-yard box for garbage, it's 278.85.
Correct.
And any, and they can call and, and get that tomorrow.
Correct. If, if they call and they say, "I need a 30-yard dumpster," and they say, "What's it for?", and they say, "A home cleanout or garage cleanout," then they would quote their commercial rate, whatever that is. If, if you say it's garbage service, "I've, I've got a special event in the park, and we're serving food," this is the franchise rate. So, and I would correct one thing there, as far as the golden goose side of the front-loading, is all of that is currently in the rate structure. The commercial rate structure from the 96-gallon, once-a-week toter, all the way up to the 40-yard compacted load, is in the rate structure. The only change to it is this 5% increase on the drop boxes. All the rest of the commercial rates are the same.
And, and we don't, on, on the non-franchise waste, so trash, I guess, if, if someone, we don't, we don't control those rates today. I mean, Waste Management can charge whatever they want for those, correct?
Correct. They have a non-franchise division.
Or Castaway, for that matter, I mean.
Castaway and, Castaway is a non-franchisee today. Waste has a non-franchise division of commercial hauling.
So we don't regulate those. We don't regulate those fees at all.
Correct.
So if they wanted to charge $200 for those, they could. If they could make money on it, I mean, I don't know, but.
Correct.
I mean, they could charge whatever they want.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Could I address a couple of points that were brought up there earlier? One is, in the customer service option, that was a concern of this council and a concern of the commercial group that started in '07. So Sections 5.1 through 5.4 of the residential and commercial agreements, we put in an ombudsman position. We also retain the language that any disagreements can come forward to the city council, or to the city manager's office to resolve any outstanding complaints.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question. Who pays for the ombudsman, and who do they report to?
The ombudsman is provided by Waste or Castaway, and it would be an independent person not affiliated with the Reno market who would have that ability to resolve issues, and they would send reports into the city. But if, if that ombudsman can't resolve the issue, then it kicks back to city staff, and then we would work the city manager's office and the complainant to try and resolve that issue. So those are in 5.1 through 5.4 of the agreements. The, and in looking at these rates, we currently have 60 commercial accounts in the drop box under the franchisee now that are permanent garbage service in the 30-yard, as well as the special event 30-yard sections. The financing and auditing the books and looking at the books and rate of returns are in Section 7 and 8 of the agreements that talks about the record-keeping and our right to audit and looking at the books. And if you have specific questions on the current financials, Mr. Chisel did review those, and he could address those questions. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Hasha?
This would be for staff, because I was going to ask about the ombudsman. Then, then if staff cannot resolve it, what does it default to? Is there an appeal to the city council?
It, it appeals up to the city manager's office, and the city manager's office has authority to resolve to the complainant's satisfaction.
All right. But there's no ultimate appeal to the council?
It's not in there, no.
And then.
We, I, I do say, we get those, we get a couple of those a month, and we're, we've been able to resolve them with the city manager's office, all of them, to the customer's satisfaction.
I can't remember, because I know we had the same issue with the, with the cable company as part of their franchise. If I remember right, I thought it would actually kick up to us. We had a, we actually had a committee that would review complaints and try to resolve it. But did we have the right to review any of those complaints?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember back in the day before the state franchising came in.
Right.
Yeah, there was a committee, the Cable Citizens, Cable Compliance Committee.
Right.
There were reports that were made to that committee, but then the state law came in in '07, kind of put that all off to the side. Now, we track those complaints primarily, but most of those, I think, are resolved. I mean, I think Jason's still responsible for those complaints as well. We have a similar provision, like an ombudsman provision in both the electric and gas cable franchise agreements, and that's where we took that from.
Right. Okay. And then, Jason, what happens, let's say that the hauler's worst fears come true, that somehow it becomes not competitive. What, what do we have by way of kind of a safety net? So in other words, I know we have an annual review, I know we have the ability to audit, and we have an ombudsman, we have, we have this basically frag net where we can look at all of these potential issues and then bring those back for discussion purposes with, with the, with the franchisee. Do we, do we have that option? What would happen if we looked at this in a year and, and somebody said, "Wow, maybe, maybe there is some anti-competitive features here that we really didn't think about"? How do we go about correcting that?
Well, I think we do that in, in two categories. One is, you, you did create a condition for an exempted account, so the current haulers now, and I've been working with them to compile the lists, the current haulers now can have a stamped list of their customers as of October 24th that are permanent service customers. And once we get that list completely solved, they basically have, well, they basically have, well, they have a year from ratification of this agreement where those accounts are their accounts, and it stays there. And that gives us the time, as I said, once we start implementing the new program and we see how things go forward, we intend to come back to you in a year with what the impact to rates actually are. A lot of which see in the residential rate schedule are projections based on the service levels and the program and what we think's going to go out there. Well-refined projections, but they are projections, and we believe we'll have to come back and true that up. And I think when we go back and we look at those residential rates, we can look at this category of rates, and we can do that greater look at the rates and say, "You know, this really is an issue," and come back with a proposal to try and pull things forward. So, there's kind of that year safeguard on their current customers with, where someone couldn't come in and say, "No, we're moving you to the franchise rate." So, they have that, and then we can come back with more detail on those rates and try and address.
Do we have the option to then adjust the rates after that one-year look back? Because if I understand, the complaint or the concern is, even with the exemption and even with the excluded materials, once you get down to pricing, that then may, that may make it very difficult for the haulers to compete.
The council always has the right to set the rates.
Right.
We have a CPI and an automatic rate adjustment built in, but then we also have many provisions to adjust the rates in the rate schedule that would come to council. So, it'd be staff working with Waste Management on the price and Castaway.
And Castaway.
Pricing in the various categories, and then bringing back a new proposal to council. And we can reset all of those rates in Schedule C and Schedule, in the residential and Schedule D and the commercial, based on council direction.
Okay. Then I have one quick question for Mr. Reasoner. On this, and if you could do it briefly, please, on this legal analysis, that potentially we would be outside the statute in doing this particular franchise?
I think the difficulty of California Council's argument is that he's only looked at Chapter 268, which is the franchising statute, and he's not looked at the solid waste and recycling statutes under 444 and 444A. And Nevada is an intent of the generator state. It's not the character of the product. So, if the generator of the material says this has been separated and segregated for recycling, then the intent of the generator governs. And if the person puts the material into the solid waste disposal stream, they have waived that generator decision. And your ordinance is consistent with state law in that respect, that it provides that if the generator places the matter in a container for disposal as a solid waste or garbage, then it, they have waived the claim that it is for recycling. If they put it in a recycling container and segregated it, then they've made an election for a recycling. And that is the distinction between Nevada and California law.
Okay.
And I would like to add one other thing, as member Hash Jeff knows. There are, as somebody who argues regularly in front of the Supreme Court of Nevada, they take great pride in not following our brethren to the West.
And just briefly, I just want to make sure I give you equal time. The argument that you had made, I wanted to hear Mr. Reasoner's response. Do you have a response to his? Yeah, quickly, please.
As I understand his argument, he is saying that if the material is placed in a recycled box, or a waste box, or discarded disposal box, that then the generator has intended to put it into the waste stream, and it constitutes garbage or waste and falls within the franchise enabling statute. I don't have any disagreement with that. The point is that the franchise ordinance and the franchise agreement, as it's being proposed, doesn't use that language. It doesn't say, "If the generator puts it in this box and thereby designates it to be waste, or discard, or in the garbage stream, then all of these things apply." It simply says recyclable materials are, and then gives a very broad definition that would include anything that constitutes essentially a byproduct of a process. So, I will say, I don't think the problem I raised is one that couldn't be solved with language clarification, that clarified that if you have material and you're prepared to sell it.
I think the point he was making was, you didn't read other sections of state law that addresses your concerns.
I got that, and I don't think those, I don't think those statute sections go to this issue. That I acknowledge that if material is designated by the generator in a waste receptacle to be waste, it is then waste. And then that brings it within the enabling statute of 081. And...
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Mr. Torch?
Yeah, just Brett, real quick. I just want to get, no, no, I'm sorry. The other attorney. Just on this, on the issue that was, we were talking about with regards to the rate, and I know you and I talked about this a little bit yesterday. I mean, and the way I look at it is, one, I mean, the rate's already there now at a, I mean, 5% lower, a $14 low or something like that than what it's going to be if we prove this. And we don't control the other rate. So, they could charge whatever they want on that other side now, anyway. So, I'm still struggling with where the issue there is.
Are you talking about the hauler rate? The haul rate or the disposal rate?
The, it's the drop rate, right? The Dropbox?
Dropbox rate.
The 30-yard?
My understanding of the hauler issue is with the rate is, if they have an existing customer right now that they're charging a certain rate to, that 292 kicks in. Waste Management or Castaway could call up that customer, and we'll be able to offer that 292 now under their frac.
But couldn't they offer the 284, or whatever it is today, anyway?
I don't know the answer to that.
I guess that'd be, I think that's what we just discussed, right?
Right.
Jason?
Yes. Yes, they can. Yes. Yes, they can.
So, I mean, it's 284 today.
All right. 278.
Or whatever the number is. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they could charge that rate right now.
But I think what, and I don't represent the haulers, so...
I'm sorry. I just know you and I were talking about it yesterday.
I'm trying to...
Trying to circle back and figure out what the issue there is.
Well, my understanding is, today, for the same Dropbox, if you compared it today in the open market, the hauler's rate would be 343, and the Castaway or Waste Management rate would be something above that. I think it's $400 or $500, I've heard.
Well, you're talking about a rate that we don't control, though. Those rates we don't, those aren't in the franchise.
A rate that you don't control. So, the question is, is any of that business that they're competing for today, is any of that business being put into the franchise and under that rate? That's what I don't know the answer to, and that's the confusion, I think. Maybe there is confusion on that issue. So, that's what needs to be probably addressed.
Okay. Thanks.
For staff. Jason, how do we validate, or how have you validated the numbers that have been provided by Waste Management?
I defer to Mr. Chisel for that. He validates.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. The finances for the Waste Management are audited by Price Waterhouse, CPA firm, and we have reviewed them. To be honest, we don't get down, we're not a public utilities commission here at the City of Reno, so we do not have regulatory staff that go in and check every item, but we rely on the audited financial statements by a outside audit firm.
And is that an annual audit?
Yes. They have an annual audit.
And we don't have...
And we put that in the agreement also.
We don't have that audit authority. Does it exist in the state?
I'm sorry.
You said that we don't personally have that audit authority. Does it exist?
We do not physically do the audit. The external auditors.
Price Waterhouse.
Price Waterhouse, an independent audit firm, does the audit, and we rely on their independent audit, just as similar companies do across the country.
As similar companies do.
Well, that's the way it is normally done throughout the country. You rely on an independent auditor to perform the audit for the financials. So, we rely on that independent auditors to do an independent audit and ascertain and attest to the numbers and the values within material, within a materiality level. So, just like they audit us to make sure our books are fine, we rely on an auditor to do Waste Management.
Sharon, can I ask a quick follow-up?
Yeah.
But we, under the agreement, we have a right to audit them, correct, to look at their numbers? How else do we determine the 8%?
Correct.
Okay.
Just because we don't doesn't mean we can't.
No, that is correct.
So, would we?
If we had a need and we had, we could go in and audit their books. Yes, we could. To this point, we've just done a review.
Standard operations wouldn't qualify as a need for you necessarily?
I, you know, I've only been here a year and a half, so I'm not sure if we did audits in the past. We have audited other franchise agreements, and we have plans to conduct franchise audits of all of our franchisees, so to speak. We're doing cable television right now. We're talking about doing our utilities, and probably would do that one in the coming year or two.
Okay. And Robert, would this be you or Jason? More detail on the items 7 and 8, that 8%, the current, and then the adjustment methodology. What would be the extreme, the maximum extreme exposure? Would it be never more than 8 plus 1%? Or would we see in a lucrative year that we could have a 9 plus 1, or an 11 plus 1?
Robert Chisel, yeah. A lot depends, you know, we did a scenario where it depends on what happens with expenses. Are you referring to the plus 1, correct? And just to kind of show you, you know, using a base of 100 for year one, assuming expenditures never increased, you know, I'm not sure that's realistic, but just assuming expenditures never increase, if you increased the rate 1%, which increased your revenues 1%, it'll show you after about seven years, you're going to be at 13.3%. You know, your revenues will increase, therefore, your profit percentage will increase. So, a lot depends. It's not an easy answer to say where we would be, because, you know, at some point expenditures probably will increase, and costs will go up. So, but assuming costs never went up, yes, with a 1% increase, their profit margin would continue to increase.
And just to add into that, the CPI index, that 8% cap that we currently have would start again in year four, once we had three years under the new system. So, if there was a zero expenditure increase in the model that Mr. Chisel has here, we could hit that 10.7 before the 8% cap kicked in, and then the rate increase would be limited to the 1% or CPI, as long as they were above that 8%. And then if they dropped below it again...
That would be the 11 plus 1 that I described.
Theoretically, it could, yes. If expenses were zero, yes.
More than theoretical reality.
Yes. I stand. You're correct.
Can I follow up on that one in your earlier comments? If it's automatic, the rate increases in the proposed agreement, why would we ever need to audit them?
Well, I would like to audit them, make sure I'm getting my franchise fee, I'm getting the correct amount. That's why I would want to audit them.
Okay.
We, at some point, probably the cost would increase, so that's why we would conduct the audit also. I don't think this would be a real foreseeable reality that we would never have costs increase at any time. So...
But if the costs increase, then they come back, and if they're guaranteed an 8% return, and their costs increase, doesn't their profit dollar still go up?
Yes.
While their percentage stays the same, but the dollar amount goes up. The more they spend, actually, the more money in dollars they make. Not percentages, but dollars.
Yes. 8% of $100 is 8. 8% of $200 is 16.
Exactly.
And I'm guessing, thank you. I'm guessing, Jason, this one's you. The additional yard green waste, the 91 cents for every resident. What does that exactly? I mean, I think I heard it two ways, and it actually reads here, the 10 or 20 stickers. So, is it the 10 stickers for 20 bags? Is it the 20 stickers for 40 bags? Or is it the 42 bags over a six-week period at the end of the year?
What you have is the standard rate schedule. As a standard customer, you get four free trips to the transfer station, and then you get 20 stickers, one sticker per bag or bulky item. The yard service, what it would do is, during that six-week period from mid-October to the end of November, every resident could put out seven bags or garbage cans, like they currently do, with yard waste materials that would not require a sticker, that would be outside of that program. It would just be kind of the seven-bag amnesty from August 15th to November 1st, for a total of 42 bags or cans during that six-week period that wouldn't require any stickers. And the difference there cost-wise is that, you know, we can have Waste and Castaway gear up for that limited period of time, knowing that they're going to be out there collecting those items for that six weeks. So, that's how we can get the cost below the sticker cost.
So, you get 20 stickers?
Yes.
And then the opportunity for 42 more bags. So, 62 bags compared to the current 94 for 91 cents more a year.
No, 91 cents a month.
You currently can do 94. You're going to offer 62 and charge 91 cents more a month to do that.
Right.
Why?
Well, one, we're trying to get into the recycling program, and part of the program is going, there's the single-stream recycling, but it is to get everybody putting everything in the recycling bin or the garbage bin, and not the extra-bag service. We can put in the extra-bag service, but this is what the cost of the extra-bag service is. So, what we were trying to do when we first started with the single-stream program, and we penciled out what the rate would be, it was about $5 per household. We negotiated it down, I think, what you saw about a year and a half ago, we were down to about $2.37 increase per household to implement the new program. And what it has been is just a trade-off over the years of what services can we trade off for the recycling to keep the price down low? We could maintain the high level of bags that are out there. Not all citizens use it. It's not everybody putting out seven bags every week. We could maintain that service level, but the rate increase that you would see would be higher. I would defer to Waste to give the specific numbers on the calculation, but that has been the negotiation going through, is that that unlimited service is something that we have in Reno that doesn't exist in Sparks and Washoe, and it's something that we were trading to keep the prices low.
Tell me, yeah, tell me how it keeps the prices low. If we're currently getting the benefit of 96 bags for no additional fee, how does it keep the prices lower?
Because we're putting in the new services, the $27 million investment that was in the Waste presentation, on the eco-center, on the hauling trucks, on the Big Belly Compactors, on the cart in everybody's house, the roll cart for all the recyclables. The implementation of that program is going into the rates that we see.
But I can't put, I can't put that leaf bag in my recycle bin.
Correct. It would have to go into your garbage bin.
So, how can you mix the two and call it saving, saving money? You're qualifying one thing that I cannot put into the recycle bin for benefiting the recycling for being less expensive. You're mixing.
Yes.
If I may just add to that, and it was when I rudely interrupted you in your presentation, and I want to make sure this is clear, that I have it clear, or to explain to other council, when you talk about 10 more stickers or 20 more stickers, you're talking 10 more is $1.37 a month, and 20 more is 274. Now, that's not just for the person using it. That's the entire population of Waste Management.
Correct.
So, okay. I didn't know if that was clear when you were asking the question.
Yeah. That would be per, per household, the 63,000 households per month.
And I understand the need for that, and I'm one of those people that has an awful lot of leaves, but for me, putting the burden of another $1.37 or 274, when we've been talking since the beginning of this franchise agreement, that we would hold the prices down as much as... hold the prices down as much as possible, minimal increases, but increase the service. We saw the menu of that. That's where I have the problem with increasing that through another dollar thirty-seven or two seventy-four for the person who has a very small yard or one tree or doesn't have that. I think that if that person wants additional bags, they get additional bags, but I don't see it being uniform in the entire universe of all the residents of Reno. That's my objection to that.
And my objection is you're not giving the same or better service for the rate. You're actually decreasing one of the services that are currently being provided. That needs to be clearly stated and recognized.
Yes.
Mr. Torch? Any other questions? Mr. Guston?
Thank you, Mr. V. Mayor. Jason, you've been the moderator on this for the last few weeks now and the person in the front lines and even though a couple of council people have attended different meetings, I mean, you have the sense from the haulers and from waste management and from castaways, et cetera. So, my questions are a little bit on a ten-thousand-foot level, but delve into what's been asked before, what's been requested and the conversations that have gone on. Now, I understand change is, a lot of people are resistant to change, obviously, but I've seen a closer meeting of the minds coming from both sides and getting closer to where it appeases everybody, although, again, today demonstrating not everybody's appeased by what's going on. So, I have to ask you kind of a general question and then I have to make that, if you don't have an answer, I have to make that determination. Of all the people that you've talked to on both sides or all three sides, because you have a, you have haulers and you have the franchisees and you also have the transfer station, so I guess there's really three different sides of this, as it's been described to you and is put forward, are, is that universal, are those, all those people that are in the room or have been in the room or in the conversation, after this, if this franchise were agreed upon today, are they as well off or better off than they currently are?
I would not say that any of them are better off. I would say that nobody would be severely impacted based on the decision of the council today. And it's because of the rate that's currently there, that's being charged in the competitive market that's currently there. I think there is concern that the franchisees will poach Dropbox services at the franchised rate that would otherwise be outside in a competitive market. And I, that, that has not been, that fear has not been allayed in any way. I think the other one that Mr. Scelary was presenting in that table, he showed you the rates of one of the haulers and what they're charged for going to the facility and if they're charged that same rate at the transfer station versus his facility, they can choose to take it to the transfer station, not his facility, and that could severely impact his business. That is a choice that I don't think we make, but I could understand them not liking that.
In kind of a subsection B of my first question is, initially, we talked about and we were adamant, I think all parties were, especially the council was, about the people not, that are currently, the haulers or the non-franchisees people were not put out of business. And we have gotten to the point now where they're, everybody in the room is, you are hesitant to say would be better off, but they have the, they have the ability to expand their business. And I think initially, when we first talked about that, they did not have the opportunity to expand their business. Am I phrasing that correctly?
Yes, sir. And I think the two decisions by council that, one exempted the Dropbox services, those ten to thirty-yard temporary services, that carve out to allow those to make sure that they could do the yard waste, the construction demolition, the home remodels, the landscape, those temporary services is the primary business of those companies. The secondary major impact was where they had permanent accounts, where they had been going in and servicing people on a permanent basis for materials that, not garbage, but could be franchise materials. And I think the exclusion that council provided for all of those existing accounts where, you know, that we certify that they're existing permanent customer and they get a hold there and that those can't go over to the franchise for a year. I think those two things keep them in place and give them a marketplace to work in. We are still dealing with a franchised commercial market, though.
Going back to your previous point about why they may not be better off because of the poaching, the fear, or the fear of poaching, how do, how do we, in the franchise or, how do we govern that? Because that, again, seems the discussion from people today is, you're right, you characterize right, there, that fear of poaching. How do we take that out of the fear element and put it realistically into, you can't do that because, because? How do we get to that?
Well, I, and that's on your decision chart. I think if council said there's no poaching for one year, you can't go in and move a permanent service client to this franchiserate, I think that addresses part of it. And then as we establish that list of who their permanent customers are, we will know if they go in and try and, and take that rate. And in that year, we can go and look at, along with the residential rates and the impact, the commercial rates and how those commercial rates are in the system. So, is the six-yard front loader subsidizing the thirty-yard roll-off? And then we can come back to council with a proposed new Schedule B that would true up those costs if those discrepancies are in there.
So, it's similar to the questions that councilman Heschf was asking, is where do they go, taking the hauler's position, where do they, if they have a problem with it? You said the city manager, he asked that they would eventually come back to the council. So, you're saying in that one-year period of time, we would ascertain what those problems are, where the poaching or non-poaching, or whatever was happening, and then true up in that year's period of time or at the end of the year for the future, how, that's how we'd correct the issues that are currently bothering everybody? Or the fear that they would happen?
If council chooses to proceed today, that would be the course that I think would allow us to address that.
Well, I've always asked the fairness part of it, and to me, that seems to be the fair part of it. I mean, I, I think that the sides have come closer together, everybody's willing to cooperate on this, but nobody wants to be put out of business or harmed. I, from the beginning, first meeting I ever had with waste management, they said they would carve out, those were their words, they would carve out for those individual people so they would not be harmed. So, I think we're getting to that point and that would be something, as the motion's made, I would, if I'm the motion maker or somebody else is the motion maker, is put that in, that they will have the opportunity, again, to come to city manager and then back to council and then during that twelve-month period of time. And I don't know why that's a magic period, but it seems reasonable to me that those things would be taken care of and be handled.
And I think the, the one-year period that we put in was basically, we said that, you know, for that exempted list of permanent clients that we're currently certifying, that they are your permanent client forever unless, one, they call up and choose to move over to the franchisee, two, they can, the list of haulers as of ten twenty-four, twelve with the amendment I mentioned this morning, can sell an account to each other, but not to new entries into the market. And then, three, we basically said, in one year, if you do not service a permanent customer, they are no longer considered permanent customers. That's, that's where the one-year came in.
Okay, I understand it. If I could, I think there might be a lot of questions and discussions from what you just said, based on a motion. So, if someone would like to get, put out a motion one way or the other, then we can proceed from there perhaps and talk about the fine points of what we'd want to see in the motion? Sure.
How does staff on this rate methodology, the adjustment, where they have the automatic rate increase, how do we, what was the logic behind that as opposed to making the franchisee just come back? If they need a rate increase, they'd come back, which is what we currently have, correct?
What we currently have is a automatic CPI increase.
Right.
From zero to six percent every year.
Right.
As long as the franchisee is making less than eight percent on a three-year rolling average.
Right.
So, every year, they can come in and apply that CPI and get that increase. And that's the current system that we have. We have not had an increase for the last three years because they have been over that cap.
Correct.
So, there's been that zero. So, I think I lost the question while I was trying to explain it.
Well, I'm just trying to compare what we currently have versus what we now have with this new rate methodology. Why is that any different?
The new rate methodology, the one difference from what we have to what we would have is that as of now, you know, this last three years, they were above the eight percent rolling average, so they would get zero rate increase. In the new system, they would get a one percent or CPI, whichever is lower.
Right.
So, there would always be a rate increase to address the costs going up. That, that is the one big difference there. There would always be a rate increase.
Right, irrespective of whether they're over or under the eight percent, correct?
Correct. If they're under, they always get CPI.
Right. But if they're over, then this is where this new section kicks in.
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaser, Reno City Attorney's Office. When the council determines to start doing motions, if you could do it on G eight in subsection order as they appear on the agenda.
Great, thank you very much. Let's start with G eight one, discussion and direction and potential approval of the proposed changes to the program. This is just acceptance of the staff report, not really making any modifications? Not when we just accept the report, I don't believe. It's when we, when we actually do the ordinances is when we would make the changes. Second. A motion and second to accept the, approve it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. G eight two, staff report approval of the business impact statement.
Please do approve.
Second. A motion is second to approve the business impact statement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. G eight three, ordinance adoption.
This is ordinance number six-two-six-zero, an ordinance demanding Reno Municipal Code Title V entitled Privilege Licenses, Permits and Franchises, Chapter Five Point Nine Zero, Article Three entitled Garbage Services by Revising the City of Reno's Franchising of the Collection and Transportation of Solid Waste and Recyclable Materials pursuant to NRS Two-Six-Eight Point Zero Eight-One and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Is this where we would, is this where we would make changes if we wanted to make changes?
For the record, John Shipman, what I recommend is that you address the agreements first, because there are no changes, the only changes that are to the ordinance are the changes that you directed at the last meeting. So, there are no...
So, G eight, G eight five?
Yeah, so, so get the agreements approved first and then the ordinances will follow just with a straight motion to adopt.
So, G eight five is the agreement between the City of Reno and Reno Disposal Company for residential solid waste.
So, I guess if we wanted to be, as I understood Dan's comments, he was sensitive to this issue about making sure we have this one-year look back and then we can just adjust the rates by attaching a new exhibit or if we wanted to give appeal rights ultimately from the city manager or the council, would that be, that would apply to all three agreements? Or all four?
That's just commercial.
Okay.
Here's what I would suggest. On this chart that you have in front of you, there's the three issues that are in yellow, if you could decide those. So, for instance, the disposal agreement issue, or the primary one is number eleven that goes to whether it's a consent right or whether it's going to be a notice right. The sticker service option, that's in all the commercial franchise agreements too, how you're going to price that. And then the Dropbox service competitive pricing, which is the one you were just talking about, Councilman Heschf, which is, again, you have a choice of doing nothing, raising the rates here today, or essentially putting a moratorium on poaching for the next year and having staff come back with a rate study that a future council can make a decision on in terms of changing those rates. That would be my recommendation. Just go down that list.
So, do it by category, not by, and then you would figure out what agreement would need to be amended?
Yeah, once the agreements are in place, then we have mechanisms under the agreements to make rate changes. So, and so, like, for instance, with number twelve, it talks about make section three point two point D point two effective one year from the date of this agreement.
So, Jonathan, the sticker service option would only be in the residential agreement, correct?
The sticker, yes. The sticker service option is in...
And the exemption would only, the number eleven would only be in the commercial?
Uh, wait...
Which agreement would that be in?
Number eleven would be in the disposal and it, and it has some carryover into the commercial.
Disposal and commercial, then?
Yes.
And twelve would be in which one? Commercial and disposal?
That would be the commercial.
Only?
Just the commercial, yes.
And then the fourth one maybe is the rate adjustment methodology?
Rate, yes. Number eight, the rate adjustment methodology.
That would be in which ones?
That would be in the, the...
Residential?
The commercial.
Also the residential?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, in the residential.
Would that be in all three of them, actually?
Yeah, not the disposal, though. It wouldn't be...
Not the disposal? Just the commercial and residential?
Correct.
Okay.
So, those are the...
Okay, and item G eight five is the one between, is residential. So, we'd have to decide on number ten and number eight on residential.
Yeah, on the sticker, Sharon, why, I understand your issue because the older neighborhoods obviously have more mature trees, but why, a lot of them don't? So, if people want that option, then I'm assuming that waste can, they can buy the additional tags instead of having everyone in the city paying additional, what is it? Dollar or whatever it is?
Dollar a month.
I, that's my preference on the, on the stickers, because I'm not sure how many people are actually going to need, need that type of service.
And it's no different than our sewer service. A family of eight pays the same rate as a family of one.
Right, but that will soon change, I think.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's going to change. I just think it's, it's...
Because that used to be the same way with the water service.
Yeah.
And everybody thought that that, now we're on meters. So, it's, it's a philosophical discussion.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Jessica on that. I, I mean, I don't know how many people throughout the city are going to be using forty stickers a year, especially if you've got four free dump sites, dump trips also. And it's, and it really comes down to if you're using them, you're paying for them. And you can buy them for an additional, what, two dollars apiece or something? Yeah, two dollars apiece?
It's two twenty-five or forty for a book of twenty.
Right.
Can I clarify?
And this is probably something that if the council, after a year of doing this, see how it works out, if the council wanted to increase the rates to do this, I don't think waste management would be opposed to increasing the rates to cover their costs on that.
And you were there, David, at a lot of these meetings. I wasn't able to attend. I mean, do you have any thoughts?
Well, this is the one that Sharon brought up and I'm glad that they went and priced it out because that's all she asked for. So, now deciding whether it's worth it for everyone to pay so that some of us, because I have a big yard also, I would get the benefit from it, but they're also getting a larger can. And I think that the free dumps at the transfer station is worth more than this, honestly. So, you could, I mean, you could get people in your neighborhood, put seven bags in and put them in a, in a neighbor's pickup truck and take them all down there for free now, which you would have to pay thirty dollars today for.
And I understand not everybody has a pickup truck. I think the sensitivity to the public about making this change and if we go ahead and improve it with, with waste management, the heightened sensitivity is about rates. We talked about this in the beginning and I want to be as cautious as I can. That's why I certainly understand your point. I'm one of those people who has a lot of them, but I have somebody take it away from me. So, that's, I'm not, don't apply to that, but I just don't want to charge any more as this gets started than we have to.
So, do you have any thoughts on this, on this rate adjustment methodology on number eight?
Well, I personally, I've had my discussions with everyone. I don't know what's wrong with what we have right now, the way it's done, that caps the profit. I'm not stuck at eight percent because that was negotiated twenty years ago. If a better rate of return, I was told by an attorney who doesn't represent waste management that common right now in utilities is a rate return of maybe eleven percent. So, I'm not opposed to changing that number, but it's just the methodology of the automatic increases that I have, that I'm having the problem with.
Jason, do you know what the cap is on NV Energy under the PUC? Is it eight percent still?
I would, I'm hazarding a guess, I think the last one was just over ten percent for NV Energy on their last approved IRP.
Okay. I, I guess I'm concerned about that automatic increase.
Right.
I don't like it. I think something needs to be changed where, and where they have to ask for the increase justification.
And that gives the city some protection in extending this contract to twenty, whatever it's going to be.
Twenty twenty-nine.
And then it gives us over...
It gives us some protection. If they would need to, if they want to ask for an increase, then they're the ones that are asking to reopen and reconsider.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just a thought as I was sitting here, right now... Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just, just a thought as I was sitting here, right now, the, the cap is the, the 8%, and if they're over 8%, there is no CPI increase. And under this one, we have the, sort of the 1% if, if you're over 8. An alternative, as we're discussing, sort of what the PUC caps are, is you could leave it the way it is and then add a second cap that, once they get to 10%, then it's zero. So in other words, leave it the way it is and add a second sort of cap. Just, just a thought.
Yeah, that would, that might work. Where it's, it's an additional cap later on where they could get the increases now. Because I'm not quite sure how we would approve, approve the increases today. If they're already at the 8% cap, they're going to make more money. Their profit's going to be up just with, if we approve this today. And the purpose is to get to, so they can buy this other product. So we want to make sure that what we have done today gets them to where they need to do with the new trucks and the transfer station and all that. So that might be a great idea.
Just to make sure I understand, because I don't want to make this any more difficult than it, than it has to be. And maybe this is something Jonathan, if we just said, here's what the changes we want, and then we just leave it up to staff to insert it in the appropriate agreement. So if we want to change the rate methodology as the city manager had suggested, it applies to all three agreements, all three agreements except the disposal agreement, correct?
Well, no, and Jason had a point. It doesn't, it only applies to the Waste Management Agreement, the rate piece, because the, the Castaway's piece kind of follows on. I guess the one point would be is whatever, whatever the decision is, I would request that you would have the, the franchisees come up and comment on it and either agree to it or not to agree to it, because we don't want to get into a position where you've adopted the ordinance, but then, but then the agreement is still in limbo. So, I mean, we can definitely do that, but I would just be concerned that we don't want to create a box for ourselves in the future by adopting the ordinance.
Couldn't we just adopt the ordinance on the provision that they agree to the agreements? I mean, because they could also always say, we don't like the deal and we're going to walk away and keep it the way it is. I'm just trying to not make this drag out another hour.
No, that, that's fair. I'm, I'm just not familiar with conditional adopting of ordinances.
Well, let's, let's just ask them. That's the easy thing. They're here.
And while they're coming up, I do want to emphasize what Jonathan said there. The way we have the rate setting is, is whatever you set for the rate setting on the residential side and in the Waste Management Reno Disposal Commercial Agreement, that's where it applies. And then Castaway's rates would raise or lower based on what we do with Waste Management. So they would be the same.
Okay. Someone like to, yes, sir. And Mr. Reeser after?
Gary Duhan, Waste Management.
Dan Reese, Lionel Sawyer, and Collins on behalf of Castaway.
If you have a, there was a lot of discussion, so if you have a specific question?
About the cap, what's being proposed is either an 8% cap or a dual method. Talked about was an 8%, 10%?
In other words, we'd leave the rate methodology adjustment, as I understand it, which is 1% or CPI, even though you're over the 8%, you would keep that provision in there, but eventually, once you got to 10%, it's capped. Correct? Is that, yeah?
Sorry, I'm trying. That one I'm going to have to ask a question. That's a brand-new methodology. I'm going to have to look at that.
And then while they're discussing, I got a question for staff. Is that, if I understand you correctly, Jason, this safety net that we have for the haulers and the Dropbox, are you saying it's already in the agreement? So after we look, we do this year look back, we can go ahead and adjust the rates, or the new council can adjust the rates?
The council has the ability to adjust the rates at any time. I, I would make sure that we do that year, just as your intent as council, that we do do that.
Okay, so you'd need direction on that. It's not already in the agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, and for your ease, I'm sorry, on the chart, it's, again, it's, it's issue 12.
Right, it's commercial.
So if you choose the far end box on, on 12, and you say we want to adopt that box, then that's what you're going to get.
Understood.
Okay.
To answer the specific question before, CFO over here for Waste Management says, we can stick with the current methodology in which it is, we do not get a CPI adjustment over 8% without the 1% minimum. The problem with the cap being at 10, and now we're in a rate-setting situation, it, it just raises a whole host of issues we, we haven't considered. And I think Mr. Chisel will agree how complex that would be. So we could abandon the 1% minimum.
Okay. Mr. Reeser?
And we remain comfortable that we're going to be a tag-along. Their, their size is such that we're not going to be at any disadvantage to be a tag-along. I, I will say this, just for the record, so that there's, it's in the record. I'm the source of your comment on rate of return, and rate of return at the Public Utilities Commission right now is running at a minimum of 10.98 to about 12.5, depending on the size of the utility. So you're getting a very good deal at 8%.
Thanks for that recommendation, Dwight, just to ask. Saved us a lot of time. Okay, thank you. Okay, the residential agreement. Formulated that yet, Pierre?
What's the question?
Well, I think, I think we'll, I think what we need is a motion to adopt with using the standard rates. Is that what we're going with?
The ones in the standard rates on Exhibit C?
Exhibit C. Is that what everyone's agreeing to? So we go with the standard rates, which takes care of item 10, and we go with the current methodology for the rate adjustment?
Yes.
Correct.
And I think that's all you need on the residential, correct?
Yeah, and-
So that's my motion.
Standard rate or standard rate with yard service?
I, standard rate was what I was thinking.
Right, standard rate.
Right, second.
Have a motion and a second.
Can I just clarify, are we going to go with the 20 stickers?
Yes. That's what the standard rate is.
Okay.
Yeah, it says right here, included in the standard.
Yep.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. G8-6.
Nope, 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 nope. I was a no.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was a no, specifically because I think we need to do this the right way, not the convenient way. And we're providing less service from what people are currently getting and converting that benefit over to make the, the recycling less expensive proposition. I am wholeheartedly in support of the recycling, absolutely, but not providing less service to get there.
I apologize, that was six to one. G8-6, this is the commercial side.
So I'll make the motion to-
Can I ask a question on this one, real quick, before we do? I just want to make sure that we're on the transfer. I think Beazler's issue on the, the facility, that, that that's been resolved in all this, on, on the actual-
It's $125,000.
Yeah. If I could ask, Mr.?
Just a quick one to just tee it up. Alright, so if you look on the chart, we have issue number 11, and the choices of council, right now it's currently written for 60 days' notice. If the city needed to change those agreements, we could do it by providing 60 days' notice to the dispos, to NRS, and then we could go and they would have the ability to make their argument to council why it shouldn't or how it could be modified. And we believe we need that, or staff believes we need that from the standpoint of keeping the, protecting the system from erosion and that sort of thing. The request is for a consent, a hard consent, so before we could change any part of that agreement that would impact NRS, they would have to give us our, their consent to do that. So it would have to be a, an agreement at that point. And, and like I said, staff recommends 60, but then Mr. Scolari has-
Well, I think her question was about the exemptions for-
Yeah, but also on the consent, the consent piece too.
So there's, there's two issues. The transferability, we agreed to language, that we made a change of that, and I believe that language is agreed to by all, all the parties. The second issue is this consent issue. If the City of Reno were to amend the agreement, that would affect just our exemption rights, just, just our rights. The way it is written right now, you can do that with 60 days' notice, and we would get the opportunity to make a case before city council.
Yeah, I think that's-
I don't believe that's, in this circumstance, is a fair way to go. And, and the reason being is it guts our ability to transfer or sell the business. It affects the sellability of the business. If, if a purchaser comes in and looks at the facility and that amendment is there in this agreement, it's going to give somebody a lot of pause. So I thought it was reasonable to give us a prior consent. It's not a prior consent that could veto the whole thing that you're trying to do. It's, it's a consent that-
Reducing your $125,000?
Right, it has, it has to do with our exemption right.
Okay.
And that's it.
I understand.
So give us a consent on that.
So why is, that doesn't seem unreasonable to me. Why would staff be opposed to that?
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily opposed to it. I mean, there's, for consistency's sake, we have the haulers and we have the disposals, alright, and I, the haulers would request the same thing in terms of their rights. So we're looking at it, number one, globally. I mean, this is a new deal. We're rolling out the door. We want to make sure that if we have burbs or if something comes up based upon this new system that is going to impede the system from operating so that we have erosion or something like that, we need, we want to retain for the city council the ability to come back and to fix it. Of course, giving all those parties the rights to come back and make their case. And so that's to provide you with the most amount of flexibility that we can. We can go down the right and route and provide them with kind of carefully crafted third-party beneficiary contractual rights, but at that point, you're giving a contractual right. So it becomes more difficult for a council in the future to change that. So, I mean, again, it was in there to protect the council, to protect the system. But if you feel comfortable that you want to give that right, that's within your purview as well.
I want to get rid of it. I don't think that's fair. I mean, how could you sell business? Do anything? So I have an issue with that clause.
Yeah, I know, but at the same time, I, I see where staff is on this issue too. I, I mean, I guess you could, I mean, even if it was consent language, there, there would have to be some, some parameters to that. I mean, it couldn't be unreasonably withheld if we wanted to change the exemption. They would have to demonstrate some kind of financial hardship. I mean, is that, is that the compromise?
Yeah, there's a couple of different compromises. Yes, like we talk about, maybe there's some sort of materiality standard or something in terms of, you know, impairing the operation of the business in a material fashion. That's one option, and then you grant them the consent right, and it would have to be narrowly drawn. The other option would be to extend that 60 days out to something longer than 60 days. So maybe if it, I mean, maybe if it's a big public policy decision, it needs a good, you know, 120 days of airing or whatever it is. I mean, those, you, you have both of those. And, and this, this actually won't impact the ordinance in the sense of, this is really a contractual matter, so this won't hold up anything else. You can give direction on it.
When we talked about this yesterday, Jonathan, I, I think I was confused about what you're saying, because what I'm hearing them say maybe more than 60 days, what if it was even a year to change that one provision of the $125,000 instead of just 60 days where everyone would have plenty of time to, to get ready and, and they know they'd have at least that much time if they were selling a business, because, you know, that's almost month-to-month, 60 days.
But I mean, is that the same provision we put in for Waste Management on their side, though?
No.
If their facility is taking away from the other facility, then we give them 60 days' notice?
No, because the city has a vested interest in protecting that investment and protecting the Waste Management disposal piece. I mean, and that's, that's the system, as it were, for solid waste disposal. So at the end of the day, from a staff standpoint, you want to make sure that that's protected economically. What we have here is an exemption. This is outside the system. And like we've seen with the current system, you know, we can have erosion that takes place or things that prop up, you know, based upon what we're doing here today that we couldn't contemplate, that we want to allow, at least allow the council the opportunity to address it if it becomes a problem and dress it more in a unilateral fashion than in a bilateral fashion. But again, it's, it's up to you if you, I mean, we can go back and, and craft, you know, kind of these narrowly tailored third-party beneficiary rights if you feel comfortable enough doing that.
Or we, they, we could, we would, we would have to get their consent if we took the exemption amount and reduced it by a certain percentage. Is that an option?
That's certainly an option. I mean, I, I mean, I can't imagine quite sitting here right today what, when we, why we would, we wouldn't be lowering anything on them at all. This would be something totally unintended, unknown, coming out of left field. And I would imagine the council, a future council would be looking at it in that regard too. This is something unknown, and they'd be listening to what NRS said. They'd be trying to balance the policy and making sure the system is, is, is not undercut. So, I mean, it's a tough question, but, I mean, if, we can go either way. It's purely a policy call on your part.
Candace, did you have a response? No? Brett?
Brett Scolari, for the record, we would wholeheartedly prefer narrowly tailored consent right. And here's why. We're taking a huge leap of faith, hoping that this works. We have to have the sellability of this business at least attractive enough. If someone looks at that provision who's interested in the business, we think it's, it could be a big problem for us. I'm happy to work with council on a narrowly tailored consent right on that. But again, he just said it. We're, we're, this is probably a very remote chance anytime soon that cap's going to be dealt with in an adverse manner. And I, I have that hope, so I'm just, we're just trying to prepare, prepare for that if, if, if this business is sold.
I agree.
So the direction to staff would be that, that we would go the consent route, but you would have to work on, you need direction on what the, what, what the parameters would be, correct?
If you had some parameters, I mean-
I mean, they can unreasonably withhold their consent if the council deems that they want to reduce it. They would have to demonstrate some kind of financial hardship, presumably. I mean, I, I don't know what else.
Like a materiality type of provision? I mean, based on that, I, I mean, we can sit down and we can craft something on that, I feel.
Okay.
Over the motion.
Also on the commercial, we had the-
Number 12?
Number 12?
Right.
And number eight? Eight, 11, and 12.
We dealt with eight.
In a, in a motion? We haven't had a motion on this one yet.
Right, but as far as the concept, right.
Right.
So as I understand it, as I understand it, we, we could do this one-year look back, and then you would be able to sit down with Waste Management, with Castaway, and then look at what that exhibit looks like? We have the audit rights in any event, correct?
Correct.
Alright. So I, I would make that motion with respect to the, to the commercial, that we would have that one-year look back. And then we'd sit down with the franchisees to look if there's any need to do the rate adjustment based on the evidence that's going to be presented to you at that time. And then on, we would use the same rate adjustment methodology that's been agreed to by both franchisees in the commercial?
We would use it in setting the rate with Waste Management and then apply those rates to Castaway.
Okay. So that takes care of eight and 12?
And the, right.
And in 12, the 3.2 D. 2 effective a year?
Correct.
And number, and number 11?
And then in number 11, we've just given Jonathan direction on that.
So we're getting rid of the consent language?
No, they are going to, they're going to be able to consent, but staff is going to work on the language that's, so they just can't unreasonably withhold the consent if future councils- I mean, I'm sensitive to what staff is saying. You don't want to tie somebody's hands. We, we don't know what the circumstances may exist. And I can guarantee you, they're going to be up here just like we are, struggling here, trying to make it work and not trying to harm anybody. So I just don't see the future council just undercutting somebody.
So I have a motion. If everyone understands the motion.
Can you say it again, Pierre?
God, why do you want me to do that?
Look, I'll, I'll read it the way I hear. The motion would be to accept this. You want to do it?
Yeah, with respect to eight, the franchisees has already agreed to the eight, how we're going to do the 8%. We're going back to the existing language and the existing agreement. With respect to 11, we're going to do the consent. We've already given staff direction on the consent, so you have to get, like, for example, Mr. Scolari's client's consent so that they can preserve, they want to sell the business as he had indicated, and staff will work on that language with them. And then with respect to number 12, we're basically going to adopt staff's comments. We'll do a one-year look back, and if it's necessary, you can adjust the rate.
Okay.
And one minor change, as I mentioned in the opening, we do have new language in 3.2. D. 4 that allows them to sell to each other and, and take on-
And, and take on investors.
Right. I'll make that change, too.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Discussion.
Mr. Scolari, are you in agreement that that's satisfactory, the language? I mean, obviously, the agreement needs to be reached.
Yes, we, um, we will work with, uh, staff and that, under those parameters, we can live with that.
Thank you.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Just wanted to comment, 'cause that, I, and I think, Councilman Hash, have you protect the small haulers by having that year review in there? That's your intent? Okay.
Okay, G87, uh, an agreement between the City of Reno and Castaway Trash Hauling. That would be the same as G86, the motion. These two should be identical?
It should with, with the one slight change in section 3.7, um, where their proportional sh- share of city services is $210,950.
Okay. So, wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay. A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I need, I need clarification there. So does that include the same residential?
No, no, no.
They don't do residential, just the commercial.
That's the same as the one we just did, the commercial.
Correct.
G88, agreement between the City of Reno and Refuse Incorporated.
This is on the disposal side.
This is 11?
Correct. You need 11 in this agreement.
And do we need eight on this one?
No.
No.
Just 11, okay.
Just 11. Correct.
Correct.
So it'd be the consent language that they need to work out?
Right.
Same direction.
Yeah, and you can maybe say as a blanket, to the extent that these are applied to the agreements that you're approving, they should be adopted in agreement, so.
So I'll, I'll make that motion. Same direction to staff as we did for, um, number 11. And then as staff suggests that as a safety net, that to the extent this direction applies to any other agreements that you didn't think about, then you would incorporate those changes into those agreements.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. G83, ordinance adoption. You already read that one.
I already read it. It's, it's bill number 6828, which becomes ordinance 6260, which I've already read. It's up to your motion.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. G84.
Bill numbers, excuse me, it's ordinance number 6261 and ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code Title 10 entitled Health and Sanitation, Chapter 10.08 entitled Garbage, Rubbish, and Waste, Waste Matter by Updating Certain Definitions and Code Provisions Relating to the Collectible and Disposal of Solid Waste, Recyclable Materials, and Other Waste Material and Providing Other Matters Properly Relating There Too.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second to adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll go to recess now as Reno City Council, and we'll convene again at 4 o'clock for the redevelopment agency. Seven, could we get the roll call, please?
Hashev, Guston, Zadra, Sveraza, Dorch, Azzie, Keshel.
Item... Mr. Scott?
You left me out last week.
Uh, item B is public comment. I don't have any public comment cards. Are there any? Under regular public comment? Okay. Item C is approval of the agenda. I have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item D is approval of the minutes for October 24th. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E1, staff report on settlement and restructuring agreement and support payment agreement for the Reno Aces Stadium. I do have public comment on this one.
Real quick, just...
Yes, oh, yes, okay.
Thank you. Um, just a disclosure. Um, as I've done in the past on all other baseball-related items, I am providing the following disclosure of a potential conflict of interest. From approximately October of 2007 through February of 2010, I was employed full-time as the Director of Corporate Partnerships by SK Baseball, who operates portions of the Reno Aces Baseball Stadium. After February 2010, I remained as an independent consultant for SK Baseball until about August of 2010. I have not been employed as either an employee or consultant for SK Baseball since August of 2010 and have not had any form of business relationship with SK Baseball since that time. Also, I do not anticipate having any form of business relationship with SK Baseball in the future. I am disclosing my prior relationship with SK Baseball, so the public is informed of these facts. I do not feel that my prior business relationship with SK Baseball will affect or impact either my personal judgment or the independent judgment of a reasonable person in my situation. Accordingly, I am going to fulfill the duties of the office to which I was elected under the public policy of this state, and I am going to be voting on this matter. And I do have a full disclosure that I've turned into the clerk for disclosure purposes.
Tracy Chaser, Reno City Attorney's Office. There's a full written disclosure in with the clerk, so if anyone wants to see that. And, uh, the council member has put that disclosure previously when this item came before council and read it fully in the record at that time as well.
Okay. I do have some public comment on this item. Mike Cassidy, followed by Ann Silver.
Council members, I think it's great that we have, uh, a national championship baseball team here. And a hu- a couple hundred miles away, we have the World Series champion. It's something we'd be excited about. I'm hardly a, an unbiased proponent of Reno Aces Baseball. Uh, my wife and I moved to Reno in 2005, and we bought a historic house in Reno that was a DeLongchamp-designed home that was pretty rundown, earned, uh, owned prior to our ownership by the University of Nevada. We've taken a lot of time to work on this home and to bring it up to the original ideas in its design that DeLongchamp had. We saw that as a commitment to Reno and a commitment to this community. We, I've always seen Reno as a, as a place that, well, there's ideas going, there's an idea going on here. Uh, there's, there's core values going on here. It's a great place for recreation. It's a great place for family. My wife and I are retired. I was formerly a, um, teacher of English at Feather River College and was instrumental there in bringing about the baseball, uh, program at Feather River College. As academic senate chairman, I had to fight my way through a lot of grief to get people to support that program. Now, it's become a nationally recognized program. We rated the state of Nevada for our players, and we have subsequently, uh, become actually ranked nationally fourth. My daughter and her husband live in Reno. They have 11 children. Talk about economic risk and economic folly.
Talk about a baseball team.
Talk about a baseball team. They are part of this community as well. Uh, I have been a season ticket holder for two seasons, four seats. I can't wait to go to the games. I like to bring my grandchildren there. But what I would like to emphasize, I'm not telling you anything new. I know that, that we're all baseball fans here, is I think that this stadium, its, its beauty, its architecture, its being a, as a part of this town, is something that represents not just, um, a place that we can visit, go to games, enjoy ourselves, but it also is a place for families. When I go to the games, the thing that I see that impresses me more than anything else is the quality of life that this stadium brings to Reno. So I would just like to encourage the council, I would like to encourage you to be unanimous in approving this, uh, financial help for keeping the stadium and our team here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Silver, followed by Ted Levatter. I'm worried, there you are.
Mr. Mayor and members of the Reno, Reno City Council, it's a privilege to be before you. I'm here wearing two hats as a resident of the City of Reno and CEO of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northern Nevada. As a resident, I, I take full advantage of the Aces Games. I can't imagine a more terrific venue, well-designed, as this gentleman has said, and it's an opportunity to enjoy the gorgeous Nevada evenings all the way to the, to the ice cream and the popcorn. And it's a wonderful family setting, and I'm, hope you're able to find a way to retain this stadium here and SK Baseball. As CEO of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I'm thrilled with the generosity that Mr. Simon and SK Baseball has shown to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Hundreds of our little brothers and sisters have benefited from their generosity by being, um, enabled to attend games with their big brothers and big sisters. This is an opportunity that very few of these children who live at or below the poverty level here in Reno would ever have. And rather than standing out by the river where many of their families live and waiting to catch a baseball, they're able to go in and actually see a AAA team playing. So it's a fantastic opportunity for them. In addition, we were given 4,500 toys by, by the Reno Aces Foundation, and I can't tell you what that means to these kids to get a new toy. Most of them have never had that experience before. So for my professional reason, I'm, I'm hoping you find a way to maintain this, this fantastic team and, and credible businessmen in this community, and certainly on a personal level, I look forward to future games next summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ted, followed by Paul Alcano.
Thank you for the record, Ted Levatter. Um, this council will have to rely on the intangible benefits of this stadium to pass this deal today, because there is no economic benefit for the city that can be measured. This council made two promises when it brought baseball here in 2007. It promised to pay $1 million in incremental property taxes to help finance the deal, and it also promised taxpayers that no general fund dollars would be used. Only one of those promises can be broken today. I'm asking you to keep the promise that you made to taxpayers to not use general fund monies to finance this stadium. Uh, as of today, there is overwhelming evidence to suggest that public financing of stadiums does not return in, uh, a dollar for the taxpayers. Uh, Mr. Brian Dugan of the RGJ wrote an excellent article. He's wrote a number of good pieces. Um, the most recent article, uh, talked about three academic studies that have been conducted recently. Two of these studies suggest overwhelmingly that public financing of stadiums is a bad deal. One of the studies suggested there might be a difference between a AAA stadium and a professional stadium because of the total cost, but she cautioned when speaking specifically about Reno because of the size of our population, uh, spending $30 million on the stadium may not be the same type of benefits that you would get in a larger AAA town like Buffalo, New York. Uh, even more recently, there was a Harvard study published. It's a book called Public Private Partnerships for Major League Sports Facilities. It was published in October of this year. Um, this book is intended to help cities structure favorable deals when they're dealing with, uh, sports franchises. Uh, it take, it took a complicated analysis that took into account costs for lands, infrastructure, and lost tax revenue. Um, what they found was that most of these deals end up costing taxpayers about 25% more than what the bottom line suggested. So the $30 million number you're considering today, according to the most recent Harvard study, we probably, in the long run, is going to cost us about 25% more. Um, Bloomberg actually came out with an article on Tuesday, November 6th, re-talking about the Harvard study. I'm just gonna read you a couple of quick quotes here. Um, "Small cities tend to fare worse than large ones in public stadium financing." Again, that's from the Harvard study. Um, "The author of the study concludes that regardless of profit sharing or rent, public partners should avoid paying building costs. Land and infrastructure you help with, um, but the building you let them go alone." So the Harvard study was suggesting we do not spend public dollars on the buildings, so what the taxpayer will not see that return on investment. And this, there's a similar situation happening in Gwinnett, Georgia, right now with their AAA team. They build about the same time we did. They're not seeing the return on investment that they were expecting. Uh, I'm not suggesting that this council of the city says no to the Aces Stadium. We would love to help them. What I am asking this council to do is to make decisions, uh, that are well-informed. We have a great resource in this town in the form of UNR University. I would like to see the city engage them in this process, ask them to conduct the study that would show that spending public dollars on the stadium makes sense. They already have the, uh, structure with which do these studies. Harvard has done a recent study. I don't see why we're not pulling in a great resource like UNR to help us make an informed decision in this case. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Alcano, followed by Paul Toll. Par, I'm sorry.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Paul Alcano. I'm the Executive Director of Washo Legal Services, which is a nonprofit, provides legal services to people who can't afford lawyers in the county of Washo. I'm here in a personal capacity. My family started in Reno when my grandfather came over and immigrated and started here in 1910 on Lake Street. And over a period of time, he acquired a piece of property in the late 1940s on Lake Street, and our family continues to have that property today. And because of that property, I met Jerry Katzoff of SK Baseball and negotiated a lease with him, and I can tell you, I enjoyed it very much. I found him to be a man of complete and total integrity in our dealings with us and my family. My family bought eight season tickets and loves the Aces game, my extended family, cousins, and so on. One of our family members has an interest in a local restaurant that has greatly benefited by the baseball games and people who are coming downtown who would want to use a restaurant facility before or after the game. We have really enjoyed participating in the, in the baseball experience. Property values all over downtown have gone way up as a result of this. If the stadium closes, they will go back down. The area was virtually transformed from a property owner's standpoint. For years, we wondered what would happen, if anything, with this property, and magically, there's a wonderful stadium there that we can all appreciate. And, um, there's some really wonderful intangible values about people getting together, going to games, participating in community activities. So I think one of the things, I'm sure you've considered already, but I just might mention it, that, uh, universities don't make lots of money, but they contribute to communities. Parks don't make lots of money, but they contribute to communities. Baseball stadiums are the same kinds of thing. They're part of the overall experience that people in the Truckee Meadows can use to make this a richer and a nicer place to live. And I would encourage you to go ahead and, and pass this resolution and continue the relationship with SK Baseball for the benefit of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Par, sorry.
That's not the first time, Dave. That's okay. Par Toll, for the record, with Basin Street Properties. I know this is difficult, I know this is a difficult issue, and I appreciate you letting me come back to re, uh, make some repetitive comments, but it's important enough that I, uh, would like to reiterate what I said a couple of weeks ago. Let me provide you some tangible things, um, from the business community that this stadium has done. First of all, as I told you before, we were 30% occupied in the office building across the street from the stadium before the stadium was announced. We are now 85% occupied at 300 East Second Street. That's 100,000 square feet of businesses that have moved into a transitional area of East Downtown that would not have come without the stadium. I can guarantee you, not all of them are baseball fans, but all of them are in favor of the environment that baseball creates. Second of all, for over a year, we've been trying to finance a Marriott Courtyard Hotel, a $25 million project, which we are, what I guesstimate, a week away from completing. Um, and I hope to, we hope to break ground in the spring. That's a $200,000 a year tax benefit, not counting the, the hotel tax, but just the property tax to the city. That hotel will not happen if this baseball team goes away. I don't know if you know how hard it is right now to finance a hotel in the country, let alone Reno, Nevada. And the stars have to align. You have to, you have to be between two hospitals. You have to be near a university. You have to be near the bowling stadium. You have to be across the street from the baseball stadium. All these things have to happen for a hotel to get developed, particularly in a second-tier market, and we are, we're on the brink of making that happen. Thirdly, and Jerry can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I calculated over 400,000 people attending baseball games according to our parking attendance, uh, in 2012. Yes, they buy tickets. Yes, they buy beer. Yes, they buy, buy food in the stadium, but they also spend money outside the stadium. We have a, a restaurant at the bottom of our building slice that is solely alive because of baseball. If baseball goes away, the restaurant goes away, and I'm, and I assume there are many other restaurants and other, uh, business establishments where that will happen also. And lastly, and I can't emphasize this enough, as I did last time, you all have done a great job over the last few years in redeveloping and rebranding Downtown, uh, most lately with Apple. I would hate to have the council's legacy as they go out, have the black eye of us losing baseball right on the heels of such a great win as Apple. We have momentum. I'm thrilled as a citizen and as a, as a business citizen when I see Downtown and what we're accomplishing. Please don't stop the... Please don't stop the impetus on what you've created by not figuring out a way to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cindy Brynlee, followed by Jeff Wood.
Thank you for giving me a moment here. I'm for and obviously very for the stadium. I know that does a lot for the downtown corridor, but I'm against public funding or raising liquor license fees or liquor taxes. I own a very small bar, about 10 miles north of here, and I get nothing from anything that goes on downtown. I mean, I've had the business for 28 and 1/2 years with my ex-husband, and in the last year, I had to go through relicensing and everything due to a divorce. So I'm trying to find ways to bring money into my business without having to go get a loan, do things like that. I have no one else to fund me. And I really have, everybody in our country was having fits about our government bailing out the auto industry, bailing out the banks. I know everybody in this town that I talked to was really against all that, and now we're turning around doing that. I just really have a problem with my business going down or me having to pay more when I have no benefit from something. The downtown quarter, I know a lot of funds come in to downtown Reno because of that stadium, and it's great. My husband works downtown here. But to have it affect every business that it does not benefit, I think is totally wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Wood.
My name's Jeff Wood. I'm retired as a division chief from Cal Fire. My wife Sheila retired from California Highway Patrol. We live 80 miles north of here in Janesville, California. Last year, we came to 25 games. Every time we come to a game, we stay at a hotel downtown because I don't drive home at 11 o'clock at night. We go out to dinners before the games. Right now, we're looking for a home in Reno, and we're going to retire here, hopefully, because of the Aces. That's our number-one reason. We had an appointment to look at a house today, in fact, and this ran late. That is the sole reason we're looking at this area, is because of the enjoyment we have at the Aces. You go to the ballpark, and I read the articles that people just buy a hot dog and a ticket. It's so much more than that. We go there, and I get a foul ball, and I give it to a little kid and see the smile on his face. We need more of that in this world right now, and you get unlimited benefits from this stadium. I've got a whole list of increases to quality of life. You guys know all that, but I don't know what more you could benefit for your community than this stadium. People like us, I make a real good pension moving it all down to Reno, buying a house here, mainly because of the Aces. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And I hope you know that there's Reno and then there's Sparks. Reno is where you're looking. Those are all the public comment cards I have. Anyone else wishing to make a statement at this time? Fill out a blue card when you're done, please.
I'm Amanda Scott again. I'm not really good at talking on TV and stuff. It's pretty exciting. I just want to say that I heard that, I had no idea about any of this going on, and someone brought it up, that $30 million of public funding. So I understand that as my tax dollars, because I have two jobs right now. I'm a student. And I think, I know it's great that we have a baseball team, all that kind of stuff, but we need to help education or something that will help our kids like me today that are going to be the future, because we're not all going to be on the Aces, and we don't have money, honestly, to go to the Aces games like some people. And I just wanted to say that it concerns me that things like this are going on and more people aren't here trying to fight for it. So, thank you.
You're a university student?
I'm actually in high school slash college. I go to TCC.
Do you go to the football games?
No.
Don't go to any sports events at all?
I don't go to, I have two jobs and I have school.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the table and have staff make the presentation. Yes, sir. Will you talk into your, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Send her some flowers, Mr. Scott.
Good afternoon. Pete Wallace, for the record, Office of the City Manager. This item is back before you, as requested, on October 24th. Staff returned to negotiate with the developer on several items in addition to the items that were outlined in the staff report and discussed by Mr. Katzoff at the last meeting. Some of the items that staff has worked into the agreement has been a release of the fire with location loan after a 10-year term, after 10 consecutive payments. Also, after each annual payment, $400,000 would be credited against the outstanding principal for the loan. Also, the recent release of the National Bowling Stadium first-floor retail, and also the city center site after the first payment of the subsidy payments. And then also clarification on the 12 nonprofit and civic events that could be used for the city or stadium authority. Also, changes within the agreement are, after the original 30-year term, the developers agreed to lease the facility for 20 years at market rate. Before you, you should have a memo that's attached to the proposed agreements that outlines some additional changes that have made in addition to what was requested of staff, and also clarification of some errors. First of all, staff would like to clarify that we will return with the definitive agreements prior to January 31st, 2013, and reference to any pre-authorized, any pre-authorized rights by staff to execute agreements without returning should be removed. Also, staff has negotiated an extension of the 30-year commitment, for 30-year commitment on behalf of S.K. Baseball. At any time during the 30 years, if a team would leave, the subsidy payment could then cease. And then also, any tax increment within RDA 1 and 2 can be substituted for general funds. Also, staff would like to point out, within the agreement, there is a Schedule A at the back, which shows the schedule of payments starting for next year. It would be $850,000, ramping up to approximately $1.1 million, and then ramping back to the million-dollar payment in 2022. Staff's available for any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Saadra.
Peter, can you help me understand? On page 5, I think it was, yeah, of the agreement, right up at the top, one of the points is that the agency and the city will use our best efforts to cause the county to effectuate the abatement of property taxes on the stadium. How is that a benefit to the city? And what kind of an impact does that have? I mean, there's been this ongoing concern, legitimate concern that's been expressed about the taxes not having been paid, and I understand that there's an appeal. But what kind of an impact would that have, and why would that be effective for us?
For the direct impact, I'd have to defer to finance for the exact dollar amount that would come out of the city's general fund. But as far as the commitments within this agreement, staff view that negotiations between the developer and the county, or truly between the county, it was a county decision to abate the current outstanding taxes. And also, if you remember, in the previous or the original agreements, because of the rebate of the $1 million, the floor payment, that would include the property taxes that the developer would pay on the stadium. Since the floor payments were not paid over the last several years, there was not an abatement, so to speak, of the property taxes. So within the agreement, the developers asked that we just assist in the process of working with the county, but that would be a true county process on either approving or denying the abatement of property taxes, either passed or going forward.
So, Robert, could you give us a figure? What have we not received? And for the 30 years that this would extend, what would we not receive that would be a benefit to S.K.?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director for City Reno. Any property taxes would be, we'd receive about 25% to 30% of the property taxes. It's kind of an open-ended question, because depending on how the property is appraised, what is the property value? Right now, there's about $800,000 of property taxes that have not, that are in contention right now with the county and with the state as to what the value is. So if you took about a quarter of that, it's about $200,000.
And progress that to the 30 years of the agreement, what would that equate to?
You know, again, it depends on what the value of the property is appraised at. Is it going to go up? Is it not? You know, and I believe that was for, was that for two years?
Yeah. Three fiscal years.
Three fiscal years, so, you know, it's probably about $70,000 a year. $70,000 times 30 is, you know, 2.1 million.
And I'm not sure between you, which one, who can speak to, I have other questions. These are just the two most immediate, and then other council can discuss. In the whole negotiation, theoretically, we're looking for an unidentified $150. You could add to that, as I would, the 100 that we're saying that we'll get from the agreement that we, the adjustment that we just received from the county for the ADA. But along the various, very long conversations that you've had in trying to identify deal points that make sense, was there ever any consideration on the ticket tax and adding another dollar to that to find that gap from the 750? Was there ever any discussion about that?
Pete Wallace, for the record. As far as finding the $150,000, no, the ticket tax was never discussed in that process because the ticket tax has always been part of the total revenue stream in addition to the S.K. Baseball, or S.K. Baseball rent, the city subsidy payment, the sales tax increment that would be used for repayment of the COPS.
If it was to be considered, given the number of sales that they have on an annual basis, how much would that add to a ticket price?
I'd have to defer that to the developer. I don't think there was ever a tax or a dollar amount identified for an actual ticket tax or what that would generate over a one-year or 10-year period.
No, no, no. Where I'm going is, if we're looking for $150 or $250, depending on how you do your math, what would you need to add to a ticket price to get that, based on the sales that they currently arranged?
If I may, one second.
Sharon, and I can just briefly weigh in on that. What's intended, and Jonathan can correct me if I'm wrong, they have to go out, the existing debt comes due in August of 2014. They have to go out and refinance the stadium, whether it's going to be COPS or whatever alternative financing. They have got to do it before that date. And the agreement says that they have to enact a ticket tax, they have to pay rent, they have to do a baseball subsidy, put money into the transaction in an amount sufficient to refinance the stadium. So they're going to rely on R850, 850, 900, whatever the payment schedule is, and they agreed to come off the million and actually phase in the million over time, and the county's money, as well as all of these other, the sales tax, et cetera. They have to put that in that pool, and they have to put enough money in the pool to generate enough of an annual payment to go out and refinance the stadium. So I think your question is that they're going to enact a ticket tax. If they don't, they have to put more money in the deal to basically finance it.
Correct. And again, the ticket tax has always been talked about in addition to the support payment. And the other piece of that, again, as Pierre was talking about, is things like the lease payment and the subsidy payment. That's, again, that's money out of the developer's pocket to make those.
And I understand that. My question is, for the $150 or $250 that is still remaining, what would need to be added to that? I'm guessing about a buck. It's been like one, one and a half million, probably more, people that you've sold tickets to in the four years, correct?
The issue with that is, you could do that, but then you'd potentially still have that hole in the financing, the broader financing, because the ticket tax was always in addition to the million-dollar payment.
I understand that. I'm saying it could incrementally be another 75 cents or dollar to fill that particular gap. Correct?
Correct. And, you know, quite frankly, they could raise prices and use that money, you know, irrespective of the ticket tax, which potentially they're going to have to do to make the financing work regardless.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Who's next? I know there's questions. We're all fighting to be last, I guess. I don't know. Go ahead, Dwight.
Yeah, Pete, why are we only crediting $400,000 of the payment to the fire station loan?
It works, I believe, the outstanding 4.9.
3.9.
It's over a 10-year period, it would be approximately $400,000 per year.
But why wouldn't we have that amortized on the current scale, where it still amortizes in six years? Would we get rid of that sooner? I mean, that's the argument right now for the 750, is that we have to pay that 750 for the fire station loan anyway. Why wouldn't we have all that credit towards the fire station loan in the beginning?
That's something that we could try to work out with the developer, if directed by council. The 10-year term was just something thrown out there. If you wanted to reduce it, right now, it sunsets in June of 2018.
I'm just saying, if that's the argument we're using, is saying that the 750 would be going to pay the fire station loan currently anyway. If for some reason a council decides not to allocate the funds in the future, then we're not getting the full credit for those payments to the fire station loan. I mean, at some point in time, I mean, it comes back to what I've said before, is if you're not going to allocate the funds, you're better off not allocating year one, because otherwise, $350,000 of that goes away. Or actually, $450,000, since we're $850,000 payment instead of the 750. So, I mean, I would think that until we get the fire station loan paid off, all of the funds would go to reduce that principal.
And that's something that staff can address with the developer.
Has it been, hasn't been discussed at all? We just assumed, we just took the 10-year number and went with it?
It's part of the overall package of getting the COPS issued and adding in the additional revenue streams. So I would have to ask the developer if that would throw any kind of complications within the sale of the COPS or the overall package.
For the record, John, just as a matter of history, I think at the last council meeting when this was discussed, the notion and the direction was to have the fire station loan paid off in 10 years was the direction, so that if payments were made for 10 years, it would all be paid off. This agreement goes actually one step further, because the direction given in council last time was for the 10 years, and if the payments were made in 10, it would go away. But this one actually says incrementally, as payments are being made, you're getting a credit towards the fire station payment agreement. So that's kind of the history and how we got to where we are today.
That's what I'm saying, though, is the argument that we have to make the fire station loan anyway goes away if we're only taking $400,000 of that and crediting it towards the fire station loan.
But just originally, there was no credit. And then we said, no, we need some kind of a credit, so we came to $400,000. And I guess another point, I mean, it's a give and take, obviously. Your point's well-taken, but there's a lot of concessions that were made by baseball, including a personal guarantee. So, I mean, there's a lot of value in that. So that was where we compromised, was on the 400.
I'm not sure that there were a lot of concessions made by baseball. I mean, this agreement's completely to benefit them. I don't know that you could say that they've given a lot of concessions. We're giving them $30 million.
Well, it's a yearly appropriation.
Well, let's ask that question. Let's ask the question. What concessions has baseball given up for this?
Well, staff went through, I mean, at the end of the day, this is a policy decision. decision, it's too weathered.
And that can be more in discussion.
What I'm thinking about, I just, I'm curious, because that's one thing we asked about, is, is the ballroom? And I'm sort of going off the RAB meeting, you know, they asked for some stuff. The ballroom goes away? Is that correct?
Yeah, as part of the, the rights and remedies they've waived, they've waived the, for the TI tax increment dispute that we have with the county, they've released upon the first payment of subs, of the million-dollar support payment, that gets released forever, forever and ever. The bowling stadium, the first floor of the bowling stadium, the development right, to the extent it exists, will be released completely entirely. For the RTC, city center, the option on that, that is released.
And how about RDA 2?
Yeah, I mean, really, and on two of those, I mean, our position is, they have no rights to the bowling stadium any longer, and we've asserted that position. And I don't, I mean, if you want, if they want to keep the option on the RTC site for $6 million, they can have, I mean, they'll sell it to them tomorrow for $6 million. I mean, so, we're not really getting any, yeah. I mean, so, we're really not getting any, I mean, those aren't, I mean...
I'm just trying to see what the list is, so we know.
Right. But I mean, it's easy to say you're giving something up, but, you know, it's, like I said, the RTC, if they want to buy it for $6 million, I'll sell it to them today.
Well, the current rental on the, on the ballpark is a dollar, so we go from a dollar to a million dollars to the authority.
Yeah, to the, to the, to the lease payment for the, the support of the COPS. The other thing is, council member Heskey indicated, we have a, a personal guarantee of Mr. Simon, which we don't have in the current deal, which, I mean, that, that is potentially money in the bank there, in the sense of that's another backstop. So, if, you know, the team commitment is another area. Under the current deal, the way the team commitment works is that they're guaranteed to be here for 15 years. But then if the league moves them after that point in time, then that doesn't amount to a default of the stadium usage agreement. Under the new deal that is being proposed today, that entire 30 years is covered. So, if they were to leave in, say, year 16 because of the league, or for any other reason, the stadium would have to be tendered to the city. We'd have the right to buy it free and clear of any encumbrances for $1 at that point in time. So, that's, that's another, trying to remember some of the other things.
Let me keep going down, because I want to make sure, clarify this, the RDA 2, does that get taken off the hook with this new deal?
Anytime that you make a support payment, then any payment that RDA 2 would have been responsible for, it's not responsible for, and it gets credited towards what they would have been responsible for. If RDA makes a payment in lieu of the city payment, again, that decreases the city's support payment obligation on an ongoing basis moving forward. So, if RDA came back and could make a half a million dollar payment, that would reduce the city's support payment by a half a million dollars.
So, let me use an example, that's a real-world example, right now. St. Mary's went from nonprofit to, and it's in RDA 2. Next July 1st, it'll have to make a property tax payment. Let's assume it's $200,000. Under the current agreement, where does that $200,000 go?
Well, under current law, that would go into RDA 2.
Which then goes...
Which then goes to payment of debt, senior debt, and which, anything left over is tax increment that would be encumbered by the existing baseball agreement, yes.
So, it goes to, it would go to baseball?
Yes.
Assuming we made the, the first nut?
Yeah.
Right. So, they get that anyway. Now, under the new agreement, what happens to that $200,000 from St. Mary's?
That just goes to the RDA to...
RDA 2?
Yes.
To do projects in RDA 2?
Correct. As long as the support payment is made, they have no claims.
I mean, we can debate about whether those things are worth something or not. It's worth something to the people in RDA 2. It might not be worth something to other people, but it is to RDA 2. Because that was, I know that was a big contentious issue about RDA 2 being tied into this thing. Exactly.
Plus the 4 million, we've got an accrual on the minimum payment for 4 million, that, that goes away, correct? I mean, that, that's, I'm giving that up.
Sorry, the 4...
On, on the million-dollar floor payment?
Yes, the accrual to date...
Goes away.
Goes away, and is abated until, yeah, for the, as long as support payments are made.
Anything else we can think about on their side? Whether it's worth something or not, I just want to list them all out. And while you're thinking about that, the RAB, I don't know if you talked to them about this, it talked about the 427 Evans property? That they, they wanted in their, they had a meeting yesterday, I think?
Yeah, the other, apologies.
And I was going to mention that, I mean, then the $6 million or $9 million were the land we get, is part of this deal.
So, you get, you get the team in a functioning stadium, and at the end of the deal, or in the event of a relocation, you get the stadium, but you get the team and all the economic impact that comes along with that.
Right. And then this 427 Evans property, has that been discussed? That just came?
No, that's, that hasn't been discussed, and I'd leave it to Pete to discuss that.
Okay. I think that's the only thing that we would be asking them for, although they did talk about the stadium use clause, which we talked about before, to maybe keep that more consistent with what it is. Anything else you think about that, that we put on their checkmark side? That's about it? Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, Dwight, I sort of got in the middle of it, but I want to have a nice list of, of what, whether it's worth anything or not, what everyone thinks that they're giving up. Mr. Guston?
You know, Mr. Vice Mayor, I thought we, we had a pretty frank and forthright discussion last time we looked at this. I don't know that, that sympathies on either side have changed a great deal. I, I think that we have a little more public comment this time than we had last time, but I, unless there's some relevant question or some probing question to ask, I'd, I'd like to move on. We've, we've had a lot of discussion to this point, and you and I and Pierre had meetings with, with people who own properties in this town, and had some very heated discussion about why to do what we're going to do, and why we should or shouldn't do that. But I, I would just like to move on and accept the staff report and give reasons why I would, I would vote in favor of doing this.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll go ahead in a second.
Okay, a motion is second. Discussion, Ms. Frazza?
Question for staff on the nonprofit agency, would that make them exempt from property taxes?
Are you talking about what, St. Mary's?
Stadium Authority, I think.
A stadium authority.
Yeah, the stadium authority, as I understand it, my limited understanding of tax law and government, it would be a political subdivision, so it wouldn't be, yeah, it would be exactly, it would be exempt from taxing.
Okay, so, on top of all this, so, if staff put that calculation in, they wouldn't pay property taxes either anymore?
That they wouldn't pay, well, what, what's in the current agreement, it says, like, Councilwoman Zadra pointed out, that they'd make the best efforts to abate the tax. That tax isn't abated currently, and until you could get some legislative bill passed that would allow that to do that, they're going to be paying taxes. So, like, even if the stadium...
Even on the stadium authority?
Even if the stadium authority is a, is a public entity, generally the way it works, and I can be corrected on this through the assessor, but if they have a possessory interest in the stadium, then they're going to have to pay their fair share of tax on that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure we're clear. I mean, right now, as I understand it, that the stadium authority doesn't get the stadium. They're guaranteeing that it's going to be paid off within the 30 years, but there's no transfer of the stadium to the stadium authority, correct?
No, that would, well, not at this point. That'll be dealt with, with the definitive agreements, and, I mean, we have potentially some issues technically, ones we have to work with in terms of getting the financing correct, issuing the COPS, things like mortgages on public property that become problematic. So, we need to work through those, but that's contemplated in the documents at this point.
Okay.
On, on the staff report, tell me what is, is written in there regarding, I'm going back to the RAB meeting, about the use of the facility, the stadium use clause?
Stadium use clause, it's for 12 events a year for civic nonprofit activities, and there's a time limitation on when that can occur before or after a baseball game.
And what is the civic, explain that to me, what, is there a definition in there about what that means?
There, there isn't. It would be just something, I mean, we can either further clarify that, but it, it would be something that wouldn't be a for-profit type of activity, that would be, it would be more kind of a, you know, a conference, or something that would be consistent with what the venue could support.
What, you mean, like, using the field?
I mean, yes, to a point. I mean, it would have to, the issue, as I understand it, the field itself is subject to, you know, minor league requirements on how it needs to be maintained.
Right, the time, I understand the time for, let's say, City of Reno wanted to have a company softball game over there.
I would defer to the developer on that. That, that probably is very consistent with the, the maintenance. Now, if it were a, you know, a large mosh pit, you know, you know, for a corn concert or something like that, I mean, that might, that might not quite work.
Have you been in a mosh pit at a corn concert? I'm just curious.
Could we, could we do a concert over there and take in the revenues to pay this?
A nonprofit could, under this, I would assume. A nonprofit could, yes. They're nodding their heads, Mr. Mayor.
The developers indicated that's okay. I manage, provided it doesn't injure the facility, I would...
Correct. And the stadium authority would be the ones making those decisions.
If the stadium, and the issue with the stadium authority is currently, that's going to require the cooperation of the county to create. So, assuming that the county makes that step and enters into the interlocal, yes.
Aren't they required by state law to have the stadium authority? It's there by state law?
There's a stadium authority that is essentially a board or a commission that's there by state law. What ultimately is being contemplated in these agreements is to have a separate legal entity, the stadium authority, that would potentially, at the end of the day, maybe hold the property. I mean, again, depending upon how the financing works, but it would, it would, it would, it would also house the existing state law stadium authority that's in NRS 244A.
And the other thing was require, I don't even know if they know about this, and require the developer to release the 427 Evans property? Do you even know about that? You don't know about it, or you don't want to release it? Will you, will you, will you, will you come to the microphone, please? I'm sorry. I just, they had this meeting yesterday, Mr. Katzoff, so I apologize for not getting it to you.
No, we saw it late last night.
Okay.
It's never, never been discussed.
You know which property that is? I think it's a small vacant lot, okay.
I do, but we have no desire to give that property up.
Okay. I think those are all the questions that the RAB had.
Although I can't, I think, and I, and I just saw this today, too, so, on number five, right now, there is no economic feasibility. I mean, if, as Jonathan had explained, if after year 15, they moved the team, because it was not economically feasible, it would not be a default. Whereas now, what the developer's done is taken that out of the equation. If the team moves for whatever reason, even after year 15 or year, or year before that, I mean, they agreed to convey the stadium to us free and clear of that lien, and, and that obligation is personally guaranteed this time. So, I mean, to me, that's a huge concession.
Any other questions? Discussion then, on the motion.
Well, Mr. George?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought I saw him say yes.
Yeah, and we talked a lot about this last time, and I don't, but we do have more public comment, and for the benefit of the public that's here, I'm going to explain my position on this, and, and it really comes down to a general fund obligation. And here we are, we've, we've had layoffs, we've, we've seen our general fund go down $35 million since the start of this recession, that we've, that we've no longer have. We've got fewer police now than I think we had in the mid-'90s, I think. I mean, we've got fewer cops on the, on the, on the streets today than we've had since, I think, the mid-'90s. We've, we've got a safer grant that's coming due, that, that, that gets us through the next 18 months, and then we've got a $7 million a year hole to fill in our fire department. And we have no way of funding that. So, it's either going to mean layoffs, or I, I don't know where else we can find it. I mean, it's going to be reduction enforced somewhere, if we, if we don't find a way to fill that. We're still trying to stop the bleeding from this recession. We've got $5 million in unfunded deferred maintenance this year that we cannot afford to do to our buildings. Over the next five years, we've got $25 million in unfunded deferred maintenance, and these guys are asking for $30 million out of the general fund. So, I agree with everyone, the stadium is phenomenal, they've done, it's probably, in my opinion, the nicest minor league ballpark in the country. The team's great, it's a great family event, and, and for everybody, the market's not the same today as it was in 2007. There are a lot of people that went into business in 2007 that are not meeting their revenue projections today. And they're not standing in front of us, asking us for $30 million out of our general fund. You know, again, it's, it's, it comes down to, we have to do the things that we need to do as a city. We need to, we need to provide fire protection, police protection, we need to take care of our parks, and we're not doing that today. So, to, to, to expend general fund dollars for this is irresponsible, in my opinion.
Mr. Guston? I believe that it's, it's very important to the community and to Northern Nevada to have a viable AAA baseball team in our, in our city. It speaks to the quality of life, why people find it so attractive, why this gentleman and his wife, maybe it's baseball, but, but Northern Nevada and living in Reno is, is quite attractive to live here. It's part of the ongoing revitalization of downtown. The other thing is, we, we have the obligations, been talked about, about the fire station. Now, it's 400,000 being paid to the fire station, but that's fine, we have that obligation to pay. The other thing was mentioned that we needed to know the, the financial or fiscal impact in the committee, well, the University of Nevada did do a study that said there was, they attributed $21.1 million to AAA baseball being in downtown Reno. I've, I've talked to Mr. Toll's, I've heard him now in public testimony twice, talking about the Marriott, and being here, a $25 million project, leads to my next issue about putting people to work, everybody talks about, I mentioned this before, about, you know, creating jobs and going to work. Well, I'm hoping that in one week you do finalize that, and, you know, I'm, I'm always, I'm a half-full guy, with glasses half-full, and I really see that being a benefit to Northern Nevada with $25 million infrastructure, not infrastructure, but property in the middle of downtown. I don't see the advantage of laying off 738 people at the ballpark by not having it here, let alone the people that are employed in businesses that are around the ballpark and hired especially for baseball. So, I, I think there are, certainly there are concerns, financial concerns, for the, the near future and the ongoing future about our general fund. I get that, and, and I'm not washing it away with the fact that some Pollyanna look at this, but I think that it's required for us to, to try to do things that, that benefit the citizens, citizenry, and also improve the City of Reno, and I think we're starting back on that improvement. Mr. Chisel said earlier today that sales tax is averaging about 3%. I remember a year ago how dire it was, how many more cuts we'd have to make if we didn't have any sales tax increase. That is starting to show. I, I don't know how, but it is starting to show, so I think that's all beneficial. So, for me, I think that the things I've listed are, are important to the city, and important to the quality of life, and I look at those as being key issues, and so that's why I favor this, this motion.
I too. Well, it'll be a repeat of what I've said each time before. I have serious concerns and reservations taking money from the general fund, because we already have. We've already loaned several million dollars, actually, from the general fund to the RDA to not only assist this project, but others in the RDA. Who knows when we're going to be able to pay that back, in addition to all of the deferred capital maintenance that we've not been able to, to perform. I have absolute respect and appreciation for the, the newest concessions. They are tremendous. I think that was the word that, that you used, Pierre, and, and they're, they're incredibly more generous than you've presented to us previously. I'm still struggling. It was all I could do to transfer the fire obligation into the, the city's general fund, that 750. That was about all I could, could, in good conscience, do, in addition to what we have already done. And that's why I was asking the, the first two questions. There are other revenue opportunities, I believe, that could accommodate that, that 250 that's remaining. I absolutely believe it. If it is, you know, a million, seven tickets that have been sold, it would take 60 cents more, 60 cents more on the, the ticket tax to fill that gap. I just, I can't get to the point of taking anything additional out of our, out of the general fund. I totally agree that it's a tremendous asset to our community. You should be very proud of it, because we are as well. It's a beautiful stadium, but we have a city that we need to run, and we have services that we've not been providing to their fullest, and it's beginning to show, and we need to take recognition of that and put ourselves in a position to, to be able to fulfill the demands that our citizens pay taxes for. I just, I can't look for additional dollars out of the general fund. I just, I can't look for additional dollars out of the general fund.
Mr. Hesia?
Well, I second the motion, so I think everybody knows how I feel about, just a few. Number one, it's a yearly appropriation. I mean, and the way baseball structured the payments with us, we already budgeted for the fire station loan, and we've got the $100,000 in, in the redevelopment as a result of the settlement, which the developer's releasing us from, from those claims, or baseball's releasing us from those claims. So that's really not new money, and they've been very good about working with us on those concessions. So if the council decides they can't appropriate it next year, then they won't be able, they'll make those policy decisions as to what priorities are important. And if you think we're going to have an impact with an empty baseball stadium, just think about the impact of that and all the businesses around there, and how much property tax increment we're going to be able to generate with a closed baseball stadium and a huge blight on this community. You've got Mr. Simon here who owns Meadowwood Mall and owns the land around the stadium. As somebody indicated to us when they came to us today, they go, hey, we're partners, you know? We've invested $80 million in this community, baseball $100 million. You know, let's, we're not asking for a subsidy, we're just asking it to renegotiate the deal. And based on the concessions that they made, I think at the end of the day, it's going to turn out to be a good deal. It's a huge economic impact for this community. Irrespective of what the Harvard study says, there's still viable economic impact to this community. So for those reasons, I think we should move forward with this. I've been supportive. We now have the county that looks like they're going to partner up with us to make the other half a million dollar payment. So I think those are all important. And then baseball's actually putting at least a million dollars into this for rent and a baseball subsidy that they don't have to pay now. Talk about somebody stepping up and making a payment and being a partner and trying to make, to keep that stadium open. I think they've gone well beyond what we've even asked them to do.
Mr. Frazek?
Yeah, I think the big one for me is, we made a promise to the people when we supported this stadium. And just to go back in time, I was in favor of the stadium. It was unanimous vote. I thought it was good for the community. But at that time, we said we would not use general fund money for this stadium. And I, and I plan to, to keep that promise. There's a few things that are very concerning to me regarding this. In particular, is that, you know, we have new members, this is being slammed through right before we leave, and we're getting new members sworn in next week. We don't know what their decision's going to be. But right here in the staff report, it says, "If a future appropriation is not made, the lack of an appropriation may have an impact on the city of Reno's credit rating." So that's a big deal. I mean, we got the email from bond counsel. You know, here we are, I think, bringing Andrew on board. We're trying to fix the city's credit rating, especially in redevelopment. I mean, we're one step above junk bond status within the redevelopment agency. We don't know where we're going to get the money. I still haven't heard from staff where this million dollars is going to come from. And I, however, I do believe that we have a commitment to fulfill our obligation on the fire station loan. We made it. I, I, I supported that. I would move forward today in paying off that, that fire station loan. But I'm with Dwight on this. You're taking something that's going to be paid off in 2018. I, I think there's other ways to do this. Why not do the ticket surcharge? But we have a commitment now from, from baseball that they're going to be here for 15 years in our existing agreements. So to me, we have that commitment. That would be you guys breaking that agreement with the city. It's a 15-year agreement. So I don't know what's going to change. If this is approved, then what's going to happen next year? Oh, we're going to leave if we don't get X, Y, and Z. And I don't like that. I just, I, I'm with, if, if the city's going to start, you know, investing in baseball stadiums, then maybe we should get a percentage of the profits. Percentage of the profits. If, if we're going to go with this million-dollar guarantee to help you guys out, let's really negotiate something that's good for the taxpayers, a percentage of the profits. And I haven't seen that. And I haven't seen that as part of this deal. But I do feel that it is irresponsible at this time, given the city's current budget constraints that, to move forward with this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'm going to support the motion. I think that our partners have worked with us, and I think what we're going to do, a lot of these capex programs were there 10 years ago when I got elected to office. So I think those are struggles we've had all along. The, I think what they're doing and they're giving us, working with us, you know, they've, they've done everything they said they would. The economy turned on all of us, and I think we need to step up to the plate and help them.
Well, it looks like on the swing vote, this is my last time to wax poetic, so I've prepared a little speech. I do want to explain, I've always tried to explain why I vote somewhere, because I am going to support this. I try, I met with Mr. Levatt and, and some folks over at Jungle Vino, and we talked about this. And I tried to look at the math part of this. $30 million is what the ask is, but when I break it down, is that really the ask? $4 million, what we owe on the fire right now, that takes us down to $26 million. Even in this Bloomberg report that he talked about, it said that land and infrastructure you help with, the building, let them go alone. Well, the land was $9 million. So even the Bloomberg report said, "Help them with the $9 million." So that takes us down to $17 million. The hotel, he came forward and said, "I'm going to build a hotel that's going to be $200,000 a year in property taxes." Over 30 years, that's $6 million. That gets me down to a general fund obligation of $11 million that people say I shouldn't do over 30 years. And I look at all the other things that the city has done over time. I mean, you think about, I mentioned it last time, I was wrong, I said 16 million. $6 million we put into the movie theater. On a risk, we put something where we got something back. But prior to that, we put in over $6 million to the auto museum. Again, people that had a lot of money, they then proceeded to go sell two Duesenberg's for $12 million each and didn't pay the city back. We put money into even smaller things. I know it doesn't mean a lot to some folks, but I think we leased the whole patio next to Java Jungle for a dollar a year. Him, that's as valuable as, as anything else to a larger developer. We helped the guy in the Riverwalk with, with free rent on putting his patio furniture out there. How are we going to fund it? We just passed something today that raises $1 million a year to the city. Whole-plugged, in my opinion. Whether the future councils use that for this or not, it's not affecting anything that we're doing right now. We get, we're going to get $1 million more a year out of the waste management, the franchise agreement. So that filled that hole to me. Could it be used for something else? Yes. But that's what the future council gets to decide on. This part about, we should let the new council decide, well, I have one week left. Some of you here only have two years left. When does that lame duck thing start in? You know, six months before you leave? Or, you know, when do you start saying, "We shouldn't make any, any contract that's longer than when we're here?" I say, "We play through the tape, and I'm here through the end of the day," and that's what we're here for. I do believe that we have to come to an understanding, because when we first agreed to this with Local 731 on the Fire Memorial, I think the city and baseball, and we should work on putting that somewhere and getting that done as, as part of this deal to make sure that that happens. We just all sat here unanimously gave Apple much more than what these guys are getting. Much, much more, in my opinion. They pay absolutely nothing to be here, and we thought that was good for business. This is good for the social fabric of this town. I really believe it is. We've got small people with restaurants saying, "This is good for my restaurant business." I've got guys across the street, larger people, "I'm going to have a $25 million deal next week if you guys ink this." So we're having people telling us that it's good. Is it, did I want to take it out of the general fund? No. But like I said before, if we, what am I going to do with an empty stadium if they leave? We're all assuming that these people will be the owners forever. They could sell it off next week. And so that 15-year commitment might not mean anything to the, a new owner because they'll form an LLC and declare bankruptcy or whatever, and what have you got to do to go back on them? This agreement fixes some holes that we had before. It puts personal guarantees in, so no matter what happens, the stadium gets paid off. We own the stadium at the end of the day. It cleans up a lot of these things that we were worried about with RDA 2, that I know those were big concerns before to people. And that solves a lot of those issues. I don't want to do this, but if I had the stadium, this Bloomberg report talked about going into partnerships to build the stadium. That's why it doesn't apply to us. The stadium is built. They're not asking us to pay for 100% of it. They're asking us to put in half of the $58 million to put in 30 million, 26, really, because we already owe them four. So it's not like they're asking us to pay for the whole stadium. I don't think the ask is, is too much. Do I want to do it? No. I've taken other risks before. I think this is something that the public would like. Again, I don't see, I'm surprised. People here saying they're dead set against it. I mean, and I know there's been a huge media storm to try to get that happening, but I just don't see it. Dwight?
Yeah, and I don't want to beat this up too long, just to comment on a couple of things that you said. One, the Apple deal did not cost us a dime. Granted, they're getting a lot, but it didn't cost us a dime. It didn't cost the stadium money. So there's, there's no cost to that. You know, you talk about the $9 million in land. Well, they're already getting $20 million. It's 30, but I don't think they're getting enough money to cover the other 10, but they're already getting $20 million from the rental car tax.
Not from us.
Public subsidy. Public subsidy.
Not from anybody who lives in this area.
It's, but that's, that's the way you put deals together. I mean, and so they are already getting that, right? I mean, so I think, I think when you outline it and say that they're not, you know, that we're not paying for all of it, and we're not, but we're paying for a lot of it at the end of the day. And, and, you know, something that Pierre said about this million-dollar payment, well, the million-dollar payment is a lot less than what they would have to pay if they were trying to pay off their debt. I mean, the reason they got it for $1 million a year was because they financed it, and they were paying, it was their stadium, and they were paying the loans. And, and so the million-dollar payment that they're making now for the lease payment is much less than what they would have to pay if this deal wasn't getting put together. So it's not like, it's not like they're giving us something there. It's, they're getting something for that. I mean, it's, it's, I mean...
But so, so are we, Dwight. You have to acknowledge, we're going to get the stadium at the end of the day, and we've got a personal guarantee that we don't have now. I mean, I, I mean, I agree, let's not beat it to death. I understand where you're coming from. I understand the general fund argument. But at the end of the day, we make decisions here. We did it with the garbage contract. We did it with liquor lot. I mean, we do it all the time, so.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Well, your advisory board yesterday, turn on your mic.
It doesn't work. Here, try Dwight's.
I got Dwight's.
I couldn't hear you.
Well, I want you to hear me. Realizing the asset of baseball to this community and the fact that they are a partner, there was a motion made to, to, in pass, five to two, there were seven members at our meeting yesterday, to encourage you all to work out this deal with baseball as long as it was financially capable. You were capable financially of working out the program. Otherwise, they were in favor of. The two that voted no weren't against baseball. They were just against the general fund being used. In all fairness, and that needs to be on the record too, but five to two, we thought that you should, we recommend to you that you do what you can, as long as it's financially feasible, to work out this program with baseball. Okay?
Okay. Any further discussion or comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, three. That's just to accept the staff report, correct? Item E2 is a resolution.
Resolution number 215, resolution of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Reno, authorizing the chairman of the agency to execute a settlement and restructuring agreement and authorizing the executive director and members, officers, and agents of the agency to administer the agency's obligations, responsibilities, and duties to be performed under the agreement.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, three. Item E3.
Resolution number 7784, a resolution of the city council of the city of Reno, authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement and restructuring agreement and a support payments agreement, Reno Aces Stadium, and authorizing the city manager and members, officers, and agents of the city to administer the city's obligations, responsibilities, and duties to be performed under the agreements.
And as I understand, I can do it at this point. I mean, I want to make it clear that we're approving these agreements, including the personal guarantee. I know staff's tweaking some of the last-minute changes, but the personal guarantees included is part of us moving forward.
Right, so there would be a personal guarantee that would come back at the next council meeting for, in the morning for approval?
Yeah, but it's part of what we're...
And it's contingent, yeah, this whole deal is contingent upon that.
I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to adopt.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, three. Identification of items for future gen items. Anything? Maybe? F1, update discussion and potential direction on Amendment 1 of the reimbursement agreement. F1? Anybody want to?
That was regarding the Apple project, and I, as I understand it, potentially a...
Are we under redevelopment or are we under?
Yeah.
Redevelopment, sir.
Redevelopment. I'm going to go ahead and pull that item.
Okay. Item G, public comment? I don't see a public comment. You'd like to make public comment? If you'd like to, absolutely. Everybody gets to say something under public comment.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I want to thank you very much. I have really just two things to say. I really, really appreciate all the hard work and all the effort you have put into making this thing possible. And your staff has been incredible, and we at SK Baseball deeply appreciate it. The other thing I want to tell you is that the Reno Aces love Reno. We love Reno. We want to stay in Reno. We want to be in Reno, and we plan to be for, for a long, long time. The fans have accepted us. We, we are so proud of the stadium we built. When you think of our history, in 2007, we bought a team. We talked to the city about bringing the team here. And 2008, we built in record time a beautiful stadium, opened for the 2009 season. In four years, we've been to the semifinals one year. And this year, we not only won the Pacific Coast Conference, but the entire AAA Conference for USA. Now, I want to tell you, as someone who's owned a sports franchise for 30 years and has never seen a championship, this is a lot. So I'm very proud of the Aces. I want to thank you all. I appreciate everything you've done, and we plan to be here for a long time. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can say one thing for, for Mr. Simon, maybe it's something he'll take back with him in Indianapolis. When was the last time you said you were number one, and you really were?
Anything, any other public comment? Oh, yes, sir.
For the record, Jeff Voskan, Vice President, Reno Firefighters Association. Mr. Mayor, can't see you, but I can hear you. Council members, after two years of working on trying to get the memorial rebuilt, it's really good to hear that we have a real formal commitment now that we're going to be included in getting this memorial put back. It's, it's been a hard test and a hard-fought battle. Right now, our memorial is sitting in boxes in Winter Street. So it's good to hear that we can work together and get this going. It's always been my belief when I taught academies is that it's a teaching that I say to the recruits, "If your city does well, you do well." I think I mentioned that to you before. That's all this is based on for me. If this is a good deal for the city, which is why we elect you to be up here to decide that for us, then it's something we should go for. And I'm, I'm behind what this city council does. And I want to say thank you for the past two years. It's been fun. It's been interesting. I'm sorry to see you guys go, and I'll see you all after this. Thank you very much for your service. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dwight?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Okay, I'll call back to order the Reno City Council.
Three o'clock time certain, right?
Three o'clock time certain was curb, correct?
Yeah.
I don't think so. What number was that, Pierre? Curb, do you know? Do you remember? J1? J1?
Yeah, J1.
Okay, we're going to J1. Is that going to take long, you think, Pierre?
No, I, I think...
Can we just make a moment?
Can we just make a motion?
You want to just make a motion?
Yeah.
No discussion? No, I, I had a chance to talk to the...
Can we ask you guys to go outside, please? We've got to get done by six.
Do you have a gavel?
Pardon me?
Oh, yeah, he wants to... He's getting made fun of by the press for this long meeting, so now he's trying to speed it up.
Okay, Pierre.
Well, we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, we've been obviously in discussions with Curb, trying to work, I mean, there's still obviously issues that we need to work on, industry standards, et cetera. The discussion has been, assuming we can agree on the deal points, we would come back to council, or staff would be coming back to the council in the future with respect to, you know, what that new agreement would look like, the industry standards, you know, what we would expect from Curb, very clear, specific standards, assuming we can agree on those. So, at the same time, as I understand it, we want to make sure that we have a notice of correction, that staff can eventually, can move forward with, and at the same time, I mean, this is not to say we're not going to continue to work with Curb, because I think that is, that's the intent. So, as I understand it, the motion, or the direction, or do we need a motion, or do we just the direction to staff?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, I believe a motion would be appropriate, and also, I don't know, city council wants to continue in effect their prior indication they were reserving all rights under the first notice that was presented.
Yeah.
But that's up to council.
Yeah, so, I mean, to hopefully move this ball forward and get this thing resolved, I mean, the motion would include directing staff to continue to work with Curb, and formulating an amendment, agreement, terms, provisions, you know, including but not limited to, payment, advertising, our performance standards, eventually, the sensor implementation schedule, the bike vault implementation, we're working with, this would include the performance bond that we're working with, with Curb, or other sufficient security, and as the city attorney said, in that process, we both have agreed we're reserving all of our rights. And then also, what I would include in my motion, that if staff deems appropriate, they would send out another notice, a new notice of correction, addressing all outstanding items. So that would be my motion.
I have a motion, discussion, Mr. Gustaf.
Yes, the only question is, and the new direction carries with it one hundred and twenty days, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion is second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, that was J12 and J11 together, correct, Pierre?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Now we'll skip to item G6, the alcohol. I think that can be quick, correct, Mr. Dorch? Did you have a motion on that one? G6?
Are we continuing that?
I think we have one public comment card. Did you want to come make a statement?
I don't know that, I don't know that we need a...
I don't even need a staff report, if you want to just... Come up and make your request, sir.
And if you want, I'll let you know what my motion's going to be, and see if you even need to talk.
I'm pretty schooled in the ways.
You know, I think the motion's going to be to go ahead and move forward with the increase in the fees, and pull the enforcement piece for, correct?
Yes, sir, if I may, Alex Woodley, Code Enforcement, City of Reno. To be more specific, what we're requesting is to approve the ordinance as amended at the previous meeting, with the exclusion of section 5.07.200, titled Disciplinary Action Procedures and Penalties. And the intent, for those that aren't aware, is for staff to meet with representatives
Right.
of the industry to clarify some language. Yes, sir.
You want to come in on that?
Just briefly, Greg Ferraro, on behalf of Nevada Resort Association, we appreciate staff's willingness and your consideration to allow us to work out some conflicts that we, some conflicts we identified in the language, and we're going to sit down with your staff as soon as we can and get them fixed and get back to you. So, thank you.
First, your motion has to be to accept the staff...
Right, to accept the staff report with those changes.
Motion is second, Mr. Asher.
And I have a disclosure to make, in consultation with the city attorney's office, I've known Greg for a long, long time, he's helped me on my prior campaigns, and obviously, I retain him and I pay him, but it's still a matter of disclosure and recusal.
You're recusing?
Recusing, yeah.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Discussion?
Aye.
Discussion?
I'm sorry. Sharon, go ahead.
Alex, can you update me on the concern that I had last time about the preservation of the, you know, I was looking for an identified fund, so that we can allocate the money to the issues related to the enforcement of businesses, the alcohol-related businesses. Tell me where that language went, what will we be doing?
Yes, ma'am, if I may defer to Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager, he did some work on it, and actually have numbers and line item.
Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. In the staff report, the Finance Department and Office of Management Budget provided some language, that they are going to set a separate, or they're going to track the, and I want to get this correct, they're going to go ahead and track the additional revenues that will be a result of the increase. And I can show you the, what those numbers would be, what they're estimated to be.
And when we track that, it will be parallel tracking of the police department's budget as well, so that we don't see a matching decrease in that fund. Chief, do you want to speak to that, please? It would be very easy to take seventy grand, or one hundred and twenty, whatever it ends up being, out of the police operations budget that has been there, because this one slipped in.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department. My suggestion, actually, to the manager, to Michael and Alex in OMB, was that this fund really was more preventative in nature, and we would use it for the Community Safety and Service Team, which we've been basically running operations for about a year and a half now, very effectively, across many different departments. I didn't feel comfortable, Ms. Adger, just saying, hey, you know, the police department wants to absorb all of this, I think the best thing for us is to work with CSAS, because it's preventative and it's education, it's out there before you have incidents, you're basically being more proactive, and that was my recommendation, I think it would work very effectively.
So, will we be able to actually, and thank you, I appreciate that, will we be able to see that there hasn't been a parallel decrease in your operations for what these additional incremental funds would have afforded you?
As far as in the budget, ma'am?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I can tell you that we'll track, we track those funds, obviously, in the police department, and meet with OMB monthly to track a variety of things that we do across city boundaries, and I can guarantee that that will be tracked, yes, ma'am.
Okay, year to year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I apologize, Sharon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, are you there, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so the clerk knows you voted.
Yes.
E62, ordinance adoption.
Okay, before I do it, Mr. Woodley? If you look at the ordinance on G6.2, am I to strike the language and adding section 5.07.200 disciplinary action procedures?
That is correct, that'll be striked, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted before I read it.
That is correct.
Okay, fine, then this is ordinance number 6262, ordinance to amend title five of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Privilege Licenses, Permits, and Franchises, Chapter 5.07, entitled Alcoholic Beverages by Amending Section 5.07.011, definitions 5.07.120 through 5.07.180, specifically Section 5.07.120 alcoholic beverage package license, Section 5.07.160 on-premise alcohol beverage license, Section 5.07.180 dining room alcoholic beverage license, and others, other matters property relating thereto, with a striking of the language and adding Section 5.07.200 disciplinary action procedures and penalties, which would also be removed from the body of the ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so back to item F1, NRS 288, possible approval limited term side letter agreement, we're required to have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Renee Ringes, for the record, Director of Human Resources. What you have before you for your consideration today is a limited term side letter between the city of Reno and the Reno Fire Department Administrators Association, also known as RFDAA. And what this allows is for the fire chief to temporarily assign an employee represented by the RFDAA to the vacant fire marshal position on a short-term basis due to a retirement. In addition, the letter also provides for the opportunity for the fire chief to assign an acting battalion chief from one of the employees on the eligibility list for the position of battalion chief, to work as a battalion chief when there's a vacancy, instead of calling in one of the RFDAA represented employees on overtime. And what this will do, basically, is provide a savings of about fifty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for fifty shifts to the city. In addition, it provides an opportunity for the fire suppression captains who will be allowed to work as an acting battalion chief, opportunity for valuable on-the-job training, as well as to prepare them for future promotional opportunities to the battalion chief position. So, for these reasons, we are asking the council to approve this limited term side letter, which will be in effect until April 5th, 2013, or it will sunset earlier if a permanent fire marshal is appointed.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, it's just been a long day, did we officially open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't. This is a public meeting, have we sent out the notices?
Proper notice was given, and no correspondence was received.
Thank you very much.
Can you repeat everything now?
Anyone from the public wishing to make a statement at this time? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the table.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the staff report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, ordinance adoption, G11.
Move to accept the staff report.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G12.
Ordinance number 6263, ordinance to amend title 18, Chapter 18.08, the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Zoning, Section 18.08.102B.1286, by amending ordinance number 5857, to change the text in the SPD handbook to provide for the greater building signage, larger letter illumination of freeway signs, and other matters property relating thereto, located south of the terminus of the North Hills Boulevard, 850 North Hills Boulevard, in an SPD-specific planned district zone, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G21, staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just need to disclose and recuse on this one, this could have a benefit to some of my customers.
Okay.
Move to accept the staff report.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G22.
Ordinance, this is ordinance number 6264, ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code, Title 18, Annexation, Land Development, Chapter 18.08, zoning, Section 18.08.201, entitled permitted uses by base zone district, and Section 18.08.202, entitled additional regulations for principal uses, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, G31, staff report.
Move to accept the staff report.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G32, ordinance adoption.
Ordinance number 6265, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08, of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Zoning, Section 18.08.102B.1284, to change the text in the PUD development design standards to modify the fire services agreement related to the per-unit fire fee, and to address the location and timing to construct a fire station associated with a project. Two, modify the timing in which to design and construct the public park, and three, other modifications necessary, such as map, graphic, and text changes in the design standards to affect the changes proposed with items one and two listed above, and three hundred and sixty-four acres located along the south side of the South Meadows Parkway, and extends to the south three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five feet, point seven-three miles along the east and west sides of Veterans Parkway, from the South Meadows Parkway-Veterans Parkway intersection, in a PUD planned unit development zone, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G41, staff report.
Move to approve.
Move to accept the staff report.
Second, second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, ordinance adoption.
This is ordinance number 6266, ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code, Title 6, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6.06, entitled Rules of the Road, by repealing certain articles and sections with duplicate provisions contained in the Nevada revised statutes, renumbering the remaining sections, and providing other matters property related thereto.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G51, staff report. Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G52, ordinance adoption.
Okay, we have to go back, unfortunately, in tabbing these, I read the wrong ordinance on the last one, so can we go back? Withdraw the prior, when I read, I read 5-2, can we withdraw the...
Okay, you read 5-2, can we just approve it now, then? And then we'll go back?
Can we do that? No.
Mr. Mayor, do we have any, is this a motion to reconsider?
Yes, Tracy Chase, if you do a motion to reconsider, and then reconsider, and then redo the motion.
So, motion to reconsider, G42.
Motion, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G42.
Okay, I'm going to do a new number on this, this is going to be... Okay, I'm going to do the old number, sorry. Yeah, this is ordinance number 6266, ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code, Title 6, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6.04, entitled definition, Section 6.04.010 through 6.04.800, to conform sections to Nevada revised statutes, and make technical language and format corrections, and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G52.
Okay, now... Make sure I got the right numbers, there's so many of these.
Yep.
6267? 67, I've got it. Ordinance number 6267, ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code, Title 6, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6.06, entitled Rules of the Road, by replacing certain articles and sections with duplicate provisions contained in Nevada revised statutes, renumbering the remaining sections, and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G71, staff report. Tobacco paraphernalia.
Move to adopt.
Accept the staff report.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, G72.
This is ordinance number 6268, an ordinance to amend Title 5 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Privilege Licenses, Permits, and Franchises, by adding Chapter 5.19, entitled Tobacco Paraphernalia in its entirety, requiring a privileged license for retailers of tobacco paraphernalia, regulating the sale and display of tobacco paraphernalia, and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Really good job, staff.
Motion is second to adopt, all in favor, say aye. Motion is second to adopt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G seven-three, staff report.
Move to accept.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, G seven-four, ordinance adoption.
This is ordinance number sixty-two-sixty-nine, an ordinance to amend title five of the Reno Municipal Code entitled privilege licenses, permits, and franchises, chapter five point oh five entitled licenses generally by amending section five point oh five point zero zero eight thereof, entitled general requirements by requiring a background check for a privilege license for retailers of tobacco paraphernalia and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, H one-two resolution, I'm sorry, H one-one, staff report.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, H one-two resolution.
Resolution number seven-seven-eight-five, resolution declaring city center plaza, city park, and recreation facility pursuant to RMC eight point two-three point zero-one-zero.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, H two-one, staff report.
Move to accept staff recommendation. Sorry, Dan.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, H two-two.
Resolution number seven-seven-eight-six, resolution granting fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to the Pioneer Center for Performing Arts for fiscal year two thousand twelve thirteen sponsorship.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, H three-one, staff report.
Move to accept.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, H three-two.
Resolution number seven-seven-eight-seven, resolution granting one hundred and twenty-five thousand to Art Town for festival sponsorship for fiscal year two thousand twelve thirteen.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, H four-one, staff report.
Move to approve the staff report.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, H four-two, resolution.
Resolution number seven-seven-eight-eight, resolution granting eight thousand to CR Arts Foundation to provide an artist grant program during fiscal year two thousand twelve thirteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, H five-one, staff report.
Move to approve.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, H five-two, resolution.
Resolution number seven-seven-eight-nine, resolution in support of a new special event sponsorship policy in formation of a new special events sponsorship committee forwarded by the special events subcommittee of the Reno City Council.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, J two, initiation of amendments to the Reno Municipal Code with respect to adult businesses.
This is just a direction to legal, please, to initiate.
Does someone want to initiate?
I'll accept that, I'll accept that staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, J three, BDR car rental tax. What do we want to do? Pull it?
Yeah, I, I, I think, as staff indicated, there's probably not too much hope for success, right?
I think we should pull it.
I have a motion for the mayor.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. City Clerk, Northwest Neighborhood Advisory Board, I'd like to continue that, please. Ward three?
Continue.
Reno Housing Authority?
The financial advisory board.
I'm just, it's the what's on here, so it's, no, and the Financial Advisory Board.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on my, is, uh, what's?
The Financial Advisory Board.
David Atkins.
To reappoint him?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll make the motion to reappoint him.
We can appoint people, um, people that are, of, of, sorry.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Like, um, on the, for housing boards, for example, can we appoint one of the council members that's not elected?
Oh, you mean on the next item on boards and commissions?
No, 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 just on the K one E, K one C, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, you can appoint him if he chooses not to take it, then at that point in time, they're not.
Well, the, the question, the question is, is it required under Reno Housing Authority that it has to be an elected official from Reno, or could it be a, anyone?
I'm not sure on this one.
I, I think you should wait until next week.
Then maybe you just want to continue it till they're here.
Okay, so the Financial Advisory Board, Pierre, you wanted to reappoint?
Yeah, reappoint?
They need to appoint, Financial Advisory Board to appoint Dave Atkins.
Okay. Dave, so they've recommended him for?
Yes, they did.
Okay, I'll make that motion to appoint.
I have a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, K two-one, I didn't get much response from the candidates because I think they're busy running for office, so I don't have anything right now.
Uh, Dave, the only thing about the boards and commissions, to delete those, the Virginia Street Bridge Subcommittee, I, I think that's still active, is it not?
No.
Is it talking about deleting, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was, I was ahead of myself, I was on K three, not K two-one.
You pulled a cadillac, thanks.
I did, I did.
No, that's just delete those, no, I think the Virginia Street Bridge Subcommittee is still in effect, is it not?
Jamie Schrader, Senior Management Analyst, we actually, Public Works Staff actually had given me direction to go ahead and sunset that because the design has been picked, and they, what they were assigned to do was to just pick the design.
Okay.
So K two-one, the staff report.
Never mind. Move to approve the staff report.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, resolution.
Wait, 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 Mr. Mayor, do we need to?
That's the next one, Chair.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Resolution number seven-seven-nine-zero, resolution to retire certain boards and commissions, committees, subcommittees, and other public groups established by the Reno City Council on various matters relating to City of Reno operations.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, A three, this is the one where I didn't get much response, so we'll just wait.
Except we're thinking, um, RT meets?
That meets next Friday.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you guys want to be there.
Friday or next?
No, not this Friday, next Friday.
So we can do it now, or we can do it then?
Let's just do it, yeah.
You and me?
Yeah.
Which one?
Dwight and me.
Want to make a motion?
For RTC?
RTC.
What's that?
Sharon and Dwight would be our representatives on the RTC, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I didn't know we were appointing today, I thought we were pulling some of these.
Just those two, Mr. Mayor, just the one, the one board.
Huh?
Just this one board of RTC.
Okay.
Because their meeting is next week.
Oh, okay.
So I'll make that motion?
I have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, identification for future agenda items.
Now, Mr. Mayor, on K three, was it just limited to RTC? Sharon, there was some discussion about you being appointed to EAXIS. No.
Which one?
You can, we can wait to the fourteenth, wait the fourteenth. Reno EAXIS Advisory Board.
Any future agenda items?
Yeah, I, you go ahead.
Before you go there, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Would there be an appetite for anybody to take part of the waste management fees and dedicate it to art? Like the Fireman's Memorial or different things?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, that could be a future agenda item.
Okay.
So can we do that for the fourteenth?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Uh, any liaison report, I'm sorry, you had something under future agenda items, Pierre?
Yeah, the, I don't know how we would do this, but I know we pulled J five and J six. If, if, I know the county's meeting on the thirteenth, if they were going to make an offer to us to resolve the automatic aid agreement, or maybe even the true-ups, we wouldn't be able to discuss it on the fourteenth unless we had an agenda item, correct?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, yes, that is correct, you could always put that as a future agenda item as a placeholder as needed.
Okay, so can we do that on the fourteenth? Okay.
Would that be under old business also?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, yes, it would be because it's directed by the sitting body.
Okay. Any liaison reports?
Mr. Mayor, we had an absolutely fabulous bi-local marketplace this last Saturday, our staff did an incredible job, I, I spoke with every single vendor, and almost all of them said the same thing, fabulous organization, several of the people who were there as vendors, retailers, have been in the special event business, have thrown many events, and have said again and again that it was the best organized event that they have ever participated in, as did many of the vendors who've never thrown an event but have certainly participated in many, they were just absolutely amazed. We have, many of them have already signed up to come back, and those who couldn't get in absolutely want to, and the shoppers were just thrilled, they had so much respect for what we did, we all were in t-shirts, and so they were able to spot us and come and talk to us, and several of the retailers had to go back to their shops or warehouses and get additional items, they were running out right and left, some of them had four and five people deep waiting in line, our staff was just right on the spot, over the top, they did a fabulous job, so kudos to, to all of them, I think the community did well, thank you.
Well, thanks for pushing that along, Sharon, I think that was very good, very good to move that forward. Any reports from conferences or professional meetings? L four, discussion and potential directions regarding removal of recyclable materials? Dan?
Dan. You know what, I, I got the staff report on that explaining what happens, who owns that, and it, and it cleared it up for me, I'm sorry, the waste management has to file the complaint, it's, it's, no further action need be taken.
Okay, L seven, performance of the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, under open meeting law, there's a required notice on this item, and I want to say for the record that the city clerk has signed a waiver of that notice, and it is in your official record for this item that needed to be said before you heard the item.
Okay. You want to say anything?
Usually the net says something, but if you want to.
Oh, now you want to pass this out? That's, that's demerits off right now.
Well, we want to talk about last night first.
Sure, but that was a.
Yeah, yeah, what happened last night? Aren't you in charge of getting those numbers back sooner?
No, I'm not in charge, I was there, though, and I can answer any questions.
Are you asking for anything changing?
I am not.
Well, at least from the same comments I've had every time we've, you know, we've reviewed the, Lynette, I mean, she does a fantastic job, her staff is very responsive, and she, she deserves a lot of credit because how many years has it been since you said you don't want any adjustments? It's been a while, hasn't it?
Five or six, I think.
Yeah, so, um, so those are my comments, that her, she and her staff do a great job.
Thank you, Pierre.
Dino.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think even when Sam Dene says that he gets good service up, up the clerk's office, that says a whole lot.
Wait a minute, let's reevaluate this then.
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no pole dancing on this agenda.
Is there any action we have to take then?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, it is a performance evaluation, you can just say you may, it's acceptable valuation, or however.
I think we all bought our cake out there, there's four cakes sitting out there for her.
However, this council would like to do it.
Someone want to make a motion to?
I just want to say that it's been a pleasure working with all of you, and especially, it's going to be really hard to see four of you go, and.
Speak for yourself.
Ah, Mr. Mayor, it's.
That's exactly what she's doing.
But no, it's been wonderful, and I wish you all well, and hopefully I'll see you still, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, please, a motion, for example, you might say move to accept the performance evaluation and continue the current salary of the city clerk.
And the contract for another year.
So, um, yeah, I'll make that motion to accept the performance evaluation and to, and to continue the contract for an additional, for the next year.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, public comment. No? No? Would you like to make the motion?
Sorry.
If you'd like to, if you'd like to. This is, this is our last adjournment.
Yeah.
Next, next week we just get up and walk away.
No, you don't.
Well, I'm, I can't let, the clerk did it, so I'm going to do it, I mean, I, I have enjoyed my nineteen and a half years here, it's been absolutely fabulous, I mean, I, I don't know how many people have asked me, well, any regrets, anything like that? Absolutely not, I mean, obviously, there's been some trying moments with what we've accomplished in this community, but I, I mean, I've enjoyed every minute of it, we've got great staff, we've got great council people, I, I, I'm really going to miss doing this, after nineteen and a half years, I mean, it, it really becomes a part of what you do, it's a fab, it's, it's a fabric of your life, so for me, I, I'm going to miss it, and I really appreciate everything that we've done at the council, and, and what staff has done as well, and all my, and all my counterparts.
Mr. Gustaf? Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I, the luckiest man in the world, because I was lucky enough to serve with six other people that I first like, secondly, I respect, and they were very patient with me, and I was asked earlier, am I even going to miss it, and I said, no, but if the same people were still here, I probably would have made some accommodation for my sports and done something to serve again with you people, I enjoy all of you immensely, and I just thank you for the opportunity to be with you, it's eight years, I enjoyed, you know, every bit of, I remember at the Santa Fe, in a, in a get-together, all the, the candidates were getting together, and I leaned over to Mayor Martine and asked him what to expect, and he said, you know, it's a ninety-five-five job, ninety-five percent of the time you'll love it, five percent of the time you'll hate it, and I think that number is, is high in terms of the five percent, because I, I did enjoy it, and I thank all of you for being so wonderful, because I really appreciate working with you.
I just try not to get emotional. Just wanted to thank staff, what an amazing twelve years, sorry, you guys, I'm so embarrassed. Um, it's been awesome, and all of you guys are the best, I mean, just all the stuff that you've been able to get done, and Andrew, how cool, how cool, when every single council candidate says, what a great job our, our city manager and the, the new team, so, I mean, that says a lot about you, and just my colleagues, I'm going to miss you, you guys have been amazing, really amazing, so, it's been the best job in the world, and love it, and want to thank all the citizens in Reno for giving me the opportunity, so